Well, good morning, everyone. It is Saturday, January 8th, 2022, and it's just past 8:00 a.m. And I want to welcome everyone to the City of Iowa City 2023 Proposed Budget Meeting. And so we're going to probably get started with our city manager leading us off here in a little bit. I know that there is a lot of content that we're going to have to go through today. And council, if you're, we're going to try to figure out break times and all that stuff as we go along. I'll kind of give a little bit of a warning as I'm looking around the room and seeing how, how we're doing. So, but if at any point you need to excuse yourself and come back, just feel free to do so. I'm going to bring on our city manager, Jeff Roy, at this time. Welcome.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good to be here with you on a Saturday morning. Look forward to a good, long budget discussion. As the mayor noted, I think one of the challenges you'll have today is to kind of decide, you know, how deep to dive into some issues versus tabling them for, for additional time. So please feel free to ask clarifying questions as we go along, whether that's in this first initial presentation or with the department heads that will be presenting to you later this morning. But as you get into some detailed items, you may, just for the sake of time today, want to, want to pause and, and schedule that for more time. So just keep that in mind. I want to start with a couple of thank yous. We have a budget committee that reviews all of the, all of the budgets and does all the hard work. You'll notice a familiar face gone at this budget session. That's our former finance director, Dennis Bockenstett, who left late December. I want to make sure that you all have had a chance to meet our finance representatives today that do a ton of work, not only on the budget, but on so many things. We have Nicole Davies, who's our interim finance director, and Jacqueline Fleagle, who is our budget guru. We're going to be leaning on her pretty hard to help us navigate through the questions and adjustments that you may pursue through these budgets. Also want to thank Rachel and Redmond for their work on the budget this, this year. And there's someone that's not here that puts a lot of work into. That's Michelle Cook from our finance department. And when it comes to our flip book, that was a new initiative from the finance department this year, and Michelle did a lot of the heavy lifting there. So definitely a team effort and want to thank that budget committee. This is a really important budget year. All, all these discussions are important, but this is certainly going to be the toughest budget year that, that we've had since I've been here in the last decade. And the decisions this year will set the table for probably even a tougher budget year next year. And we knew this was coming. This is the last couple of years of the property tax reform implementation. So we knew these last two years would be difficult. Unfortunately, they're being compounded with a couple of other factors that we didn't necessarily anticipate would have as big as impact as they did. So we're going to go through that today a little bit. I mentioned the, the flip book. This is where you can access it. Hopefully you've had a chance to play around. It's a nice forward-facing presentation of the budget. This is new for everybody for us. Hopefully you saw that we tried to incorporate some videos. It allowed us to do some more with charts and graphs and things of that nature. And we hope to expand on that as we get more familiar with the technology and comfort with the videos and all of those things. You can still download a traditional PDF if that's easier for you to work from. If you have any trouble with that, just let me know. So, you know, a budget's a never, never-ending cycle, but we try to put a review schedule up here just so you are aware. We always like to start with the strategic plan because if we're doing our job correctly as staff, you're seeing your strategic plan throughout this budget document. And so we dated that back to 2020. Council knows that one of your tasks early this, this year will be to adopt a new strategic plan. We did hold a budget work session with council back in September, and we're here on that third box doing the operating budget review. On Wednesday, we'll have a capital improvement plan review. So today's operations. Next week is going to be focused on those capital investments, those major roads and parks and public facilities, utilities, those types of things. We'll touch on a little bit of that today, but mostly save that for next week. The, the important things to know here, and these are state dictated deadlines, is that we have to set the public hearing for our maximum property tax on February 1st, which means we need to have all decisions made that may influence how high that property tax rate or levy needs to be, really by the end of January, January 25th. So if the council's going to have discussions that will force us to, or that will lead us to have a higher property tax levy and associated rate, that's got to be done in January. Once you set that ceiling of your property tax, you can have really the month of February then to go and debate expenditure decisions. We need to have those expenditure decisions made by the end of February. We'll say February 22nd here. That allows us to set the public hearing for the budget on March 1st and actually hold the hearing and adopt the budget on March 15th. We have to have the budget into the county outage office by the end of March. It's a big document. You started to go through that. We certainly don't expect that you'll be able to read every page. And what I've done here for your future reference is just the, the sections of the budget that I really think it's important for you as elected officials to spend some time with. So as you continue to look through this budget, please take a look at these sections. I want to talk a little bit about fund structure. Government fund accounting isn't necessarily intuitive for, for everybody. And I'm going to try to use the laser pointer here. Hopefully you can follow on the, the handouts as well. We have the different types of funds across the top here, and I'll start with the general fund. That's 90% of your discussions during the budget are going to be focused on the general fund. That's where our property tax collections come into, and that's what's going to fund your police, your fire, your parks, your general government operations. So again, 90-plus percent of the council's deliberations tend to be within the general fund. We have special revenue funds, which is the second column here. I like to just describe these as, these are funds that have strings attached to them, right? So these are either grant funds like CDBG or Home where we have to account for those separately, and there's limitations on how we can spend those. We have things like our Schmidt accounts in here. We have our road use tax, so that fuel pump tax that we get, we have, there's only certain uses that are eligible to, to use those funds on, so we account for those different. So those special revenues that, that have limitations on how you can spend are accounted for separately. The third is debt, pretty self-explanatory. We collect funds to pay off debt that we've issued. Enterprise funds, we'll spend quite a bit of time today, particularly in the public work section, going through enterprise funds. These are business-like accounts. This is our water. This is our sewer refuse collection. Essentially, we operate these like a business, except we don't have that profit motive like a private business would, okay? So we charge the users fees. We charge you a water fee, and when we deliver you the water, those fees sustain that operation. So whatever we're charging is what we need to operate that system. Capital projects, again, that's really for next week. And then we don't spend a whole lot of time on these internal service funds. These are more internal accounting. This is fleet replacement, I T S equipment, copiers and things like that. We do charge backs to different departments to account for usage and that sort of thing. So we don't really spend a whole lot of time within these internal service funds. I want to take a minute just to talk about some of the recent budget initiatives in recent, you know, roughly last three, four years. And, and the council's done quite a bit during these last years. So I won't go through all these, but you could see we've increased the minimum wage. That had nearly a million-dollar price tag, and that's not a one-time expense. That's with us forever because we lifted those wages. We continue to pay those higher wages. We converted a lot of temporary, which are non-benefited hourly positions, to permanent positions. That carried a cost of about a quarter million. And you can go down the list and see a number of the other things that we've done. The important thing to communicate to you, and, and we're doing a little bit of foreshadowing here, is we've been able to do this because we've had robust growth in our taxable valuations. We've had the flexibility to take on these new initiatives, and unfortunately, we're, we're not in that position the next couple of years to be able to tackle some of these, these bigger, bolder initiatives. But I do want to point out the success that we've had in recent years in advancing these because a lot of these still tie directly to the active strategic plan of the city council. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the bad news, the challenges upfront, and then we're going to get into some of the, the focus areas of the budget. So this is not a new slide. This is a slide that has been presented in some way, shape or form to, to the last probably six or seven councils. These are all the things that we've been watching out for, and it's really been a warning in years past to say, these things are hanging out there and they could create a problem for us. And unfortunately, we do have all these things converging right now. This warning is turning into more of a, a reality for us. So commercial backfill, we used to kind of warn the council, backfill's going to be taken away eventually. Well, it was taken away last year, or at least the, the legislation was passed to begin the phase out. We've known the multi-residential taxability, so if you own multi-residential property, you're not paying as much taxes as you used to be. And that's, that's been an incremental hit to us with the sharpest hits coming this year and next year. Residential rollback, we're going to get into that a little bit, but that's a state factor that tells, tells you how much of your single-family home you need to pay taxes on, all right? You don't pay taxes on 100% of your value. You pay taxes on a roughly 56% of your value right now, and that number fluctuates year to year, and that's a number set by the state. And so as that number drops, if the state formula drops that number, that's fewer, that's our tax base kind of being eroded for that year. Stagnation in taxable property growth, this has been one that we really haven't seen over the past decade until now. We've seen really robust taxable value growth in Iowa City, and unfortunately, the last couple of years, we haven't been able to keep up that trend. And then volatility in, in key expense lines. I think we all probably hear the stories of inflationary pressures, supplies, materials, delays, all those things are leading towards more volatile expenses which, which are fighting us a little bit now. So I'm going to go through each of these and talk a little bit about them. The state of Iowa backfill. So this was an effort by the state legislature back in 2013. Before this reform bill, commercial, used to, commercial properties would pay taxes based on 100% of their value. So if you owned a million-dollar property that was commercial in nature, our tax rate went into 100% of your value. You paid on that, that whole value. The state reduced that to 90%. So now, now you only pay taxes on $900,000 of your value if you own that million-dollar property. The state said, don't worry, cities, we're going to make you whole. And for eight or nine years, they did make us whole more or less. We, we used to receive 1.5 million from the state to make up for that gap. Well, last year, the state said, we're going to phase that out. And we've been helping you long enough, cities, you should be able to, to handle this on your own now. So we're going to go from 1.5 to approximately 1.2 million. You can see how that's accounted for on the right side. But we're going to lose approximately $340,000 a year in revenue over the next five years, and cumulatively, that'll be about a $7 million impact to our budget. That 1.5 million, I'd like to give you some context. That's the equivalent of pretty much operating a fire station. You know, if we look at the cost of 15 firefighters, roughly $100,000 per employee with salary and benefits, that's, that's roughly what it takes to operate a, a fire station 24/7. So it's a significant amount of money that we will be losing over the five-year period. Multi-residential, this piece hurt us quite a bit. And, and if you're a college town, because college towns tend to have more multi-residential property, these are apartments essentially, you got hit a little bit harder by this provision of the 2013 reform bill. It used to be prior to 2013 that if you owned an apartment building, that was treated like a commercial property. So again, you paid taxes on 100% of that building value. The state said, you know what? We'd rather see apartments taxed at a residential rate. Again, residential rates fluctuate, but it's currently in the 50s, and we'll go through that. So every year, the state has reduced that taxable value for, for multi-residential properties, and it's taken it from 100 all the way to next year, it'll meet the residential rate, and we won't have multi-residential anymore. It'll just be considered residential. Huge loss to us. You can see some of the stats here. For this year, those properties are going to be taxed at 63.75% of their value, which is a loss of 146 million in taxable value for, for us, just in fiscal year '23. That's about a $3 million in lost property tax revenue just for this year. And you look at the cumulative effect over this, since the property tax bill was passed, it's close to a $14 million hit to us, and that's real revenue. That's not taxable value. That's, that's real revenue to us. So this slide just kind of illustrates that. So if you go all the way back to where we started, you can see multi-residential, that used to be commercial, 100%, and you can just see how they've dropped it down. It started off at two years at 5%, then it went down to, you know, 3% to 4% a year, all the way down to, this is where we're at now, 63.75. And, you know, this hit has, has, has hurt every year, but you can see what's going to happen next year, which is why next year is going to be a really tough budget year. Instead of dropping 3% or 4%, these two numbers have to equal here, and it's going to equal whatever this number is. And you can see that we've been pretty consistent that we're in the mid-50s. We should, we should probably expect we're going to stay in the mid-50s. So instead of a 3% to 4% tax or rollback rate drop for, for apartments, you're going to see a 9% or 10% drop in all reality, and that's going to have a huge impact on our tax base. And then again, going forward, there is no multi-residential property classification anymore. So this residential rollback trend becomes a lot more important going forward, okay? So this is the percentage of your, what used to be single-family home that's being taxed, all right? So if you own a $100,000 home, every year you pay, we take that tax rate into a slightly different percentage of that value. And you can see it's been up around 81% as a high. This goes all the way back to 1978, and it's been as low as 44% in about 2007 or 2008. Currently, we're sitting over here at 56%, and one of the big pressures on this budget is it dropped another 2% this year. So again, if you're a homeowner, that's good news, right? You're going to pay a little bit less taxes, but we have to struggle, we have to struggle with that. And you can see the number up there. For every percentage that drops, it's about $800,000 in revenue for Iowa City, 825. We are looking at a 2.3% drop this year. That's 56 to 54. If you strip out the rounding that we did there, it's 2.3%, which means it's a, about a $2 million impact to our budget this year. $2 million in revenue that we otherwise would have gotten if that would have just stayed at 56.
Jeff, can I ask a question?
Yes.
How, how does this, is this somehow tied to farmland price? How does the state set these?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not a discretionary setting by the state. There is a formula, and I'd have to, I'd have to get back to you on exactly what that is, but I believe it has its roots in the agricultural crises in the 70s and 80s is, is when they really started to hone in on this. So one of the, one of the major influencers in this, I believe, is agricultural land prices. We can certainly follow up with you and get you more information on that, on that formula. So this is just something to watch, particularly as, as multi-residential now or going forward will match this rate. This is going to become a lot more critical for the city, and we frankly would just like to see this stable, you know, from a budget standpoint. It's nice to be predictable, and when it fluctuates a couple percentage points a year, it can either be a really nice benefit or, or a real challenge like it will be this year. Okay, so this is, this is getting to the slide on our, our taxable growth trends. And one way we look at that is just looking at building permits, right? So if, if we know there's a lot of building activity, usually that is about a one or two-year lag, and then you see that reflected in our taxable value growth. And so this goes back from 2010 all the way to 2021. These are calendar years, so 2021 is a complete year now. And you can see, early on in that decade, we were pretty low, under, under the 100 million mark there. And then you can see we had a, a growth up to that 161. We had a really good year in 2016. That was just a couple of large projects coming together all at once. And then we sustained this really high level of growth from 16 to 19. I want you to remember that, 16 to 19, that really high-level growth. Those corresponding budget years, when you look at 17 through 20, that's when a lot of those recent initiatives that I touched on earlier were accomplished, the minimum wage, the, the temporary to permanent conversions. When we have, when we're back down to this level here that we're at, we can expect that we're not going to see a whole lot of taxable growth because of those low, low permit numbers. Now, we did get a little bounce back in 2021. That's not a terrible number, that 135. Unfortunately, 35 of that is tied up into one permit. That's the tailwind's permit. So if you strip that one permit out, you're, you're still at that 100 million mark, and that tailwind's project has a TIF associated with it. So that 35 million big value permit isn't going to hit our, our kind of budget as immediate as some other projects might. We did have a really good year in single-family homes. We issued 133 single-family permits, which is our highest level in four years. It shows the strength of that market. Unfortunately, the commercial industrial market, even multifamily market, just wasn't very strong these past few years. Okay, so there's a lot going on in this slide, but this is a really important one to connect to your last slide. So what the orange shows is essentially our tax base. We talked about tax base. You can see how it's grown over the last decade. The black line is the percentage of growth in that tax, in that tax base. And I want to point out a, a couple of things. One, you can just look across the, the percentage growth line, and you can see that outside of fiscal year 16 there, you know, seven, three and a half, five, four, eight, three, those are, those are pretty strong numbers. And another important thing to know is the pattern here, and I'll explain this. Up, down, up, down, up, down in terms of the percent. That's because the assessor reassesses properties every other year. So if you own existing property, the assessor will come in and reevaluate your, your property every other year. And that's what you're seeing these spikes in. That's when we get these, these odd-year spikes. That's why those are higher. In these other years, the only growth you're seeing is new growth, essentially new buildings being added because the assessor will assess those as they, as they basically come online. What's most concerning here is obviously this piece of the trend. This year, this budget year we're talking about, is typically a higher year. It's a reassessment year. That means earlier in, in 20, in, in '21, the assessor would have gone out and reassessed all properties, and we should have seen that trend continue with the bounce back. We didn't. And so that doesn't mean that trend is broken forever. This trend is, is still the predominant trend. That means when I say next year is going to be even tougher, because we'll be lucky to keep that flat. And you can see we've gone down every year where it's not a reassessment year. So this number will probably stay negative. It may drop even further negative. Our taxable value dropped a quarter of a percent this year. You see, we haven't experienced that in, in the last many years, probably have to go back into the 2000s during some of the recessionary times around 2008 to see a negative taxable value growth. Now, I will point out that our overall growth, our assessed growth, grew three, about 3.5%. So our assessed value grew, but you've got to remember, assessed value and taxable value are two different things. And when I was explaining the, the rollback figures, that's where those come into effect. So while we grew 3.5%, that 2% cut to the residential rollback, the drop in the multi-residential rollback, that's what eroded us to get below that one. Essentially, we weren't able, for the first time, to grow out of those property tax reform pressures that we've had. We've always been able to grow more than those cut us, and this time, those cuts were deeper than our growth. The last slide I'll touch on before turning it over to Rachel is those volatile variable costs. We'd like to just show you a couple of examples. These are things that we typically cannot control or don't have a whole lot of control on. I'll start with property and liability insurance as an example. We've seen over the five years, 113% increase in our property and liability insurance, and this is something that a lot of cities are struggling with right now. That's a $610,000 impact to our budget. A big driver of that is cyber liability. I think we've all can appreciate the, the news stories and coverages of, of cyber attacks and, and those sorts of things. Well, that's really put a ton of upward pressure on our insurance rates. Fuel is another thing. We're looking at about 58% increase from our actual FY '21 to what we're budgeting this year. And that's just, that's not increased consumption. We're actually doing quite a bit to reduce consumption in our fleet by going to electric vehicles and things like that, but that's just the overall inflationary pressures on petroleum. Okay, so we're going to turn to a revenue section, and I'm going to invite Rachel up to talk you through revenue.
Okay, good morning. Like Jeff mentioned, I'm just going to spend some time here going through the revenue side of things. And I'm actually going to start with just a kind of overview of revenue sources across all of our funds. So on the screen, you see just a breakdown of all of our revenue sources across all city funds. I won't go through each of these, but I just want to hit on two, two of them specifically. So first, that green slice, charges for services, that accounts for 23% of all of our revenue. And that really, if you recall, if you think back to Jeff's presentation on our fund structure, that really pays for our enterprise funds. So that's those funds that we operate like a business, your transit, your parking, your utilities, refuse water, those kinds of things. And then the other big slice here is property taxes, which accounts for 35%. And that really helps pay for our general fund, which is on this slide here. So the last slide was all funds, and this is just our general fund. Again, I'm not going to go through all of these, but I will call out a couple. So here, again, you see a small slice, 2% charges for services. All those fees we charge, like rec fees, inspection fees, those kinds of things, that accounts for just 2% of revenue coming into our general fund. Another smaller one I'll call out here is other city taxes. That includes hotel motel tax revenue and utility franchise tax revenue, and that also accounts for just 4% of the money coming into our general fund. The big, the big player here obviously is property taxes. We are heavily reliant on property taxes in our general fund. Redmond will talk a little bit later about what that means for expenditures, but that's why you'll hear us talk today so frequently about our concerns with our tax base because we are so reliant on those property taxes to pay for general fund operations. So that kind of leads me into my next slide here. This is showing kind of a comparison of our tax base and our tax rate over the past 10 or so years. So to do kind of a quick recap of what Jeff just talked about with that valuation trend, that trend in our tax base, I've circled in red the, those odd years, those assessment year, those revaluation years where we typically see that growth. And you see that's certainly been the case FY '17, FY '19, FY '21. You're seeing 7.5%, 8.5% growth. That's strong growth in our tax base. And then in fiscal year 2023, that last bar, that's where you really see that trend bucked. As Jeff mentioned, it's about a quarter of a percent drop, so that means our tax base is actually shrinking in fiscal year '23, and we expect that to also be the case in fiscal year '24. Now, this is directly kind of related to our property tax rate because all of those big budget initiatives that you heard about earlier, you were able to do that because we, we had such strong growth in our property tax base, and we were able to dedicate resources to really major initiatives like affordable housing, raising the city's minimum wage, doing those kinds of things without raising the property tax rate. In fact, fiscal year '23 will be our 11th straight year of a property tax rate decrease, and we've largely been able to do that through a reduction in our debt service levy. And again, that, that's credit to the city council and finance staff's really prudent debt management strategies. I will note, though, that we have kind of leaned out that debt service levy as much as we think we can, so we, we expect that we'll kind of stay around this property tax rate going forward. And then this is just a kind of a reminder that the Iowa City property tax rate is just one of the total property tax rate that a property owner pays on their tax bill. So as you can see here, Iowa City accounts for 41% of the total share. This is called the, the overlapping This is called the, the overlapping tax rate. Sometimes you hear the consolidated tax rate. And, and we account for forty-one percent of that share. And then this, this is just kind of again showing how we've managed to, to reduce our share of that overall property tax rate over the past ten or so years. You can see back in fiscal year two thousand and twelve, we were up closer to forty-three, forty-four percent of that total share, and we've dropped down to, to about forty-one percent. So property tax owner pays the sum of all of, all of the property rate of all of these taxing bodies. And we have, have managed to reduce our share of that down to about forty-one percent. This is just a comparison of Iowa City's property tax rate with other large cities in Iowa. So I'll start with that mid, kind of middle column there, the two thousand and twelve tax rate. You can see by that, a decade ago, we were competing with council bluffs for the highest tax rate in the state of Iowa. And it's been a priority of the city council and of the city staff to really, to really reduce that, that over the last ten years. And you can see in that last column that we have been successful. We've reduced our tax, our property tax rate by about twelve percent. We've dropped below Davenport, Des Moines, and more recently Cedar Rapids. So now we're settled at that fifteen points, I'm sorry, fifteen dollars and sixty-seven cent range, kind of in the middle of the pack. And that is where we expect to stay through the years, through, in the coming years. As I mentioned, we've kind of leaned out that debt service levy as much as we can. And without any sort of new revenue, revenue source, it would be really difficult to drop into that fourteen-dollar range. And then over the next few slides, I just want to couple, touch on a couple of other major revenue sources. So first, on this slide, you see hotel motel tax. If you think back to that pie chart of all of the, the revenue sources that we take in, you'll recall that hotel motel tax was a smaller percentage of that, one and a half, maybe two percent or so of the revenue that, that we're bringing in there. But nonetheless, it is a nice revenue source for us. As you can see in fiscal year twenty-three and in years past, we typically bring in about a million dollars there. There was a bit of a depression during the pandemic, but we anticipate that, that that will return to normal in the coming years. The utility franchise tax as well. So the state of Iowa permits cities to adopt a utility, a utility franchise tax on gas and electric utility bills up to five percent. Iowa City currently has a franchise fee rate of one percent. So we do have a bit of capacity to grow there, about four percent. As you can see, that one percent rate returns just around a million dollars, sometimes lower. And that volatility really comes in due to climate and weather. So hotter summers, colder winters, the more that a resident is using their heating and cooling systems, that all contributes to kind of the volatility here. And then road use tax. So Iowa City uses our road use tax to fund our annual pavement rehab program. And you can kind of see a little bit of the history of what we've been bringing in, in road use tax over the years. So way back in around fiscal year two thousand and twelve, that was just a little, a little bump we got from that two thousand and ten census. Around FY fifteen, sixteen is when the state bumped their fuel tax to ten cents, bringing in a little bit more for us. And then in fiscal year twenty-two, we expect that we again will see a little bit of a bump from that, from the two thousand and twenty census. We don't know what that is quite yet, but we do expect to see a small increase. I will say that this has not been, and I'll talk about this later, but this has not been growing at the pace that our pavement rehab needs had been. So like I said, I'll, I'll touch on that a little bit later in the presentation as well. And then local option sales tax. This, of course, is the one revenue source I'm talking about today that we, we do not have. Iowa City did have, you may recall, after the two thousand and eight floods, the voters did approve a four-year local option sales tax. During that time, we brought in about eight point eight million dollars a year. And though that helped to fund really major flood resilience projects, like the Gateway Project, the South wastewater treatment plant facility, and the creation of Riverfront Crossings Park. That lost expired in fiscal year two thousand and thirteen. But as you can see, many of the other city, major cities in Iowa do have a local option sales tax. And you can kind of see on this slide what, what, what they use that for. And that option does remain open to Iowa City with approval of the voters. So that's kind of a, an overview on the revenue side of things. I'm going to hand it off to Redmond, and he's going to go through the expenditure side.
Good morning, counsel.
Good morning.
As you know, I'm like four months in. So I've been doing a crash course on the budget. I want to thank staff, and I think Jeff hit right on. It's incredible just to watch staff pull, pull all this stuff together. So I definitely share the pain of the new counselors trying to take in all this information. So I'm going to do a little cameo, and, and that's going to be the expenditures. Our first slide here, I got, okay, there we go. First slide here is a, a chart. It's, it's kind of basic, but I also find it, you know, interesting. Obviously, your eyes tend to go to the, the anchors of the charts. The business type activities, obviously fifty-three million, that sticks out. Capital projects, also forty-seven million, that sticks out. And then public safety is also one of those things that's constantly in, in the public's eye. And, and that's at twenty-three million. So let's kind of talk about what kind of makes up those activities. Business type activities, obviously, the things in this name, the things that the city does that reflects business processes and things of that nature. Those are going to be things like transit, parking, water, wastewater. Capital projects, we're going to be, you know, spending time talking about that, obviously, in our CIP process and work sessions. Public safety is one that maybe folks don't, you know, readily identify, things like code enforcement, obviously, police and fire, but also housing inspections and building inspections, really key pieces to having a safe community. I think the interesting part of this slide, if, if you will, if we were able to make this three-dimensional, the public tend to also think that these are competing interests many, many of the times, that if you, you take, if you build up one, you have to take away from another. But I would argue that if we were able to look down on this and look down on the pillars, that it would actually make a circle. And, and that the success of one pillar actually helps the other pillars. So, you know, essentially, at the end of the day, if they're well-managed, well-balanced, that these expenditures will help ratepayers and taxpayers justify their investment in those services that they're getting. Our next slide is focused on the general fund expenditures. The, the previous slide was all the expenditures. So obviously, you can tell right off the bat that personnel makes a big chunk of that. There is no doubt that, about the fact that a human asset in any organization, particularly high-performance organizations, the human asset is going to be the most important piece of that organization. And that's no difference here. You can see that seventy-one percent of our general fund goes towards personnel expenses. If we drill down into, into that a little bit more, we'll actually see those numbers. I think one of the things that is striking here is personnel is pretty, a pretty solid, stable, but always growing expenditure. You're going to have hard costs, benefits, pensions. And these things, they don't tend to go down. They always tend to go up. And they're often the key to having a strong and happy human asset, which you count on to deliver the services, which justifies your ratepayers and your property taxpayers being happy with the services they're getting, which then feeds into all, everything else you're doing. So it's, it's kind of a circle that feeds off of, off of itself, and it kind of starts with your personnel. But the challenge in tightened, tightened, tightened budget years, other things have to give. So some of the things that would, would be naturally vulnerable to that are things like services. And we'll, we'll get back to the contingency, supplies. And then you can't build as many things, so your capital outlay is, is always vulnerable. The contingency here kind of sticks out, but that's actually a planning process for expansion for our new fire station, the personnel pieces of that. So the city's been really smart, and you'll see this kind of trending through many of the other aspects of the budget, is that the city has done really well in planning for growth and, and planning for these type of contingencies, and that, that's one of them. So let's talk a little bit about debt services. Just probably three main areas that the council should focus on when you're thinking about our debt service. One, probably the most important is the state laws that, that basically limits the debt service to no more than five percent of the total assessed property value of the city. So we're in a really good spot. We utilize about eighteen point eight percent of the allowable debt limit. The city's also has strong internal processes that also limit the levy not to exceed thirty percent of the city's levy in the fiscal year. Right now, we're at about half of that, at fifteen point eight percent. Excuse me, I'm having a hard time breathing through my mask. So, and then this third column is, is really about our triple-A bond rating. And this is a really impressive piece, and I'll go into how rare having a triple-A bond rating is. But Moody's, which is a independent credit rating agency, has given the city of Iowa City the highest rating based on its past fiscal deliberations and dedication and investments, which has made Iowa City a very strong and safe investment for investors who seek out municipal bonding and things for that in their portfolios. So for, for those at home, it would be more like having a great credit score from TransUnion when you try to go out and buy a car. Obviously, the higher your credit score, the better deal you will get on your car. So as we move forward to make investments in infrastructure and things of that nature, having a strong credit score, having a strong rating, triple-A, allows us to get more for the tax dollars that we invest. So this slide just kind of shows how rare that is. This is a look at all U.S. cities. We're in like the twelve point four percent across the nation look. This slide is focused in on how we're doing in the state of Iowa. And there's only four communities in the state of Iowa that has a rating of this, of this nature. So that's Cedar Rapids, which has recently just got that, West Des Moines, and Clive, and ourselves. Looking at West Des Moines and Clive, those are suburban communities. So managing older infrastructure and traditional neighborhoods and all those kind of things, they don't necessarily have all that. Their infrastructure is brand-new, they just built new subdivisions and things like that. So they haven't gotten to the point where you have to start paying to maintain those things. So it's a little easier for them to get to that level than a diverse community of, you know, traditional neighborhoods and things of that nature like Iowa City. So it just kind of just bolsters how well the city has done in managing that. So I'll turn it over to Jeff.
All right, so we're going to jump into our enterprise funds. These are those funds that we operate more or less like a business. And, and there's a, there's a lot on this slide. It's there for reference. I just want to, I'm going to highlight a couple of things. One, with this budget proposal, we are not recommending any rate increases to water, wastewater, parking, transit, landfill, or stormwater. But we are recommending a three-dollar-per-month increase in this refuse line item here, okay? So this is the curbside pickup. If you have a single-family home, or if you're in a, a dwelling of four units or less, the city has that cart program where we, we pick up weekly. You can see this is even with the three-dollar increase. We're really just getting to the point where these are estimated revenues coming in, four point four. Expenditures are at four point six. So we've been running a little bit of a deficit in this fund, and it's been shrinking our fund balance. We think with this three-dollar rate increase, that we'll get to a pretty stable leather, level. You can see it's still a deficit this year, but there's some one-time expenditures in there that we think will level off. So it doesn't get us to a super comfortable place, but we're trying to balance the pressure on residences and fees with really what we need to operate this service and, and have a safe fund balance. We do have a, a healthy fund balance of about twenty-three percent. So a little bit of a deficit does not have a huge impact on us. I did want to point out a, a couple other funds that are highlighted here. We'll stay right below that with landfill. You can also see in landfill, we're running a deficit. We have some significant capital needs out at the landfill. We've got some new buildings, new cell developments, and things of that nature. So this is an intentional deficit. We've got to see, once we get a few of these capital projects under our belt, how those bids come in and how they impact operations. But this is definitely on our radar. We may need to be looking at a tipping fee increase at the landfill in the coming years. And so the landfill operates based on the fee you pay when you, when you come into it. One thing to keep in mind, though, is we raise the landfill rate, it hits the, the refuse account, right? So we, we pay that too. We don't get a free pass in the landfill. So if we raise the landfill rate, and we know we've got a pretty tight refuse, you can expect that even a refuse may need to be bumped. So that's just kind of on your radar. We'll watch that in future budgets. Transit is the other one I want to point out here. We're going to talk a little bit more about transit later. We are running still a little bit of a surplus in here. We've been benefited from a lot of COVID relief dollars, particularly with the CARES Act, that have really stabilized some operations there. But we still have some significant concerns in, in transit, most notably our ridership. We still have not come close to recovering to pre-COVID levels. And again, we'll get into that a little bit more later on in this presentation. You can see we do have a pretty healthy fund balance in transit, both restricted and unassigned. That is largely because we've been saving up to have a competitive match for federal grants. So we want to replace our transit buildings, a major initiative of ours. We know that if we have a twenty, thirty percent match, we'll be more competitive for those federal grants. So that's why you're seeing us carry a, a bigger fund balance. And that's what we're trying to do in operating with the surplus here, is move that to a fund balance to help pay for that new facility. I do want to talk about the water shut-off policy. This is, this is one of those items we probably can't get into today, but it needs to be on your radar. We probably need to have a discussion on it sooner rather than later. At the onset of COVID, the city made a decision to suspend the practice of shutting off water. Much like any utility account, if you don't pay, the traditional way to recoup that payment has been to disconnect service, whether you're talking about electric or water or whatnot. We've twice talked to counsel about reinstating this policy because of the financial impact it's having on us. And the council has chosen not to reinstate that policy yet. Where we stand today, we have about six hundred thousand dollars in uncollected revenues. That number continues to grow. That number continues to grow, and there was some hope that with all the state relief and other relief programs, that, that we would make up those dollars. You can see that we've gotten about $140,000 to our water utility from those relief programs. So we definitely, they, they definitely are not keeping up. They've been helpful, but they are, are definitely not keeping up with the, the number of accounts and the, the dollar amounts that are, that are going uncollected. We will need to consider that, you know, essentially when we have uncollected accounts and we don't have a, a serious way about collecting those dollars, all the other ratepayers in the system take on that burden. So that $600, $600,000 has to be shouldered by all the rate, other ratepayers. The longer we go and the higher that gets, it's going to put more pressure on us to raise water, sewer, refuse rates, stormwater rates, to compensate for those uncollected revenues. So again, just something that needs to be on your radar, something that we definitely need to, to visit early in 2022 again. We're getting into kind of some summary slides here. Want to talk about the property tax impact to the kind of average house. So we'll walk you through this example. This is fiscal year '22 versus the budget we're proposing today. And if you, we use $100,000 for an assessed value of a house, that's not because that's the average assessed value in Iowa City, it's just more simple to do the math. If you have a $200,000 assessed value or 300, you should be able to eat, more easily do the math. So to show you how this all works, if your home is assessed at 100,000, you can see that the taxable value is 54,000 next year, 130. Remember, that ties to that rollback. That rollback rate is 54%, and you can see it, it's currently at 56, going to 54. So you're paying your taxes on a, a lower amount of your value. We, we multiply our levy into that, and you actually end up paying this amount. So this year, if you own that 100,000 dollar house, you're paying $884 in property taxes to the city. That actually goes down $38. So that's that rollback effect. Now, keep in mind, your assessed value may go up, so that, that could be, you know, washed out. And also keep in mind, we don't know what the school district, or the county, or Kirkwood may do with their tax rate. So this isn't an absolute for any residential owner, but it illustrates what the impact of our rate may be on, upon an owner. We essentially take this information, you can see on the top, excuse me, you can see the $38 decrease at the top here, and then we layer in all our other traditional fees, utility fees, to show what the total impact would be. And you can see here, stormwater, the same. This is the $3 per month refuse increase, so you can see a $36 increase there, and then everything else stays the same. So the total impact is, is about a wash. It's about 0%. Little, little, little bit into the negatives, but a $2 savings for that $100,000 home. All right, I'm going to turn it back over to Rachel, who's going to talk about some areas of focus.
So we have talked a little bit today about some of those concerns we do have, but I also think it's important for the city council to know that in, in all operating budgets, we do prioritize our funds for the city council's strategic plan objectives, adopted master plans, and enhancing any core services that we are able to. So I want to talk a little bit about some of those things. So first on this slide is a little bit about our climate action efforts. As you may recall, a few years ago, the city council created an office of climate action and outreach, and at that time, they also approved a 24-cent emergency levy, which is dedicated to implementing the climate action plan and the city council's emission reduction goals. Now, the staffing is not tied to the emergency levy, that is general fund, general, funded out of the general fund. So emergency levy, revenue is directly paying for all climate action programs, incentives, education efforts, and in, in the past few years, that has been bringing in about $1 million. Now, we have had some staff vacancies and some reduced capacity, which has accumulated a bit of a balance there. We expect that we'll be at full staffing by spring of 2022, coming up here, but for fiscal year 2023, we are actually recommending just a 4 cent drop in that emergency levy. That'll bring in around $850,000, and this is the level that we've identified as being sufficient to carry out those climate action initiatives. It'll enable us to spend down a little bit of that balance that we have accumulated. And importantly for you to know, that does open up a little bit of capacity in that emergency levy. The state allows you to levy up to 27 cents in that levy, so if there were other initiatives that the city council wished to direct that funding to, that opens up a little capacity there. But just talking a little bit about some of the accomplishments that we've been able to, to achieve in the past year. Our Climate Action Office held the first annual energy blitz in the South District neighborhood. They're planning to expand upon that in the coming years. We held our first in-person, week-long climate action festival. We, 333 households participated in our Root for Trees Tree voucher program. We continued our climate action grant program, and we launched some commercial and industrial energy efficiency matching grants. Coming up, that we have planned with our fiscal year 2023 proposed budget, we'll be focusing on resilience, especially in underserved neighborhoods, expanding residential energy efficiency programs and incentives, making some improvements to city facilities to improve energy efficiency and electrification, and then implementing an EV readiness plan that was completed in the past year.
Rachel, if I could stop you for a second?
Yeah.
So just to summarize, the 4 cent overall proposed reduction in the general levy is based on this 4 cent reduction?
Correct. Yep, that's correct.
And then, just, I think I may have misheard you, but the personnel costs in the climate division, I guess?
Yep.
Do come out of this, or don't?
They do not. So there are three authorized personnel for the Climate Action Office, and those are funded out of the general fund.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just real briefly, the, the reason that we do that is, is recognizing that this is a unique property tax source. You know, it is to address emergencies, and, you know, should we have a natural disaster or some other major emergency come on, council may want to say, we need to shift away from some of these educational efforts and, and grant efforts and fund whatever the, the emergency at hand is, and we didn't want to have staff subject to those winds. So by putting staff on the property, the general fund kind of property tax levy, it would allow us to make changes to the emergency level without the pain of layoffs standing there. So it, it just is intended to give you and future councils more flexibility.
Okay, then I'll go ahead and move on to a slide on social justice and racial equity. This, of course, has been a major strategic objective of the city council for several years. Typically, our operating budgets do include several investments, and for fiscal year 2023, that's no different. So a couple of, of items that we're recommending in, in the upcoming budget include a $25,000 increase to the Social Justice and Racial Equity Grant Program. That would bring that total program up to $100,000. We're recommending actually an elimination of all library fines for all patrons. This, the library has not been charging fines throughout the pandemic, and believe that, that this is the time to, to kind of follow the national trend and the trend across the state to eliminate fines as an equity issue. The '23 budget recommends a new annual commitment of $25,000 set aside specifically to support BIPOC business growth and entrepreneurship. We include funding to support our community's crime, I'm sorry, crisis response efforts. We include funding to, to help sponsor partnerships and events, including the annual criminal justice summit, Juneteenth, and MLK Day. And then we include funding to, to make accessibility and ADA improvements at sidewalks, parks, and to sponsor an annual ADA event. I do also want to mention that in June of 2020, with the Black Lives Matter resolution, the city council had decided to set aside a non-recurring amount of $1 million for racial justice activities, and that, that funding was carried over. It remained, it has not been spent to date and remains available for council's use. Our A to Agencies Grant Program is considered an important part of our social justice and racial equity efforts, so this grant program provides some operating assistance to local nonprofits and social service agencies. In fiscal year 2018, the council decided to set aside 5% for what is called emergent, emerging social service agencies. And each year, about $100,000 in CDBG funds or Community Development Block grant funds are dedicated to the A to Agencies program, and then we supplement that with the general fund dollars. And the council has made it a priority in recent years to really bolster and enhance this program. You can see kind of the history of that on this slide here. In fiscal year 2020, the city council decided to fund all applications, which effectively doubled that program. They again increased that amount in fiscal year 2021. And then last year, the city council in that approved budget included a 3.5% increase, and that was made with the expectation that going forward, an annual 3% increase would be added to this program just to keep up with inflation. So accordingly, for fiscal year 2023, we are recommending another 3% increase. That brings the general fund support for the A to Agencies program to just over $600,000. Affordable housing, of course, is a, a major priority of both the city council, city staff, and the community. So in the past four or five years, $1 million in general fund dollars has been allocated to affordable housing. And over these past five years, since fiscal year 2017, this has resulted in about 9.6 million in affordable housing investments. This has assisted more than 1,286 affordable units, and this does not include rental vouchers, public housing, or workforce tax credits. Additionally, that has leveraged almost 10 million in outside low-income housing tax credit or LIHTC funding. Now, the, the ability to leverage that, that amount of money is, is really, I'd say, in large part due to the city council's decision to allocate about 70% of that annual $1 million to the Housing Trust Fund of Johnson County. The Housing Trust Fund administers those dollars, 20% of, of all of that money they receive is set aside specifically for LIHTC projects, and then the remaining amount is administered through a revolving loan program. So as loan repayments are made, they are able to cycle those funds back through to act on more affordable housing project opportunities. So in addition to that, then that other, what remains of that annual $1 million is broken out as follows. 7.5% is dedicated to an opportunity fund, 7.5% is dedicated to the city's Healthy Homes program, 10% goes to the, the community's security deposit assistance program and a risk mitigation fund, and then 5% is reserved for emergent situations. Now, this $1 million in general fund support does not stand alone. An important part of the city's affordable housing strategy has been the creation of new revenue streams to support affordable housing, and one way that we've done that is through development agreements, TIF and annexation negotiations. Essentially, when, when a project doesn't involve affordable housing units, then the city works to collect affordable housing payments in exchange for incentives such as height or density bonuses, TIF revenue, those kinds of things. So in, in green here is an example of what kind of revenue that does bring in. In Riverfront Crossings District, we've collected about $980,000 to date. Through the Foster Road TIF, we expect to receive about 2.7 million over the next 10 years. And then with the Tailwinds Development, that was just approved in the last year or so, that, that developer paid $1.8 million to our Affordable Housing Fund, and that actually facilitated the purchase of eight duplex units in the South District, which the city will rehab and incorporate into our South District homeownership program. So you can, you can really start to see how that, how that impact turns out. And it's just important, again, to, to think of this as a kind of holistic affordable housing strategy. We have that $1 million in annual general fund allocations. We have those loan repayments coming through the Housing Trust Fund, compounding little by little each year, and then we have these new development streams that we work to get through development agreements. And, and all of this just helps to, to act on more affordable housing opportunities with deeper levels of affordability and more longer-term affordability. And then investments in roads. So I talked to you a little bit earlier about our road use tax revenue, and our annual pavement rehabilitation program is tied to that road use tax revenue. So what you're seeing here is just our annual pavement rehab program. This does not include those major road projects that you do see in the CIP. And as I mentioned before, what we're taking in in road use tax isn't necessarily keeping pace with our road rehab needs. When you kind of combine that with some of our concerns for that revenue source, things like fuel efficiency improving, lower fuel prices, and an undercount of a potentially suppressed count in the 2020 census, we, we will have concerns about whether that road use tax will be able to, to continue to sustain our level of needs there. And so ultimately, what that means is that we're going to have to bond for, for more roads. This is a, this is kind of a, a schedule of up, major upcoming road projects that are included in our CIP. I won't go into these into detail. You'll have your CIP work session next week. We'll, you'll have that opportunity. But again, these are separate from that annual pavement rehab program, so these are CIP-funded, not funded by the road use tax. And just an example of some of those large needs that, that we'll need to bond for, taking that bond capacity away from parks, trails, those kinds of things. One road project that I do want to call your attention to here is that last one, the Market and Jefferson Street Two Way Conversion Project. Last year, we did hear some support from council for, for getting that back into the CIP, so we've included that in 2026. That's about when our staff expect those signals may be ready for replacement and for, from both a financial responsibility standpoint and just a resident disruption standpoint, it makes sense to do those two things together. I'm going to talk about a couple of master plan implementations, parks on this slide and bike on the next. So a couple of major improvements through our parks' master plan that we made in the past year is some accessibility and drainage improvements at both of our dog parks, some ecological restoration work at Hickory Hill Park, Terry True Blood, and Whispering Meadows. And then we recently added some shaded bench swings and public art installations at the Riverfront Crossings Park. In the fiscal year '22, '23 budgets, some upcoming improvements that are budgeted, Glendale Park, some playground and shelter improvements are in Glendale Park, the pedestrian mall, Chattock Green, and Court Hill Park. And then we have some plant accessibility improvements in Harlock Hill Park, Oak Grove, and Ryerson Woods, which will be paired with some ecological improvements there as well. And then our bike master plan, in the coming, in the, the projects that we have planned in 2022, 2023, will really help improve connectivity in the South District neighborhood for bikers. So a couple of projects that we have coming up for bike lane, we have bike lanes planned on Southgate Avenue, West Benton Street, and Rochester Avenue. Bike boulevards will be installed along Weatherby, Hollywood, and Lakeside. We have four-to-three lane conversions planned on Madison and Keokuk that will add bike lanes to both of those as well. The Highway 6 pedestrian trail will be expanded from Fair Meadows to Hines, adding some connectivity there, and then a side path is planned in, in conjunction with the American Legion Road Reconstruction Project. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Jeff. He's going to talk about some upcoming facility needs.
Okay, homestretch, I promise, council. This is a really important thing for me, and I, I want to spend a couple of slides talking about that as we wrap up here. I think it's really, really important that we continue to, to really focus and commit to updating some of our substandard city facilities. We have a lot of facilities that were built either for a community that was much smaller than Iowa City, and certainly aren't maybe meeting some modern, moderate standards that we like, not only for the public, but for our employees as well. I want to say, we, we cannot express to you enough how much of an impact the new streets' buildings for Public Works has had. Ron can talk a little bit about that later today in his presentation, but that has made a world of difference for those employees and for our operations, some real efficiencies there. We think we need to continue to look at that. We've been really focused as a staff on the financial piece of this in budget years, and you can see on the right how we created a facility reserve, and we've been really diligent to trying to dedicate funds to that. We've built that up to about 13 million. However, facilities are expensive, and you can see the list on the left side. When we talk about a transit facility, equipment maintenance facility, renovations at this building, we know that we have fire station expansions and modernizations that are needed. We're going through a parks and rec master plan, which will focus on the pool and the rec centers. Any one of those projects could, could take up all or, or most of that 13 million. So that 13 million's great, but it doesn't go very, very far. We need to be diligent. We need to be diligent about continuing to identify funds to help facilitate these. And they don't all have to be paid in cash, but there are some bonding limitations that we have for some of these facilities. So you see the list there of kind of the priorities that we have identified as staff, and in the CIP, you'll see some of these start to show up. So we're really going to be more aggressive in presenting these to you. Outside of the facilities reserve, we also have an emergency reserve. Just want to report out that that balance is staying stable at 5.1 million. This is really to be used at council's discretion for emergencies, and that, you can see some of the types of emergencies that we might anticipate. We've used this for land acquisition, for flood resiliency, but as we have volatility in revenue sources, we could use this as a short-term gap to avoid more drastic financial measures. And it can also be used to help facilitate or close any final gaps with facility improvements. This budget does include 3.74 FTEs, and I want to walk through those. Most of those FTEs are outside of the general fund, so are not property tax dependent. We have an electrician for our traffic engineering unit. Just as we've increased signalization, we've added decorative lights to bridges and stages and things like that. It would really, really helpful to have an additional electrician on staff that can help troubleshoot those issues. In the Transportation Services Division, we have a program assistant just to help facilitate a lot of the projects identified in the transit plan. One of the reasons that we are asking for a $3 rate increase on refuse is to add another refuse employee. We have seen growth in the community. We have seen more usage of curbside collections, particularly on the yard waste and organics, and that position's really needed just to make sure we're completing those daily runs on time. The two general fund positions are actually just expansions of existing part-time positions. One's a creative assistant in our communications. As we do more graphic design, as we get into reviewing more and more documents that are digital for ADA compliance needs, we could really use those additional hours for that staff person. And then an NDS, the program assistant position. This is, again, an existing position that's part-time, and as we've done more affordable housing, we have more compliance, right? So we have to, we have to check those Riverfront Crossings units. We have to check those TIF units for compliance for 10, 20-year periods, whatever that may be, and that staff could really use some extra hours to help focus in on those efforts. So again, 3.74. This does not come close to kind of meeting the needs of departments, and just to let you know, we had a close to, I think I might have, I think I might have the wrong numbers here, but I think we had well over 15 positions requested by staff. I can follow back up with you later today with that exact number, but there's a lot of needs, and you may hear some of that from your department directors today. We certainly want to try to provide them the resources they need to efficiently carry out their services, but also have to balance that with the acute financial challenges.
Jeff, did I see, or maybe I read it wrong in the budget, that a position to help, to help with the cyber issues?
Yeah, so we actually took that to council probably a couple of months ago, and we asked for that position to be approved outside of the budget cycle because there's some more urgency to that matter. That position has been posted and has been filled.
And does that in any way help with our, some of our insurance costs to have someone actually dedicated to that?
I don't know. I'm kind of looking at the finance. It probably doesn't hurt, but it wasn't a decision we made because we knew we would get an X percent reduction. I'm sure as our insurance policy holders would review us, they would appreciate that and factor that in, but it wasn't hire this position and get this type of reduction type of scenario. All right, just kind of looking ahead, preview to next year and next budget. A lot of our time's going to still be focused on COVID recovery. We know we have the ARPA program. That provides us a great deal of opportunity to have a huge long-term impact on our community. It's going to take a lot of staff time to do that. So in terms of new initiatives, there's a lot of new initiatives that are going to come with ARPA, and that's going to really focus our time. Probably on your next council meeting, you will see a request for a temporary position in NDS to help with grant compliance and ARPA administration. We do have the ability to use administrative dollars as part of those grant awards, and we really feel that's going to be necessary for us just to keep pace with a lot of those ARPA programs. I think you're familiar with what we're working on now. Council will, in the next few weeks, get a, kind of an email or, sorry, a memo summary from the city manager's office outlining where we stand with ARPA. We know your next work session, you're going to be talking about the direct relief program as well, so a lot ahead on that. Our Transit Service expansion, I think council knows, Sunday service is next on our list. We were hoping to be able to implement that this winter or spring. More realistically, it's probably summer of '22. Council probably was aware that we had to reduce frequency on a bus route for a period of time this past fall because of driver shortages. We are still struggling to just fill our current routes with drivers. We have a lot of supervisors that are having to drive buses because we can't keep pace with that, and that's been a challenge for two reasons. One, it's going to be hard to expand service when we can't really run our service right now. But two, the folks who are planning that expansion are spending time driving buses, and so we're a little bit behind on the planning side of things, too. But we will get there, and we, again, we are aiming for this summer for a launch of that program. We're still down 40 to 50% from COVID. If you look at pre-COVID numbers and our current ridership, that worries us. We have seen some great improvements. We're up over 100% over last year. You know, that was that first year of COVID. We've really had good growth, but we just haven't come all the way back yet, and we're obviously still working through COVID right now and just not sure what long-term ridership looks like, but that's an important piece of that financial model. We do plan to pay for the two-year pilot on Sunday service with one-time grant dollars. Those are CARES Act dollars largely, and that's just something that council's going to have to consider. We still have not identified a long-term funding source for Sunday service, which is going to be probably close to 1.5 million, all said and done, to add that one day of Roadway, we've hit this pretty hard, but council in early '21 received a pavement management program report. We currently are in good position relative to our peers throughout the state, and we should feel really good about that because we're the only one that doesn't have a local option sales tax to help support us. But the plan clearly showed, and the projections clearly show, that if our funding levels are stagnant, which they currently are, we're going to see that overall condition of our roads start to, start to drop. And of course, at that point, repairs become more costly, so I just want to keep that on your radar. We talked about facility planning, this just kind of repeats that. There's going to be a lot of staff work this coming year in prioritizing on facility planning. In the CIP, you're going to see transit facility, equipment maintenance facility, renovations at this building, and City Park Pool identified in the CIP to be funded. All those things, we have a fairly good idea on what we want to see, except the pool, right? There's still a master plan trying to determine what the future of City Park Pool is. We just know that its age and conditions are going to force our hand, and regardless of what that master plan says, whether it says reinvest in what's there or clean slate it and, you know, do something different, it's going to cost a significant amount of money. And then finally, for next year's budget, you know, expect an even tougher conversation next year. We've got the elimination of that multi-residential classification. The backfill will continue its phase out. It's a non-assessment year, so we're not going to see that bump, and we know, looking at the building permits the last two years, that we're not going to have a ton of new growth coming online, so you're really probably looking at negative to stagnant at best taxable growth. We think we'll be pretty stable with utility rates. I feel really good about water and sewer rates, where they stand right now. I think we've done a really nice job stabilizing those, and then all these other things that we've continued to, continued to touch on. The takeaways from this budget, we are, I think, successfully navigating the first decline in taxable valuation in over a decade, and we are doing this with a nominal rate decrease through the emergency levy, which Rachel touched on. We are still trying to take what we can and invest in those council strategic priorities. We don't have to dial anything back, which is good. Whenever we make these investments, whether it's in staff or new initiatives, we really do it with the hope that we never have to dial those back, and we're not having to. We are able to add to a few things on a minor level here and there. And then I think we've done a really nice job setting the table for those future public facilities, and in the CIP and just in conversations this next year, you're going to see that become a much higher priority for us. So I appreciate your time. I know it's a lengthy presentation. We are happy to answer any questions that you have before we start to focus on departments, but I'll turn it back over to you, mayor, to see how you want to proceed from here.
Thank you all for your presentation. Really appreciate taking some time and giving us an overview. We'll be hearing from all the departments as we move forward. Council, are there questions that you have at this point, realizing that there will be more in-depth conversation by some of the department heads as they do their presentation?
I just want to make a quick comment that, I mean, doesn't help us at all, but I was having a conversation with Representative Jacoby yesterday about state taxes, and we went back to the 2013 property tax reform, which he is someone who's been doing the money up in Des Moines for a long time, basically labeled the worst thing the state legislature has ever done for communities and cities.
I have one question and maybe a few comments. One, one question I have relates to the increase in assessed values, Jeff, which I think you said averaged out to be 3%.
Yes.
This past year. That's something I would be interested in understanding just in terms of trending. Is that, is that a number, you know, that has been lower in the past, or, you know, where we stand with that? I would also think it would be an interesting percentage to look at at a finer grain, meaning, you know, how does that play out at a more local level within Iowa City? There are certain parts of Iowa City which may be seeing 10% increases in assessed value and others that are relatively flat. And I think that assessed value is an important measurement because it speaks to how property values are holding up over time, and, you know, those, those areas where we might see a flat or possibly even a decrease in assessed value would be an area of concern. What is it that's causing those property values to remain flat? So that's, that's one thing that I think is an important variable looking forward. Another thing that I've always found puzzling, because I've seen this now in several budget discussions, is the, the property tax rate in Ames. I'm always interested in these comparable analyses, and the Ames property tax, similar sort of university town in size, and their property tax rate is quite lower than Iowa City's or any, any of the cities within the state of Iowa. It's really at the low end. So that's another comment I would make. And then, you know, there has been a lot of emphasis on the road conditions, and that, too, is a major concern of mine. You know, I think as staff has been emphasizing, we have, you know, we're a city, we're a legacy city in part. We have older parts of Iowa City, and that's something that the, the road management plan highlighted was the distribution of streets that are in bad repair are not found equally distributed throughout Iowa City. There is, there's a concentration of poorer quality streets in the legacy portions of the city. So, you know, some of us may be living in Iowa City and thinking, God, what's the problem with the roads? If you live in a newer neighborhood, you know, they're in pretty good shape. So it may, it may be you only experience where we have problems if you're driving through the core of Iowa City, and then you start seeing, you know, what we're talking about. So, you know, I know I've emphasized this point before, but, but the realities of living in Iowa City vary depending upon your, your location and, you know, the, the condition of the environment in which you are living. And, you know, it's great to get an overall picture, but I would say at the same time, you know, how, if we were to develop budgets for, for the city on a more fine grain, what those might look like in terms of identifying needs and concerns, because they will vary from, from neighborhood or district to district. And then the last thing I would say is this lost question. It does seem that that is looming. I think we've reached a point, we've been talking about it for a long time, where we may need to seriously consider that, because I'm all for trying to streamlining services, identifying new revenue sources, but it does seem we may be facing a point where an increase in our revenues at the scale of what lost would give us may be something we need to seriously consider at this point. So those are some of my introductory thoughts.
I'm going to borrow your microphone.
Oh, absolutely.
Tell me something. Thank you. Just a couple things. First of all, thank you, city staff. This is a huge document. Going through this, is my first time through this process, was struck by the amount of work, and ongoing work, obviously from years past and moving forward. So thank you all for the hard work and time and effort that you put into creating this. For a new person, it was incredibly understandable, clear, and obviously a lot of work went into it, so thank you all for that. One thing I think that I would find interesting to, for information that we can then pass on to the residents of Iowa City, because as we make these decisions based on, you know, trying to give them the best possible city, is talking about some of these cuts, the big, basically the big tax rebates for landlords. And I'd really be interested to know how many of these landlords reside in Iowa City and how many of them are out of this community and out of state, essentially saying, as the burden will fall more and more on our local owners, how much of these, these gifts from Des Moines are actually flowing out of our community? So as the burdens stay here and these, you know, these big apartment complexes, I mean, we provide services for everybody in our city, no matter, you know, who owns the property, and we think we do a good job of that. We increase their property value, their investment, by all the things we provide, from our public safety to our parks and recreation, to our transportation. I mean, we are helping their business model. I'm really curious how much of this hit we're taking is actually money that's flowing right out of our community and probably right out of our state. So I know that's a lot of, you know, that you probably won't have any fine grain, but some sort of a picture of that, because we're going to have to be telling the other residents of our community why we're making these decisions and where is this going and who is it benefiting as the crunch comes on them. Either they have to be satisfied potentially with lesser services, less protection, or, or, you know, being charged with some other kind of tax or fee. So I do expect you to have that answer off the top of your head, but that's something as we go through this process I would be really interested to know.
I would be remiss if I didn't mention former councillor Memms. When I first got on the council, she harped over and over again about the Moody's AAA rating, and I really, I'd never heard of it before and didn't really understand the importance of it. It took me a while before I really understood it, and by now and seeing the documents, it is really important, and I think we do have it in our strategic, strategic plan, and I think we should continue to put an emphasis on that to maintain that AAA Moody's rating.
I have a couple of clarifying questions, if I may, and I'll refer to a couple of slides, but I also want to reiterate and repeat and thank staff for the immense amount of work and the clarity. Somebody who's not all that familiar with numbers, this is getting these, these overviews in the big picture, and also what's going to come from each department is really appreciated, and thank you for walking us through this. It's really, really helpful. That said, I have a couple of clarifying questions, and they're disparate. So the first one actually refers to... So the first one actually refers to, I believe it's slide, well, it has to do with hotel motels. So I think it's slide 24. And there was a bar graph that was showing that the highest revenue, I think, was at 2019, so pre-COVID. And I also know that council and development from 2016 to 2019, there was a lot of discussion about the number of hotels that were being put up. And, and we did see a really pretty marked increase. My question is, it was sort of suggested that as we get to quote unquote, "post pandemic" or "get out of the pandemic" or whatever you want to call it, those numbers may increase. Is there an expectation from staff in a predictive way that when life is a little more stable, that, that, that spike that we see, that highest bar, that that will be where hopefully or the prediction is that hotel use will be back up in that 2019 range?
Yes, I think that's our, that's our hope. So, so this, this year, what you saw here is this is when the Sheridan was converting to the Graduate, this little dip here. So we had a major, our largest hotel was closed for a good portion. And then once the Graduate opened and we were kind of full, fully filled, that's our peak. And then you're right, the COVID, this is our bounce back from COVID where we kind of expect to be. We project flat. This is a pretty conservative kind of projection across here. I would like to think that when we look at actuals a year from now, that we'll be closer to, to that top level. But the only, the only way to really grow this is to get more market share, essentially to build more rooms and, and take more of that hotel share from other neighboring cities or to see those average daily night rates increase. In other words, just the demand to go in. And, you know, we saw that coming out of COVID and, and so much of this depends on, you know, the success of UI athletics and, you know, whether Hancher's operating at full steam and those types of things. So, you know, if we can continue to kind of manage through COVID, we should see a bounce back to that fiscal year 19 number.
Thank you. Another one, actually, this is a really easy question, so I'll throw that one in the middle here. What is the difference between a bike boulevard and a bike lane?
A bike lane is going to be striped on a road. A bike boulevard is going to be non-striped, but it's signed. It's kind of a designated as a safe biking alternative, but maybe where we didn't have enough pavement width to actually put a, a lane in there. So it's generally a road in which there's lower traffic speeds, lower traffic volumes, and we say, it's okay, it's pretty safe to drive in the street here. We try to put more signs up so that motorists are kind of looking out for bicycles. You might see like "share the lane" type of signs on a bike boulevard.
Thank you. And then I have one more question, if that's okay? This is a little bit more, again, just clarification for me, and it may be just repeating what you did in your original presentation. On slide 32, and it has to do with general fund expenditures, you talked a little bit about, there's one specific call out on contingency, and you mentioned how this would be, this is, had to do with expanding the fire department.
Yeah.
Personnel and the station. Can you explain that again for me, please?
Yeah, so in your CIP, you will note that the design for Fire Station 5 is included for the first time. So returning council members are aware that we have bought land for two future fire stations. One is a, is a new fire station, Fire Station 5, and then one is kind of a replacement for Station 3. As we get to building those, we have to have a staffing plan because it's going to be $1.5 to $2 million likely to operate a new fire station. If you've been in the community long enough, you may remember, right before my time, when we opened Station 4, there was a lot of controversy on how to actually fund that station. Essentially, the city got to the point where, how do we come up with $1.5 million to operate this? Well, that's how we ended up with the 1.1 percentage utility franchise tax. Ultimately, the council had to raise that rate to be able to fund that station. And what we're trying to do is get ahead of that. And, and we're doing that by setting aside operating dollars every year. And it's our plan right now. So this year, we've set aside $300,000 for future staffing. Now, we're not, that's not like, it's not, you know, something that, the balance will carry over from year to year, but essentially next year, what we hope to do is set aside 600, the following year 900, all the way till we get to that fifth or sixth year, and we'll have that $1.5 to $2 million to where I don't have to come to you and say, we need to increase that utility franchise fee a percentage to fund this, or we don't need to increase a property tax rate to fund this. The idea is to incrementally build it in there so it's less, less of an ask when that time comes. So you'll see this contingent, that's why you see it in a contingency, because it's not really, the dollars themselves aren't that critical that we carry over. It's really building that capacity in the budget so we know it's there in five or six years. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. And so is the idea that rather than Field of Dreams, build it and they will come, build it and we'll find the money, it's a matter of saying, when we have a, the amount that can, can sustain and hold that, then the building will progress?
Correct.
So there is no hard target for when the station and the personnel will be put into place?
Well, we're signaling the target with the building of the station. So in our fifth year of the CIP, we have the design, so you could imagine construction maybe six years out. That's our current plan. Now, if the council came to us and said, we want to build that station in year two or year three, then we're going to have a little bit of that discussion to say, okay, we don't have money just ready to, to staff this. Here are your options. And it may be that we have to increase a, a new tax or a fee or something to help pay for that. But you're right, what we're trying to do is say, if we're, if we're in agreement, general agreement, that five or six years is the right timeframe, then we have a capital plan to build the stations and now we're having, we're basically implementing an operating plan to staff it. You'll see a lot of communities that struggle. It's really easy to build a station. Any community can borrow money and build a station. It's really hard to staff 15 new personnel or 12 new personnel, whatever it is we decide to, to, to staff that station.
Thank you so much for that.
I have just a couple of hopefully quick questions, and maybe they'll be rhetorical and need some further discussion, but as we look at all of these converging financial challenges that make it one of the toughest budget years in, you know, a decade or so, you know, it comes to my mind, why is this a year that we're still reducing property taxes? And so I know that a revelation for me as a counselor was the certain levies can only fund certain things. And so this year, we're proposing a reduction in the emergency levy of four cents. So my, a couple of questions. Number one, what dollar amount does that four cent reduction equate to, if you have a general idea?
We're probably roughly about $50,000 a penny. Is that kind of a good balance? So maybe $200,000 we're talking about?
Okay, so not a big financial impact?
No, this, this is not a big financial impact.
Are there things that were requested or proposed that if, if that particular levy had that additional $200,000 income that we would want to be funding?
You know, that's an emergency levy, so council has to, you know, you really have to decide something's at an emergency level. This wouldn't be something to say, you know, let's go fund a consulting study for a planning effort. We really wouldn't do that out of this type of levy. If there were climate action initiatives, if there was flood resiliency initiatives, then we could look at this. As, as we kind of mentioned during the presentation, I'd be really, really hesitant to put any type of staff expense on this. So while we do have staffing needs, I wouldn't think that this is the appropriate levy. That's a long-term commitment for a levy. I think you really want to keep, it's a long-term commitment on a levy that should be pretty flexible. So I think the short answer is no.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
I want to ask just one or two other quick questions. One, you briefly mentioned in, with respect to the road use, the road use tax, the potential undercount in the census. Is that our, do you have any idea if we're planning to, to request that they look back at our census numbers? And I understand that doesn't take, that doesn't take place immediately, but is, that is one way to recoup this down the road?
Yeah, so you can, you can, we could request like a technical challenge, but that's not going to be really helpful for us. Basically, we'd have to, to, to kind of prove that, hey, you, you missed a neighborhood, like you physically didn't count this neighborhood. The problem is, is they, they walked the neighborhoods, they sent the letters, but we had a good portion of our population that, that wasn't in town. So the prevailing thought is that's not going to be helpful for us college towns. There's, we're looking, a consortium of college towns are kind of looking at how else to challenge. There's not a clear way through the census. In a couple of years, the census will open up a special census process in which cities can request that they come in and do a recount, and we can look at that. The challenge is you have to pay for that cost upfront. So we'd be looking at a million dollar plus cost to have the Census Bureau come in. And then you're crossing your fingers and hoping that count comes in good because the return on investment is really what you're looking at. So I've done special censuses before, I've seen them pay off, I've seen it to where the cities invested in them and unfortunately, the, the count didn't come in as high as they wanted and, and they, they didn't return. So we're still exploring all those possibilities, but at this point, I don't have a clear answer.
Thanks. Another very quick question is, with respect to the water shut-off deficit that we're in right now, can any, is it, is it currently legit to, to backfill any of that with ARPA funds?
Yes, we could. And that's, that's one option that the council would have, is to take essentially ARPA funds, use them as lost revenue, and then wipe the slate clean, essentially transfer that $600,000 over to the respective utility accounts and, and say, from this point forward, we're going to reinstate the policy. And right off the bat, there's nobody that's, that's subject to the water shut off now. You know, if you continue not to pay for a couple of months, that may come at you, but you, you could do something like that, yes.
Thank you.
It seems like we have a lot of opportunities for some work session, discussion on some of these items, so I'm going to reframe from just some of the, my comments, because a lot of them were touched on and I realize that there are going to be more in-depth conversations to come. We're going to go ahead and progress in our agenda with some general government program budgets, and we're going to start.
Yeah, if I could make a suggestion, I think we should invite Mr. Goers up and allow him to go through the city attorney's budget, and then let's, let's save the city clerk, manager, and finance for later on in the day, since we're, we're here all day. We have Chief Liston here that can jump into police when you're ready. So maybe Mr. Goers, you can decide if you want to break or not, and we'll invite Chief Liston up. Does that sound okay?
Yeah, I'll certainly defer to the council. If you want to break now, I'll be patient, or if you'd like me to press on ahead.
I think we'll go ahead and go with you, and then we'll take a quick break after that.
Okay. All right, well, again, probably for those who are at home, my name is Eric Goers, I'm the city attorney. City Attorney's Office budget information starts at page 49 of your materials with the budget information starting on page 338. So the first slide that's, appears here is the, you know, overall org chart of the city. As you're aware, the city attorney is one of three employees who reports directly to city council, the other two being the city manager and the city clerk. Also, as you will see in future presentations and future slides, many of the departments beneath the city manager have numerous divisions and complicated structures. The city attorney's office is not one of those departments. We're going to start easy for counselors. The city attorney's office has, including myself, a total of seven employees. The city clerk's presentation will be similar in that they don't have division either. We have 6.5 FTE, although the budget information is a little bit confusing about that in that you will see 5.5. The reason for that is that one of our city attorneys, Liz Craig, who is our primary tort litigator, is actually paid directly out of the tort levy. That was a change that was made years ago to our department funding model. Actually, I used to be the tort levy employee. The prior Department of, or Finance Director used to joke about me working for him, a joke that Eleanor did not appreciate. Our budget, again excluding Liz in the tort levy, is $686,000, of which 93% is personnel costs. You'll see that we don't need a lot of equipment to do our work. It's mostly just us working on our computers, typing away and doing our filing and communicating and supporting the work of the other city departments. You'll also see that our budget is decreasing this year. It appears that that's as a result of lower personnel costs. Those personnel costs are given to us by the finance folks who are far greater able to project those and determine those, but I assume that that is derived from me making less than Eleanor was and my replacement making less than I was. But otherwise, all the other employees with the city, I'm sorry, with the city attorney's office are capped. That is, they've reached the maximum salary they can achieve. So I wouldn't expect a whole lot of growth in that figure in the future. I'll take a moment to talk about that, staff. The lawyers that we do have working for the city attorney's office are highly experienced. Our least experienced lawyers are in their 16th year of practice. I'm in my 25th year. Sue Dulick, who's our first assistant, is in her 36th year of practice. We, as a group, average 22 years of practice of law, 13 of which is with the city. Our legal assistant, Mary McChrystie, will be celebrating 30 years with the city next week after coming to the firm, or coming to the city from the, from the Hayek firm way back when. Again, we do almost all of the city's legal work in-house. That makes us different than certainly the vast majority of cities and towns in Iowa and even more so, or even the, the cities that are even comparable to, to size with us, still have a tendency to send out more of their work than we do. Now, we do hire outside counsel on some occasions, typically if there's a legal conflict that requires that we get outside counsel, the represent an officer or other city employee. There are certainly also highly specialized areas such as bond counsel, collective bargaining, workers' compensation that we farm out, but otherwise, we mostly handle the city legal work within our walls. That's really all I have for you. I know that you will have much larger or longer presentations for more complicated budgets, and I don't want to take any more of your time than I need to, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Here are none.
All right, thank you for your time.
Great, great, great. All right, well, we're going to take a five minute, or we should probably do a 10 minute at this point, and then come back right at, we'll say, 10 a.m.
The police department maintains 110.76 full-time equivalents, and this is on page 113 of your flip book. 110.76 full-time equivalents and made up of 84 sworn. And I noticed that the presentation last year, at this time, we had, our staffing was 80 sworn. Today, we're at 77. So, and just for reference, I have hired 10 people. So we've had a significant amount of turnover, and most of that's just people reaching the end of their career. We've had several retirements, we've had a few medical retirements, and we had about three people move out of town and, and move to another agency. The good news with that is we are in a unique position in Iowa City in that we are able to still recruit good candidates, and I'm very proud of that. I think a big portion of that is because the police department has always been well-funded, we have good equipment, and I think we can compete with any area law enforcement agency. One of the things we have done to make sure we can do that is implemented with our human resources, a continuous application process, and that was something that had not happened in Iowa City. We would do it once every couple of years, open up applications, and then we, we have, we would do our testing and get that number whittled down, and then they would go before the Civil Service Commission. Civil Service Commission- they would go before the Civil Service Commission. Civil Service Commission has been outstanding. We can call them a week's notice and they'll convene a meeting and certify a list. So as we speak, like I mentioned, we have 77 officers with a authorized staffing of 84. We have an active list with nine people on that list. We are still accepting applications. So if we happen to exhaust that list, we'll just start it, we'll, we'll start the testing process again. So that puts us in a position of advantage over any other agency in the county where they have to ramp up their entire process. So we're very happy about that. So we'll move on through, through these three, three departments. We have 10 projects. The police administration just has police administration. Police Support Services has several. They have support administration, the people who run that, the captain and so on. The station masters, those are the people, when you go to the police station, they're sitting at the front desk. Crime prevention, those are outreach people, the people who go out in the community and, and build relationships. Crossing guards, you obviously know what that is. Records and identification, the people who, if you go to the police station and ask for records, they're the ones going to, are going to get it to you. And then we have animal services. Police field operations is what you think of as traditional police work. And that's broken down into three projects, which is patrol, the people, when you call 911, they are the ones who are going to show up. Criminal investigations, those are the ones who follow up, the detectives. They're, if they follow up on crime and try to solve that. And then the other field services are, are positions funded by grants, like our Johnson County Drug Task Force position and our Domestic Violence Investigator. So we'll move, if I can direct you, to some of our accomplishments from police administration. This is on 117, if you'd like to follow along. They filled the vacant police chief position. Here I am. We've achieved our Kalia accreditation for the seventh time. And what Kalia is, is our best practices, and we're one of 10 local law enforcement agencies in Iowa that are accredited through Kalia. We, we were first accredited in 1999, and just last year, we received, received our seventh award. So we're very proud of that. We're implementing a lexical policy manual rewrite. And what that does, again, is best practices and it, we will constantly be reviewing. We, we do this internally, but this, this organization will help us. They have staff attorneys. They follow case law. And if anything happens to need to be changed, they will often catch it before we, we will. And they also implement daily training based upon our policy. So we're really excited about that, and we think it'll really increase our officers' understanding of our policy. And this, this organization will also work with our Community Police Review Board, because as you know, every time we update, change, implement a policy, that goes before the Community Police Review Board for their input. So this will still allow for that process. Upcoming challenges. Again, we're trying to continue to recruit diverse applicant pool to more closely mirror our community. I think we've done a very good job at that. And we're still working through the city manager's preliminary plan to restructure the department. And we can go over some highlights of that as well. No changes in staffing for police administration. Services, if you're wondering what that is for police administration, that's primarily training and some IT, IT chargebacks and, and programs that we run, software, software expenses associated with administration, and we'll also have that with both of the other divisions. The next one is police, police support services. And again, as I mentioned, the support administration is the captain and the, the administration of that division. Records, we've already gone through this, so we can skip down to recent accomplishments. We created a full-time civilian support services supervisor, and that was part of the plan to restructure. Instead of having a sworn officer supervising those civilian records, people, and station masters, now we have a civilian supervisor. We established a full-time crime analyst. They've worked on the outdoor canine recreation area with the Animal Services Center. One of the big projects, kind of expensive project, was the shelving for evidence. If you, we store our evidence down at the offsite, and it's quite a big room. And the way we were storing it wasn't really efficient, and we had spent a lot of money on getting those shelves replaced, so it's much more efficient. One of the things we're excited about, and I mentioned it to my wife the other day, because I read an article about heart attacks with moving snow, that we, we've gotten new AEDs, and the AEDs we had, we were able to repurpose those. So one of them is actually in my car. That's why I mentioned it to my wife. If you see me laying in the driveway, remember there's an AED in the back of my car. Upcoming challenges. We constantly, with supply chain issues, we're having problems with uniforms. Our uniform contract, which we have a look, or a vendor who we use, that, that has expired. We have it out to bid right now. So we're hoping we can, we're hoping we can maintain the level of service that we have had. We're installing a catio, and that is just what it sounds like, apparently a patio for cats at animal services. So Chris is excited about that. And they are having some significant issues at animal services with their HVAC system, and that is going to be something that we anticipate being a cause. No changes of service there. One of the things we have added, it's not, it's not our employee, but you all are familiar with the Mental Health Law Enforcement Liaison position that we added last year. This budget will fund another position. Again, it will not be our employee, it'll be an employee through community, but this position will fund another one of those. So right now, we have 40 hours a week. We have one full-time employee that works for community that helps us. This would double our coverage with that. And moving on to police field operations. Again, this is the standard, what you, what the normal public thinks of police department, patrol, investigations, and other field services. We've done a lot of good things there, specifically dealing with officer wellness. We implemented the EDMR program for officers to receive access for traumatic, for trauma-specific therapy. One of the things I'm most excited about is we joined in a, in a Chapter 2080 agreement with the Johnson County and the University of Iowa for a joint forensic analysis team. It's, it's called JFACT, and it's a cyber team. We, we had all these agencies that had one specific person that would investigate cyber crimes or download phones, computers. And as you can imagine, almost every crime nowadays has some sort of cyber nexus. Everyone is carrying a cellphone in their pocket. So we were becoming overwhelmed with that, and we were putting all of our eggs in one basket. It's a very specific and high-tech position. And if some, if that, that detective decided he didn't want to come to work, we would have a major gap in our services there. So now we've created this task force with the county and the university. So if, God forbid, something happened and we lose a position, we still have those services because it's a task force now. So we're very excited about that. They're doing hundreds of devices. Since we implemented it six months ago, they've done several hundred devices and thousands of gigabytes of information. So it's really excited about the work they're doing. As you know, we hired a full-time victim services commission. We have the embedded social worker that I mentioned for the law enforcement mental health liaison. And we've partnered with the Shelter House with their position to help the homeless outreach position, which has been working well for us. This is also where we are adding that extra funding for the additional mental health liaison. One of the other things we're working on right now, and, and the former mayor, Pro Tim, was very involved with this process, was our immigrant and refugee outreach position. And we are currently interviewing for that position. So that was funded off of last year's budget. We'll continue that this year. Really excited about that. That's a part-time position to supplement the, we already have a community outreach assistant. This will be a part-time one focused specifically on the immigrant and refugee population. So one of the things we're also excited about is you, you all are well aware and had a lot to do with it was the Guidelink Center. We continue to utilize their services. They continue to expand services, and it's just a fantastic alternative to, specifically to jail or the hospitalization for us. It gives us a nice alternative. No service level changes there. The, we just hope to be able to get up to full staffing. And I do think, considering the hard work that Human Resources and our recruiting team has done, we'll be able to do that. What happens is when we don't have full staffing is those community outreach positions, the two downtown liaison officers, the neighborhood liaison officers, those positions go unfilled. And we understand that that's important for our community, so we're making a commitment to get that done. But to do that, we have to be able to fill our spots, and we have to be closer to full staffing. And again, considering the, the information that I just shared with you, that we have an active list that should be able to get to that point. We have five, five people at the academy right now. They will finish in April. And that's, I may have explained this to you before, it takes us a long time to get someone spun up. So when we hire someone, they don't immediately go out into the field, as you can imagine. If they are sworn, say they work for Correville or another agency in the state of Iowa, then they do go immediately into our four-month FTO program. But someone who has never been a police officer, they need to go to the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy, which is four months, and then they need to go through our field training program. So it's an eight to nine month process from start to finish to get them to be a productive member of our department. We cut that in half with our certified officers. We have had a focus on certified officers. There's seven on this current list. So that will give us a little more immediate help, but it's still not day one hire, and then they're, they're a contributing member of the department. So that's one thing we need to keep in mind. And it's been frustrating for me, considering that I've hired 10 people and we're still down seven officers. But I do think there is light at the end of the tunnel, and I hope this time next year, we'll be at or close to full staffing. There's always going to be attrition. You guys understand that with an agency our size, people are going to come and go. Is there any questions? I know I kind of buzzed through this. Do you want to go over any of the specific budget points? Your budget, the budget in your book starts on page 350, and it has each of them broken down by projects. So there's 10 separate projects in there. And again, it's a pretty, it's a pretty lean budget. As you, as you can see in the budget book, 86% of our expenditures are for personnel alone, and that's something that we really have no control over.
Chief, I think you mentioned that under the administration section, that one of the upcoming challenges is continuing to work through the restructuring plan. And I think you said you might have a little bit more about that. Was there anything else you wanted to highlight or kind of what you had in mind for the upcoming year with that plan?
Sure. The, the main part is adding, Joe Asilos is our law enforcement, mental health, law enforcement liaison. The main thing is, is increasing his numbers to two, getting another one of his position. I know, I think we're going to be talking, you, council will be talking about it later, Mobile Crisis is, is looking to expand their services, which we fully support. Joe has worked closely with them. In fact, he, he was gone from working with us for several months, working specifically with Mobile Crisis. So what it kind of works out is do we have a built-in Mobile Crisis person working with us? And then they are going to expand their services as well. So we're really excited about that. We fully support the expansion of that.
Yeah. And, and council, you will have a memo in your packet next week that includes a proposal from Guidelink to expand Mobile Crisis. And when, when we say expand, it's, it's already a 24/7 service, but we're really focused on driving down response time and creating opportunities for their more long-term employment opportunities. They currently rely a lot on on-call staff, and you can imagine turnover in that type of position is greater. So some of these ARPA funds, we're going to be recommending that we invest in this service in order to drive down response time. And as response time improves, you will see law enforcement use it more. Because right now, with the response time of 30 minutes, that's, that's hard for an officer to wait 30 minutes on scene for, for a handoff. So we really want to focus on driving that response time down to 10 to 15 minutes so that we can see those law enforcement referrals move up. And then hopefully, on the prevention side of our call continuum, if it's only 10 to 15 minutes response, hopefully, you're just going to see people call Mobile Crisis more frequently. And, and I think we have a real opportunity from a communications standpoint to promote that this coming year because there will be a shift to the national 988 hotline. So you won't have to know the 1-800 number to call Mobile Crisis. You'll be able to dial 988, and, and the folks at community will be involved in that dispatch.
And that, am I correct that that will all come into the Jack, out at the county center?
No.
Will they be able, will they be taking 988 calls out there?
No. So, so that will be dispatched through the existing Mobile Crisis dispatch is, is what, you know, the state's got to make some decisions there. But currently, it's a, it's a cooperative relationship with Foundation Two and Community that, that does that. So, Chief, do you want to mention your, your initial talks with Jack about involving Mobile Crisis in those 911 calls?
Sure. We're, we're investigating which calls. Mobile Crisis was very interested in doing it like a co-response, similar to what would happen like on a vehicle accident when they, when they call police department and ambulance or fire. If it was a clear mental health call, where traditionally it would just be the police department, they would also call Mobile Crisis. And as Jeff mentioned, with a 30-minute response time, sometimes that's challenging. The officer has either handled the situation by the time Mobile Crisis shows up, or they're just waiting for that. So with the expanded services of Mobile Crisis, we think that could be a very viable option. Also, one of the things that was in the plan to restructure was the diversion. I think the 98 diversion from law enforcement. What happens is everyone just calls 911, and, and it ends up coming to the police department. With 988, again, it's a simple number for people to remember. I think by that alone, there will be a significant amount of diversion that calls are just going to Mobile Crisis. And then there'll, there'll be some mechanism for them to determine their metrics on, well, we need to get law enforcement involved or not. But it'd be nice to have those people who are professionals in that area make those determinations instead of just coming into 911, and then there we go.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. We're going to move on to the fire department at this point. And welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good night, Chief.
Do I go down? Next page?
Yeah.
Sorry. Hey, there we go.
There you go. Does, does council want me to turn off the lights so you can try to see what's on the screen? I know it's hard. Or do you prefer to have the lights on through your comments?
I, I can't see what's on the screen, so I don't know if it's that, if anyone else can. Oh, I, I, it's okay. I got the budget book here, so.
Okay. Well, good morning again. John Greer, Fire Chief. Thanks for the opportunity to see you one last time and do budget. We do come to you from four fire stations throughout the city, 64 full-time equivalents. I know that in the city manager's presentation, he talked about Fire Station Five and relocating Fire Station Three, so I won't spend much more, any time talking about that. But our divisions, you see there, administration, there's four of us that work in administration, or actually, there's six of us, but we all do kind of different functions. The BCS are on shift, and then we have a fire marshal that's also battalion chief. But as the, as Chief Liston talked about, we have some changes coming up through the fire department. You know, there's some upcoming retirements, some folks, over the next couple of years, we have a number of folks that will be eligible for retirement. So we're working closely with Human Resources as well to work on our recruitment and testing process. Typically, we do a test every few years, whereas now we're looking at a different option. How can we do that more often, streamline it, make it more efficient, increase diversity? We've done a lot of outreach in the community with the, working out, reaching out to certain groups, working with, you know, Neighborhood Centers of Johnson County, Open Heartland, UAY, those sorts of things. We've had apprentice program, apprenticeship program that we started this past year. So we're just trying to get a little more folks as they're younger and looking at what a career in public safety could be for them. We typically do also a, a youth emergency services camp. Of course, COVID has kind of impacted that for us a little bit. But, so we, we do have a lot of folks out in the community trying to increase, you know, interest in the fire department. But again, that's, we'll work closely with Human Resources to move that forward. I'll go through the, the divisions here. Fire administration is what I do, and some of the accomplishments that we, we're proud of. Obviously, we, we're a three-time accredited fire service agency. We're one of 189 career fire departments in the United States that have achieved this. We are due for reaccreditation in 2023. So that's, it will be an upcoming challenge for us and our accreditation manager to get all that. It's an intensive review of what you do and how you do against a, a standard that's developed by a commission and best practice. And it's a continuous improvement model. So we're proud of that. Other things that we've considered accomplishments, we've kind of guided the pandemic response for the city, maintained a lot of supplies, and just kind of been a go-to resource for that. And I think that we've, as you, And I think that we've, as you, we've learned right along with you, and we adapt and change as that comes up. But so certainly, we are continuing to monitor that. We were able to successfully write a grant and get an additional laundry machine, gear washing laundry machine for Fire Station Two, so we're happy about that. And we did complete our weather alert siren upgrade. We had a five-year project that you had funded, so we finished that. And as the challenge, as I mentioned, that we're going to have reaccreditation, which will start, and then we have some succession challenges for us, too. No changes to service level, and you know about the contingency fund, so I won't spend any time talking about that. Emergency operations is our bread and butter. That's, you know, what we're here for. There's a minimum of 16 firefighters on duty each day throughout the city. Last year, we finished up the call volume of 8,106 calls for service. If we look back to the 70s, when, you know, 450 calls was a number of calls in the 70s, so we've pretty much grown rapidly over the years. We had a downturn in COVID year. Obviously, nobody wanted to call an ambulance or go to a hospital, so our call volume is down, but we've kind of bounced back with that. One of our issues with, you know, call volume increase and the need for looking at Fire Station Five and those sorts of things are what we call concurrent calls, when the unit that's covering a fire district is already out on another call. And that happens 40% of the, 47% of the time. It varies by district, but Engine Three could be on a call, and then there's another call for service in that district, so we cover that call with another fire station. So that's one of those metrics that we look at. As that continues to increase, I think that's something that you'll, you'll review and just, you know, help you decide your timeline. We're doing replacements for our apparatus. We actually have a new ladder truck on order, which should be here April. I'm guessing more May, but, so that's certainly on there. And then we have some coming up in the CIP that we'll talk about later. We are working to update our defibrillators as well, and we're working with a number of groups in the community to be a part of Pulse Point and Heart, Becoming a Heart Safe Community, which I think you've heard about or read about. Basically, it's just having folks that are trained in the community in CPR, and the folks that download a Pulse Point app, they could get a notification, there was somebody in cardiac arrest in this area, and the AED is located here. And we're actually going to put five of those units out in the community that would be accessed by anybody in the community that has signed up for Pulse Point. So we'll continue to move forward with that. No changes in service there, and the big outlay will be the new AEDs for us. Fire prevention, that's our fire marshal's office. We do a lot in that office, fire investigations, public education, code enforcement. It's been a challenge to do public education, as you might imagine, over the last couple of years. We've done virtual things, working with the, the city television to produce things that we could put out for the schools specifically, but it's available to anybody. So we're hoping that in the future, we'll be able to get back into the schools to do, you know, in-person. But we still have been invited to a number of events, and you can see our folks helped paint a wall here. So we're still going out and doing things. It's just different, as a lot of things are for us. We're looking to, you know, increase funding so that we can do some more of those outreach programs. If we had, you know, a position that could help part-time, that, those sorts of things for future discussion. We used to have a position that did that, but, that was lost a number of years ago. But as things start to ramp back up and the world kind of turns back to normal, that'd be something that, a position would be, nice to have that filled in the future. But the fire marshal does do a number of inspections throughout the year. We have a contract, obviously, with the university, we conduct inspection. That, we do commercial inspections for typical commercial spaces once every three years. Anything with a licensure, we do every year. So it, it does keep that division pretty busy. Fire training, thanks again for the training tower in the training area. It's awesome. We are slowly building it up with additional props and getting more comfortable with what we have there, and I think we'll see a future, a future where we'll become a regional spot for area fire departments to come. We are, we just transitioned to a new, a new training officer, so he's kind of hitting the ground running. We have two new firefighters starting Monday, so he gets to work them through their six-week orientation. We do have some challenges down there with the roof at the, at the building, but that's being worked on. And we are transitioning to more of an at-home training module, where we become the place where we do training, and I think that that's going to help us. As you might imagine, firefighting changes a little bit as things continue to change with technology, what's available, how things are built. Good thing about in, in the codes that we adopt here help us in all of those regards. And no service level changes for, requested for training either, so. That's kind of the, the quick overview of the fire department. If you had any questions, I would certainly entertain them.
Thank you, Chief. In the administrative division, you'd mentioned the challenge of continuing to recruit, and I know that diversity has been something that the department has maybe struggled with increasing over time. I had learned recently that it takes, can take even a number of years for someone who's interested in joining the department before they can actually join. You mentioned maybe some, some changes in how the recruitment and sort of certification process happens. Is that going to shorten the timeframe for someone who's interested in joining?
Absolutely. That, that would help that immensely. We, we make a list of approximately 30 folks that, you know, meet all the requirements, and we keep that list. We don't have people turn over as much, you know, so we will keep that list for a couple of, couple, maybe three years sometimes. So in the initial discussions with Human Resources, we're looking at what's the timeline that we can go to realistically to do that process. And I think that's part of the discussion, too, is how we do it. Right now, it's very intensive because of how we do it. Is there a way that we can streamline it? So we're being smart about it, and, but still getting the result that we want. Because you're right, if, if I miss the test date by a month, and I can't test for two or three years, I've moved on to another community, or I've looked somewhere else, or that sort of thing. So I think it'll be a good change for us. It's just one of those things, this is how we've always done it, and we've tried to look at ways to do it in the past, and now it's just, it's time to do it, and we're looking down how, how we can do that, the most efficient way to get it done.
Thank you.
And I think we've got some good experience with police. As Chief Liston mentioned, we were able to streamline that quite a bit. Kind of the staffing emergency forced our hand, but there's some good lessons learned there that'll transition over to fire. And we're probably looking at, you know, going through recruitment here in the next three to six months. So we'll get, get going on those plans, absolutely.
And again, I think that the connections that we've made in the community over the last couple of years is going to be helpful to us, too, you know, exposing folks to what it is like to be in public safety. And, you know, we interact with the ambulance and the police quite often. So maybe they don't come to fire, but they go to the police department, or they work for Johnson County Ambulance, or get into EMS or something, you know, but, so it's, we're looking at different ways to make it, and getting out in the community and making those connections when somebody is 16, you know, and trying to get them, as soon as you turn 18, we're going to have a test, you know, within the next year, then it certainly becomes a little more manageable, I think.
Chief, do you have, I was noticing under the, the emergency operations, so your, the estimate is 8350 calls in the coming fiscal year. Do you have a breakdown as to what type of calls these are?
I do. I can give you 2021, as I said, 8,106 calls for service. That was 9,511 unit responses, so on some calls, we send more than one unit. Total fires in Iowa City, 185. Building fires, 46. 32 of those were in Iowa City. The other 14, we went and helped one of our mutual aid partners. Total EMS calls, any call for medical service, 4,607. So the bulk of our responses are EMS. We do run a fair number of fire alarms as well. We rescue calls, because we're, we're an all hazards organization. We do confined space, we do extracations, we do water rescue, so we do a little bit of everything. But yes, total EMS, 4,607.
Thanks.
And that's the, that's the benefit to us, too, is also being, you know, having Fire Station Five and Station Three relocated. It helps us get to those calls more quickly.
When I worked at the hospital, we had an annual in-service hands-on fire safety training, handling the fire hoses and, and getting instructions on, on things. Does your department still do that? And if so, do you get reimbursed from the university, or is that just a community service for you guys?
We do not do it for the university anymore. I probably saw you there. I worked at Station Two for a number of years. Went over there and did that quite a bit. We do offer fire extinguisher training to the community, to businesses, if they are interested, and we do charge them for it, for the time. We have, our training officer does those sorts of things. But we don't do it as much as we used to. I think a lot, a number of companies have their own internal safety committee that takes that initiative, but we do, do charge backs for things that are out of the norm. You know, emergency response, we go to, no problems, no questions. We do charge back for things like that. Or if there's a hazardous material spill on the interstate, we can charge back to the, the carrier if we use resources here.
Thank you.
With the increase in call volume and the increase in the size of our city, could you speak to how that sort of, what pressure, if any, that's put on the fire department at the current staffing levels? I know we're looking in the future, a few years down the road of, of helping that, but what's the situation like currently?
Well, I would say absolutely, we, we are tired. We go through phases of being more busy than others. Obviously, there's, when the university's out, call volume tends to go down, but in my experience of almost 30 years, I've found now that not, people don't leave town as much as they used to. I know when I was in college, I went home. Now, I think a lot of college students tend to stay, so the, it's always a busy city. So yeah, I think, you know, we are, the overlapping calls is a concern, and the city manager and I have this discussion on, you know, this is why we're looking down the road, that we need to start working on these things. But I think it's just, yeah, between running calls, doing inspections, because our companies do inspections as well, doing all of our training to maintain all of our certifications, it, it is, it is busy. Now, we are working with the NDS, sharing physician to help us with our licensure inspections, so that's a welcome relief. But yeah, we are, we are busy. I anticipate that it's going to continue to go up incrementally.
This is probably more for your successor, but any short-term solutions as we wait to, to move on the fire stations? Can we help with some of that pressure?
Well, I think, you know, short-term solution could be, instead of, you know, we talked, I heard the, the presentation about staffing and the cost of staffing, and we, we all understand that. I think a short-term solution could be a squad that would staff two people. You know, instead of hiring, you know, 12 to staff a fire station, if you hired a few folks that could staff, help us staff a squad. So then there are two people are running an EMS call while an engine company can stay in service. And this particularly comes to mind for me, like Fire Station Two. They're kind of on by themselves around that way. But, so if you had a squad that could help, or Station Three runs a majority of our EMS calls, so that, something like that could help, too. But, I mean, it's all, it's all numbers, and, because we, you know, have to have the apparatus to do it, and then if you have those two people, you know.
One of the things that the chief's been working on with Tracy Hightshew and NDS is shifting some of the fire inspections over to building inspectors. So trying to identify where those, where are those properties in which we have building inspectors going in for their, their needs, and then a fire inspector going in, and can that all be handled by the building inspector? And I think we've, are just getting that kind of program off, off and running now because we've fully staffed up in the NDS department. But our hope is that will take some of the units, keep some of the units at home instead of sending them out on inspections where they might have to leave and answer a call.
Yeah, that, that will definitely be beneficial, because as Jeff mentioned, they, building, NDS would go do an inspection, and they would say, hey, here's something you want to write down on your fire report. And we're like, okay. Do we both need to go there? If, if we can share, this is what we look for, put it on your list. I mean, I think, and I think the business owner probably likes it one less visit as well, you know, but it would help us remain in, in our stations more often, too, so.
Where, where is Fire Station Three? You mentioned they got the most EMS calls.
It's right across from Procter and Gamble.
Oh, okay.
Chief, with most of the calls being, or such a big chunk of the calls being EMS calls, and you mentioned apparatus, are fire trucks responding to all of those calls? And is that something you've considered changing?
Yeah, yes, the fire engine does respond. We take it with us, because that's what we need in case we get a concurrent call. So this is where the squad might come in, play in the future, where if you had a, a specific vehicle that would cover those types of incidents versus taking a fire engine. But we, we take it with us in case we have another, like a fire incident while we're out.
Just thinking about things like fuel and tire repair, and all the incidents that come along with the larger apparatus.
Yeah, and we respond with the ambulance because of our, you know, we're more spread out than the ambulance, so we can typically beat, beat them. But we do share space with them at Fire Station Four, so that helps, helps with that area. But that is certainly one thing to consider, is that we want to stay in as much as possible. And part of that continuing process is working with the JEC as well for calls that we typically would go on, now we may not get dispatched on. They ask a couple more EMS questions, could be an ambulance-only call, so then we, we are not dispatched to that, or if we get dispatched and canceled. So we're certainly working through all those things, too. How can we still serve the public and go on the things that we're definitely needed for? How can we cut back the ones that we don't need to go on? And part of that could be, like, like I said, false alarms as well. And if we continue to work through the fire marshal's programs, which has reduced false alarms, but how can we reduce it more? You know, if you say going out 300 times, that certainly helps.
So if you were, if you were to staff up something like, like a squad, would, would the thought be that eventually, when Fire Station Five opens, that, that personnel who are hired for something like that would then be shifted to the new fire station?
Yeah, that would be my initial thought. And then I would say down the road, it'd be nice if we could have that squad, too. I certainly understand the numbers game, you know. In a, in a perfect world, it would be great to do this, but, you know, being realistic, I think that that could be a short-term solution, and then, yes, I would slide those personnel over into Station Fire, yeah, Manning's Staffing Station Five. Wow, took a while to get that out, sorry.
Really appreciate Fire taking the lead on, on COVID response coordination. One other quick question is, you mentioned CPR and, and the new initiatives. Is CPR training down now because, and accreditation of people down now because of the pandemic?
That I do not know. I know that the training has changed. They've, they made it easier now. Back in the day, you know, it was difficult to get to a class. Now, they're teaching for the layperson, you know, hands-only CPR. So at least you're doing something. So I think you are able to do a lot of that, some of the, maybe the initial stuff, online or virtual, and then if you have the opportunity to actually use a mannequin, so you can get that experience to what it feels like to push, you know. But I, I don't know if the numbers are down, but I know that the Heart Safe Community part of the upcoming program will definitely help us get Iowa Cityans more trained.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much.
Great, thanks so much. Have a good day.
You as well. All right, we're going to move on to culture and leisure program budgets. We're going to start with the library, but yes.
So I think we're going to start with library, Julie. Yeah.
Yes, we're going to start with the library.
Anne Mangano is going to present to you today and ask that you give her some grace, because she found out she was presenting to you today a couple hours ago.
All right.
Ellsworth had something come up unexpectedly and wasn't able to, to join it. So we, we thank Anne for pinch hitting here on, on very short notice.
Yes, thank you very much. My name is Anne Mangano. I am collection services coordinator at the Iowa City Public Library. I have a statement from Ellsworth. I will read that to you, and then afterwards, I will try to answer any questions, and if I cannot answer them, we'll write them down and get the answers to you. So the library's budget start, our budget information starts on page 171, and the specific budgetary information starts on page 366. A little bit, a little bit about the library. The library is a semi-autonomous city department governed by a nine-member board of trustees appointed by city council for six-year terms. The staff is about around 120, but 40, we have 43 full-time permanent equivalents. Most of those positions of those 120 are actually part-time and hourly. We work out of an 82,000-square-foot building, and we have a bookmobile. There are eight department divisions, including children's services, collection services, community and access services, adult services, information technology, facilities, administration, and the ICPL Friends Foundation. ICPL is proud to be accredited as a Tier Three library through the State Library of Iowa and all of our professional librarians, those of us who work in jobs that require a master's in library and information science. those of us who work in jobs that require a master's in library and information science or equivalent, maintain, maintain full licensure through the state library. In 2021, we were one of eleven Iowa libraries recognized as a star library in the Library Journal Star Library Index of Public Library Service. That's a true honor. We were also voted the best library in the corridor by the readers of Little Village. We are proud to have recently added two bilingual storytimes a week to our schedule. We now offer both Chinese and Spanish options for young patrons and their caregivers. We also have increased bookmobile services by twenty percent and have expanded to new areas of the community with Friday service hours and more service stops. In terms of the budget, our approach to the 2023 budget was to keep moving forward and making improvements without having to ask for more resources. You will notice our requests were largely flat or reflective of real, reallocation of funds within the budget. As you discussed this morning, our most significant change we are requesting for the 2023 budget is to officially go fine-free for all library materials. Fine-free means that we will not be charging a late fee. So that those daily, like twenty-five cents, you don't bring a book back, we're not going to charge those anymore, or we would like not to. We implemented a fine-free model in 2019 for children's materials and young adult materials. And we extended this temporarily during our COVID closure. This temporary extension has now been in place for over two years as we reopen the building. Traditionally, we would approach this change with statistics, use reports, and future forecasts on the financial impact and, and community, community benefits. But honestly, with the impact COVID has had on our overall statistics and use, our best set of data would tell a partial story. I could tell you that community feedback from ending fines on children's materials has been extremely positive. Materials still come back to the library. Hold times have not increased in a meaningful way. And more importantly, we have heard from many people that they came back as library users after being away for years because of overdue fines. Going fine-free continues to be a local, regional, and national best practice in libraries, and it aligns well with the DEI initiatives the city and the library are working on. We understand that extending the fine-free model to all collections will have an impact on library revenues, but believe it is the only way, the only fair way forward for our community. And we hope the council will support us in making this next step toward being truly equitable in our service models. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning and for the support you've offered the library in your work on the council. And we welcome all of you to come for a tour of our facility, to meet our staff, and to see our services and actions.
Thank you.
Can I answer any questions?
Yes.
I'm, I'm just really excited to hear that, that it, that people have come back to the library who had not been there for years. That's really, for me, probably one of the most important data points.
It's really interesting to work at a library and to not feel any sort of ownership over fines. Like fines are a daily thing, but for one person may actually feel ashamed. It's very hard to have that conversation. And very, we're very happy to be able to say we don't have them anymore.
The, the other change that, that I've noticed is the, when I've been taking out material, the, unless there's, it's on hold, there's an automatic renewal of a material, at least one, one time, which, which is helpful too, because some, you know, depending on what it is, it sometimes can, that due date can run up on you. And so it's, it's sort of nice to, to see the extension on that. So I think that helps too.
Yeah, we've gotten good feedback about that. We instituted that in October 2020.
I just want to say, as an actual very regular library user, and throughout COVID, I've just been so impressed with the improvements actually on the consumer end. Again, like the automatic renewals and reminders. And, and also, I can say experientially, yeah, the hold times haven't lengthened, books are ready. And I think that people are just more willing to, to avail themselves of, of what the library has. And the turnover is better. I mean, I've certainly had things pop up and be ready for me before I was expecting them. So I just want to say that kudos to shifting and adapting and improving in the middle of, you know, a pandemic when, honestly, so many people and institutions are having to figure out how to manage. You've not only managed, you've improved your services, and I just commend you guys for it.
Thank you.
Just to piggy, piggyback off of that too, the digital services as well that the library offers. I know that, I use the Libby app almost daily and the Canva app quite frequently for, for streaming films. And I know that's part of something that the, the library offers. And during COVID, it was so incredibly helpful to, you know, when, when there wasn't a, a feeling of safety to go in, we could still, you know, myself and my kids and my wife could all access books and audiobooks and, and even films and stuff that way, just because we were library members, so. So another program that I think is worth just sort of mentioning to our, our people that live in Iowa City.
What has been the response to the expanded bookmobile presence? Is that, have you, has it been well-used? Has the, has the response been good within the community?
Yeah, it's, we're still in the, kind of the building and letting patrons know phase of those services and trying to get that schedule, like, really well put down, when it's the best use of it. But we have been able to go to places we've never been before, and there's been a lot of patrons who have not been comfortable coming into the building and providing that bookmobile service, and just a little bit more opportunity to be able to access the materials, their holds, or talk to a staff person without having to go inside the physical building. Has, we've received quite a few comments about that.
Well, thank you so much. Really appreciate you stepping in on such short notice. All right, we're moving on to parks and recreation. And Julie Seidel Johnson, welcome.
Good morning. I didn't mean to try to take over the library. I just was expecting Yellsworth. That's not my intent. So good morning. I'm Julie Seidel Johnson, Director of Parks and Recreation. Our information begins on page one forty-six for our intro in your book, and then the budget information begins on page three fifty-nine. Our job is to connect our community and maintain our natural infrastructure. It's been a challenging couple of years with the pandemic, as it has been for everyone, but I feel like we have a resilient staff that has really jumped in to help and make a lot of different things happen. So I'll walk you through our divisions. First of all, Administration. There are two of us, two full-time employees in Administration. Our biggest success this year was the partnership with Film Scene to get the new screen out in Chauncey Swan Park. That was very well-received and a lot of fun to be a part of, a lot of interesting things to figure out on how to do that. But we did it, and we were glad to see so many people take advantage of the outdoor movies. This is also where Farmer's Market sits in our budget. A very successful year again after being online with pickup only for a year. And we'll tell you though, that our Wednesday night market has continued to flounder a little bit. We're looking at that, and unless we get a fair number of vendors signed up early this season, you may not see the Wednesday night option for this coming summer. And we would just focus on our Saturday market at that point. We think that because there is some other online options still available, that took away some of those customers. But just between the number of vendors and the number of customers we were seeing on Wednesday nights, that may come to an end, or at least a pause for a year or two of that one. Our next division is government buildings. It has twelve and a half full-time staff. They have also been very involved in our COVID response and adaption. So most of the things you've seen throughout the buildings as far as Plexiglas, changes to workstations, additional hand sanitizing, additional cleaning, that's been up to the government building custodians and maintenance staff. A lot of behind-the-scenes stuff as well, as we've worked on HVAC systems to increase the amount of filtration and over, you know, turnover in buildings. It's been an interesting learning year in terms of all of that. I'm also kind of struck by the number of projects you've talked about already this morning that Government Buildings has been a part of. Kumi from that staff played a big role in the new Public Works Facility as it was constructed. She's also a part of the catio project at the animal services. I just, I love to talk about that catio project too. And the fire station roof that Chief Greer talked about. So Government Buildings has their hand kind of out throughout a number of departments. They're working on the aging facilities and infrastructure, which you've already talked about. These guys have a lot of duct tape and a lot of tricks up their sleeves to keep things operating. But as we adapt to climate change, I have to tell you, our facilities are feeling that as well. The windstorms we've had, the extreme temperatures, even this extreme cold we've had the last few days have put a real tax on our boiler systems. There's all kinds of things happening that are new and different and changing because our weather is becoming more and more extreme. And other than that, it's pretty much business as usual in that department, as usual as it gets, as they just adapt to what, what comes next with the pandemic and, and other operations. Next, we have our Recreation Division under Brad Barker. They have eight full-time staff. They run the rec centers, all the programming. This has been a challenge during the pandemic. If you remember, at first, they did emergency childcare, which we offered. And then the rec center was used as a daytime warming facility last winter. We are now reopen at both rec centers. Oh, we still have a fair number of people coming into the building to use it as a warming shelter, but it's not the primary purpose. It is open for general programs and operations. One of the big things that happened this past year is to adapt to people's comfort level with social distancing and being outside. We more than doubled the number of outdoor drop-in neighborhood events. We were very lucky. We had a donor who donated money so we could get what we call our rec and roll trailer. And that was equipped with all kinds of fun stuff. Everything you need for the best yard party you ever had is in that trailer. So remember that if you want to have an event that you need help with. And we rolled that around to various parks twice a week, had free events, entertainment, family activities. They were very well-received, and I think a great way to increase our connection in the community when people weren't as comfortable coming in for our typical indoor classes. We are open and operating as fairly normal now, but obviously watching the current situations for where we'll go with that. The rec division is in the midst of a rec facilities and program master plan. We just finished kind of the first round of public input. We had over fifty in-person public interface areas where people could come in and give their input into the plan. We had an online portal for that, and we did a statistically valid survey. Right now, all of that is being compiled. That will be coming back in the next month or so for us to look at and kind of look at the future wishes for recreation in our community. It's also gone through and looked at all of our recreation facilities. Not a surprise, City Park is old. The City Park pool leaks a lot of water. It is not very environmentally friendly as we operate it. It's a traditional pool, and some people really love it, and some people would really like to see something different. So we're anxious to see what the results are for that. A little bit more of a surprise was Robert A. Lee Pool. Has a few more maintenance concerns than we were aware of, and that will also be something we'll need to discuss once this plan is complete. But it's interesting. We're getting a lot of great feedback. In fact, our consultants who do this, you know, all over the country are amazed at how much Iowa Cityans like to talk about parks and rec. We warned them, but they were not ready for the amount of feedback that they have gotten. We also have a rec assist program, which is our scholarship program that has been going strong. We're doing everything we can to look at barriers that are keeping people from participating in our programs. Some of the key questions in the master plan also relate to this, but we're making sure that we can do what we can to get people into our basic programs and use our, use of our facilities. The next division is our Parks Maintenance and Forestry Division. There are twenty-three full-time staff in Parks Maintenance. And they do general park maintenance, forestry, horticulture, and natural areas, and athletic fields. So a lot of accomplishments here this year. Over a thousand trees planted throughout the city. A lot of street trees, a lot of partnerships with groups like the Rotary, and a lot of help from residents through the Root for Trees program. We have a lot of trees going in, and we're kind of on, we're looking at being on track to do the same thing next year with more street trees and a couple other neighborhoods getting filled in with some of the funding that is provided. As mentioned before this morning, we're working on Glendale Park, just waiting for the playground equipment there. Ped Mall Playground has been ordered. In both cases, supply chain issues are delaying when the equipment is here, but those will be going in soon. We've had a very much, an increase in our success with our native areas. If you've been out and seen Scott Park or City Park areas that were planted in native prairies, our staff is getting better and better at managing those and learning how to grow the traditional prairie plants. And we've gotten a lot of compliments from residents and asking for more of that in the future. We talk about the tree canopy, canopy and its benefit to climate action. Prairies have similar benefit. Less maintenance, less input from our staff, more habitat for birds and animals, and more carbon sequestration from the traditional prairie plants. So kind of hitting it from both sides on that. With trees, of course, we still are seeing EAB, our animal dashboard, damage to the trees. We are getting a better handle on it than we have in the past years. We know that there's still trees out there. But for instance, the recent windstorm in December, we only lost a few trees. So that means that we've really gotten a lot of the most damaged trees already down, so they're not causing damage to cars and property and, and whatnot. But there are still kind of silent damaged EAB trees out there that we will be continuing to look for and monitor and take down and replace as we go. Same with the ratio damage. We are still working on catching up with some of that. We've gotten all the big stuff done, but that's going to be ongoing for the next year as well. Athletic fields, we are the only, as far as we know, the only department in the United States that has all of our athletic fields with environmental certification from the United States Sports Turf Manager Association, so that's something we just learned in recent months. This looks at our practices for how we maintain the field, adaptations that have been made to the buildings and the lighting systems, and gives credit just to the fact that they are trying something different and really trying to be environmentally sensitive in an area that traditionally has used a lot of chemicals and a lot of additional resources to maintain athletic turf. So our crews are really kind of taken off and making that a different, a different story. Then finally, we have the cemetery, three full-time equivalents. Couple of things that they've done on the cemetery grounds is they've added a prairie area out there, and they've gotten quite a bit of tree work done in this last year, both with help from our park maintenance and then also for some contracted help, taking down some older trees that had been, were likely to cause damage in the near future, planting new trees, getting things pruned and, and in better shape out at the cemetery. We didn't know how the pandemic would affect the cemetery. We were, we were somewhat worried that the increases in deaths would, of course, increase business at the cemetery. That hasn't really been the case. It's been pretty steady. We do know in 2020, there were a lot of ceremonies and interments that were, that were delayed because of COVID, families wanting to have bigger celebrations. Those are kind of catching up with us now, but still, the overall average is pretty consistent. So that's the highlights from our department. What we're asking for this year is all pretty standard. We are doing our best to serve the public in different ways, but using the same resources we have. I didn't mention, overall, we have forty-eight and a half full-time employees. But an interesting statistic from this week, we figured out that we have an equal number of hours provided by part-time employees. So about ninety-six thousand hours a year of part-time employees working at various jobs within Parks and Recreation. So, and that's several hundred part-time staff, depending on the time of year and what they're doing. But a lot of people that get their first jobs with us for lifeguarding or customer service or teaching summer camps and that sort of thing. And it, it's, it's been a really nice place to be working. So that is my summary. You are all welcome, once it warms up, to come outside to our events. We hope to see you out having listing posts again at Party in the Park and some of the other events. But stop at any time if you want a tour or want to meet more of our staff. We'd be happy to do that as well. Thanks.
I have one question. You mentioned the Recreation Assistance, the Scholarship Program.
Yeah. Yeah.
And can you just talk briefly about that a little bit? And then sort of a follow-up or addition to that is, how were DEI activities and outreach during the pandemic? I mean, did you see sort of a slowdown or conversely, more of a ramp up as more of an opportunity to get more people involved even while participation might be down?
Yeah. So our rec assist is, is kind of two parts. We have a full scholarship program for all swim lessons that is funded through donations to the Parks and Recreation Foundation. And that is, we have a, we have a vision in Parks and Rec that every child in Iowa City will learn how to swim. We think that's an important safety skill. It's an important skill for getting their first job as a lifeguard. If you got a great paying job when you're 15, learn how to swim. So that's funded through that. Then we have separate funding for the rec assist. And that is, we've, we've streamlined that so you can apply, families can apply once a year. And that helps provide offset for costs for all of our other general recreation programs like preschool, sports, basketball, arts programs, those kind of things. And the final question, I've forgotten.
It had to do with sort of DEI outreach and community engagement? And just wondering, within the pandemic context, did you see a slowdown in interest or in the ability to do outreach?
Sure.
Or was it able to, to be more successful because?
Right. So I would say in the initial phases of the pandemic back in 2020, it slowed down a lot. We didn't really do many of any type of event because people were just not comfortable gathering in almost any form. I would say that turned around greatly this last summer with the number of events we were able to hel- hold. Our trailer helped us get out to a number of smaller parks, areas that don't traditionally have party in the parks. We've been able to hit most of those. We did different things, like we did a fire hydrant party at one neighborhood. We've done all kinds of different themed events. But indeed, I think the outreach part has really grown in the last six or seven months with that. Our recreation staff has really changed their focus from the buildings to being out in the neighborhoods and the parks. And that's probably one of the good things we've learned from COVID that we want to keep doing is we found that those are pretty, that those are very successful.
So, so you will be continuing the, I think you referred to them as the outdoor drop-in events?
Right. So our plan for the next year would be to continue the Party in the Park, which has been a program for a number of years. But then the rec enroll program, very similar. It just didn't have the entertainment with it, like the band or the musician. But it had all the party games and, and staff doing that kind of, those kind of things. That will continue as well.
I think that's a really, a really great concept because you have the, the programming aspects married to the outdoor spaces, our park system, which sometimes, I mean, it's nice to have the program that's kind of embedded in the site, but to then layer on top of that the, that recreational component and have that distributed throughout the city is, is a really great idea.
I imagine partnering with like Summer of the Arts or something like that, just for some music. I will say that it's a little disheartening to learn that maybe Wednesday's Farmer's Market won't happen because it was always some live festival activities happening over there, but totally understand some of the challenges that have been over the, over time. What I would encourage is just maybe some exploration of how can something like that still happen? Maybe it, maybe it's on the road, maybe it's three times a year. And it could have more of a DEI component to it, more diversity component. It could be a little more local. McPherson Park, I can't wait until we have some type of a musical event because it was such a, a music lover. And so I, I just see there's great opportunities. I've really enjoyed all of the, the different things that have happened that the park and rec do in our community. And I think it really does help with experiences for all types of individuals because I think exposure is key to really anyone's development. And so I thank you and the Park Division for giving us all opportunities.
I'd also like to thank you and the Parks Department for, again, on the DEI aspect of it, all, all portions of the city, north, south, east, west, small parks, large parks. You have managed to, to hit those spots so that like one group isn't left out, one part of the portion of the town. So I commend you on that.
I just think, I think it's, to shift a little bit away from the rec portion to the buildings portion, it's, it's really important that your contribution has been to working on the ventilation systems and so forth. And so between, between improving ventilation, which I think is one of the, one of the focal points of the future for public health, and sort of the greening of buildings as we, as we change and build new buildings, will be really key aspects.
Great. Well, thank you so much. Really appreciate it. And we are moving on to the Senior Center with our coordinator, Latasha Deloche. And excited to have her oysterous spirit with us here today.
Oysterous spirit.
Thank you for letting us continue to use your building.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Trust me, I'm going to address that.
Good morning, everyone. For those who do not know me, my name is Latasha Deloche and I'm the Senior Center Coordinator. First, I would like to give you all a very warm welcome to our new city council members and an official welcome to all of you all to the Senior Centers since I haven't had an opportunity to stand before you as we've transitioned to the space for social distancing. So welcome to our building. I thank you all for this opportunity for me to tell you a little bit about the Senior Center. First, the Senior Center is operated by seven staff members. Four are which full-time employees, including my position, and three are part-time employees. The department is also supported by two full-time facility maintenance staff in partnership with Parks and Rec Department. So we're very grateful for them and their amazing upkeep of our building and sanitation, obviously, as we continue to go through this pandemic. The center mission is to enhance the quality of life by creating opportunities to support wellness, social connection, community engagement, lifelong learning for diverse and growing older adult population. The center's ultimate goal is to continue expanding connections into in social isolation for adults over 50. We specialize in increasing social involvement and bringing together intergenerational groups to learn from one another by staying active, curious, and connected. Social isolation is a growing health crisis that is not limited to older adults, especially in this ongoing pandemic. Social isolation increases a person's risk of premature death and can be rivaled with causation of smoking, impacts of diabetes. And research shows that there is a 50% increase of dimension for folks who are socially isolated. The center offers classes, clubs, interest groups, special events, and volunteer opportunities for older adults and other members of our community. While programming varies, it typically involves the performing and applied arts, technology, finances, which is important, fitness, history, literature, language, science, current events, travel, and wellness. We are well-known for our wellness equipment that is geared specifically for individuals over 50. This past year, we have had, we have made efforts to continue providing virtual opportunities for all of our older adults in our community, as well as around our county with our partnerships with City of Corvale, as well as the City of North Liberty in the county, as well as for people who are outside our state lines because our virtual programming is open and free to the public, as well as even we have some international members from Canada now. We're quite proud of that, being able to have that type of reach. Because of that, we have become national leaders in our work on virtual programming and how we continue to be reached out by multiple senior centers across the United States. Many are impressed with our ability to have the number of virtual programs that we have and the reach of participants. Our classes usually are for about five to 120 participants. Even this week, we had a full class that we had to move down to the assembly room that was completely full on learning about Asian culture. One of our secrets, if you want to know our secret, is that we have one of the strongest support systems because many senior centers are not embedded in their local city government as we are. And we are quite, quite grateful to be that, as well as amazing and consistent staff. Majority of my staff that are full-time have been for here a minimum of 10 years. So that's a lot of knowledge and information about how the Senior Center is running. We're proud of that. And I get to work next to and with these folks every day and I'm proud of that as well. And then we have the, a great community, right, that supports and love older adults. The center houses several agencies that serve older adults, including the VNA, which is the Visiting Nurse Association, Johnson County Public Health, which provides medical and health services here in our building downstairs, well, throughout the building wherever, wherever we have space sometimes. Free Medicare insurance, so you might have heard of ship legal, and assistance with tax prep that happens in the, the spring here that'll be coming up so that that's free for our seniors so they can avoid some of the fees associated with getting their taxes done, and those are on seasonal basis. As well as we provide office space for Trail of Johnson County, which is a membership-based nonprofit that provide necessary services and supports to allow and assist seniors in staying in place in their homes. So a few bright spots. We continue to offset operational cost with contributions from our philanthropic arm, which is our friends at the center, through our endowment fund every year. We partnered with Towncrest Pharmacy and Iowa City Parks and Rec Department to provide administrative support and infrastructure support for multiple COVID-19 vaccination clinics. We offer, which is something I'm very proud of, being a part of implementing, a self-serving free pantry that includes perishable and non-perishable foods, toiletries, sexual disease prevention, thank you, public health, and offer other free information for our, in our lower level of, of our building here when you come in on that Washington Street door. It's open to anyone in the community, not just older adults. This summer, we were able to provide a new program called a Give Back Garden. It was a way to develop a way to fight some of that social isolation by having that activity outdoors and to bring older adults together and learn new skills, as well as it provided free and fresh produce for the simple and free pantry. We continue to so, offer scholarship memberships of a low cost of $10, or if a senior does not have it, we will allow people to join for free. But majority of our programs actually are free. So these, this mostly is to be able to allow people to use some of our spaces, like our fitness center. We have significantly increased topics, a diversity of topics, including challenging discussions with members and public on discussions on race, gender, sexual orientation, and other attributes of diversity. From intersectional viewpoint and standpoint, these efforts are strategic in our recruiting and retention of more and more individuals of color. It is important in any recruitment and retention plan of when you want to increase diversity that you prepare the people that are currently in that space for that change. I think sometimes we get that wrong when we just want to bring in lots of people and have them prepare the space. Uh-oh. I got to chatting with you on my, went off. We continue to do that. And we are currently offering our program guide in English, Spanish, and Arabic. Some of our ongoing challenges is the continuation of this pandemic. This is impacting older adult populations and a higher mortality risk than other populations. And so there's continuous concern about how we maintain our building and picking and choosing about which activities will actually be in-building versus our virtual programming or which, which opportunities are hybrid as well. So we continue to be creative about how we do that and work towards our goal of decreasing social isolation, keeping older adults connected in the community by using that hybrid virtual program, as well as social distancing, masking, and, and obviously sanitizing on a consistent basis. We also lost our ability to provide noonday congregate meals, but we continue to check in with Horizons about how they're making sure that those folks that were coming here are continuing to be served at home with home delivery. And we will continue to work through the phases of our building of our up-and-coming facility master plan that is happening. And we hope to present, to present that plan to you all really soon as we're in those very, very final stages and then hope to get that in front of you. So in my conclusion, if you would like a tour of our building, let me know. And I'd love to do that. If you have any questions, I'm happy to take that at this time.
Thank you. Do you also work with the various senior residences around town?
Yeah, absolutely. Have a really good relationship with those folks. We offer some of our virtual programs. We, we know a lot of their activity directors. So our program coordinator keeps in good contact with them, as well as I know quite a few of the directors around town. And as well as we have a monthly older adult meeting that we pull. A lot of those folks get, well, two, well, three of those meetings where we get a chance to get together and kind of talk about different things that are going on just in the community in general of how we can continue to support older adults.
And I know that pre-pandemic, which seems like an entirely different world, you were, you were working actively on bringing young people together with, with, with some of the, some of the people, some of the patrons of this building and others. Is that been able to continue or is that sort of on hold?
It's a mixture, right? Now that we're able to have younger kids who are getting vaccinated, there's a little bit loosening of people feeling more comfortable with that. Currently, we partner with, it's a school right next door. And so they have been bringing youth in. They were just here, actually, I think Thursday, when it's too cold to just be able to have some space. So we are hearing the voices of children here, here in our building. But we were doing some more of that work, but some of that has definitely slowed down just because we just have to be more cautious about the mixing of those two populations.
Was there a male component to bringing the generations together at one point?
There's always food here at the Senior Center when we're doing events. Obviously, because of that, because of taking off mask and, and exposure, we've had to not be able to continue some of those programs, but we always have had food. But if we're outside, we definitely will, will have food. Recently, when we celebrated our 40th anniversary, we had ice cream truck out and lots of cupcakes so that we could celebrate that. But yes, we are pro-food here at the Senior Center.
And I know we'll get more into maybe some facility upgrades, but I wanted to just ask about the kitchen, which is, you know, kind of a hot commodity. Can you kind of just give us an update on thoughts, if there are any at this point, or if that's just something that's still out in the wind?
So it is definitely a part of that facility master's plan. I'm really excited about it. The goal of the kitchen is for it to be utilized not only for the Senior Center, but for the community, right? So the goal is for the, the kitchen to be a catering slash classroom. So the goal would be that people could learn while they're in there with adaptable tables that would raise, come up for accessibility. And that people also who have catering could utilize the kitchen outside the hours that we're having our classes. So for instance, if you're doing food prep for a food truck or something like that. I think there's lots of opportunities for programs there and partnerships there. And it's endless. In my head, I have like at least 10 programs I've built that I don't want to go into right now, but that we could potentially do here. Some of the classes we're thinking about is what happens when your, your house size has decreased due to the death of a spouse, right? So how do we provide food for one or, or different health conditions people may have? Some nutrition classes. So some of those things we're able to do kind of in-class or virtually with some of our partnerships with the State of Iowa. We partner with the public health there and we provide some of those nutrition classes online. But to be able to actually, at one point, at some point, be able to do that here in our kitchen, we'll be really happy, as well as we'll be able to utilize it for, for this space. As you see, we've painted some. We have some more to do in here. And that we can utilize the spaces for events that can be rented out as a way to provide some income for the Senior Center.
I don't know if you're planning to partner with some of the, the classes and stuff like that, but at one point at Mercy Hospital, the chef did a lot of, I guess, like videos on, on making food. And at Hy-Vee, there is a nutrition, they have a nutrition program. So there could be some opportunities for partnership that could really help, you know, really make that program very successful with some really skillful and talented individuals that could assist.
Yes. And definitely as a part of our hope, I think our first thing from a facility master plan that you all will see is, is dealing with some of the outside parts that are essential to deal with first. And then that kitchen is definitely in our top priority.
I didn't have any questions, but just wanted to say thank you for having the goal of decreasing isolation. I mean, that has turned out to be so incredibly critical during the pandemic. And it's just really wonderful to have that alignment and intentionality. and it's just really wonderful to have that alignment and intentionality throughout the programming. So thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
I appreciate what Horizons does for the community as far as providing meals. I know a number of people who rely on that for their food. They can't get out to the grocery stores or they just don't want to cook for themselves, and that's a great service. But I do know a few people who used to rely on the Senior Center for, for their meals. Is the eventual plan to return to that, hopefully here?
I think when it's safe, we definitely want to do that. It's, it's about feeling safe enough to do that. And, you know, that's a partnership. We, we never really had any part of it other than housing it and being a location. So it really is based on Horizons and how they feel about that and partnership with us, having some discussion about how do we do that safely, et cetera. At this time, a lot of congregate sites around the state of Iowa are not open. And actually, we were seeing a decrease in congregate sites just in general, just nationally. So yeah, so there is definitely, but if you know those folks and they are not receiving food, please let me know so that I can talk to Horizons and we can make sure that they're getting a meal.
Thank you so much. All right. And we are going to jump a little bit in our agenda and invite NDS, our Neighborhood and Development Services, Tracy Heishu, who we are well familiar with because she's at most of our work sessions and formal meetings. So welcome.
Thank you. I'm Tracy Heishu, Neighborhood Development Services. I want to thank you for extending your Saturday to listen to department directors talk about their concerns, their highlights, their budget. I'm not going to lie, the last couple of years for NDS, like the community, has been a challenge. But with any great challenges, always great opportunities. And these, the federal funds, the mountain funds that we'll be seeing in the next two years creates an opportunity that can help potentially our residents for years to come. So it's an exciting time, too. So a little bit about our budget. NDS is responsible for the overall administration and execution of all building inspection, planning, including transportation planning and zoning activities. We also manage affordable housing and our other community development programs, funded with federal, state and local funds targeting lower-income residents. We have a total budget usually runs around eight point, 18.7 million. You'll see in the revised fiscal year '22 budget, because of the infusion of ARPA and home, ARPA and CARES Act funding, it's about 44, 42.9 million. Whatever we don't spend in fiscal year '22, you'll see that carryover in fiscal year '23. In addition to that budget, the MPO, our Metropolitan Planning Organization of Johnson County, allocated 17.3 million to our area transit agencies, Iowa City, Corville and Cambus. That doesn't get through, doesn't get shown in our budget because it's a pass-through directly to the transit agencies, but they're still monitoring that, drawing down those funds, and they'll continue to work on that throughout the year. We are a department of 45 FTEs across four divisions, administration, development services, neighborhood services, and of course, the MPO. So a lit, oh, the budget request, we do have one of those budget requests Jeff talked about earlier. It's for our Community Development Program Assistant to go from .63 to 1.0. You'll find that due to all the affordable housing programs that we've had over the last few years, the riverfront crossings, TIF annexations, the infusion of different funding sources, we have 15, 20-plus years of affordability compliance periods. So we need help with the compliance of those programs and just the general administration of all of our housing programs. So I'll talk a little bit more about that community development. So I'll start with Neighborhood Services. It consists of three divisions. It's the largest division in NDS with over half the employees. They staff the Housing Community Development Commission and the Public Art Advisory Committee. Housing Inspection Services inspects almost 20,000 rental units every two years for health, safety and welfare. We receive approximately 2,000 nuisance complaints. Those are like your snow, grass, weed, garbage, et cetera. The Housing Authority primarily administers housing programs such as the Housing Choice Voucher Program and the Public Housing Programs with federal funding from HUD. Our service area includes all of Johnson County, Iowa County and parts of Washington County. It's exciting that we have now total vouchers and public housing units equal 1,559. You know, for several years that I've been here, we have a stagnant in the number of Housing Choice vouchers we received. But since the end of calendar year 2015, we've gained 185 vouchers. Those are for specialty clientele. So we gained 38 vouchers for veterans, 78 mainstream and 69 emergency vouchers, and those are for basically a subset of homeless, people who are experiencing homelessness. I always want to, when I talk about the Housing Authority, it's the one program that there's so many misconceptions about and about the people who have, who utilize our program. So I also want to talk about the major takeaways. Our vouchers are dispersed throughout Johnson County in about the same relation as population. So not one city has all the vouchers and not just one neighborhood has all the vouchers. They are dispersed throughout the Johnson County. And consistently, every year, over half of our vouchers that we administer are utilized by the elderly or people with disabilities. And then with our families with children, only 1% report welfare as their sole source of income. So they are working, but they're not able to afford market rate housing in our community. And then I know, you know, many of you are familiar about the Source of Income Protection that we, we passed back in 2016 that will go away in 2023 when the state doesn't allow us to force that anymore. But this pandemic has shown that, what a source of stability that the voucher program is. So we make over 8 million in housing payments to landlords of rental properties. So it's a source of stability for the household, as well as a source of stable income for the landlord. Community Development is the last division of Neighborhood Services. It's the one that administers all your community development block grants, your home funds. They administer our economic development, public art, aid agencies. Typically, our focus is on low to moderate income residents. In a, in a general year before COVID, we receive about 1.2 million in annual entitlement funds. That are those your federal funds for housing, economic development, public service programs. Due to the pandemic, we are intensely engaged in getting federal, state and local COVID relief out to the community so that these funds get to the most vulnerable at-risk residents, while at the same time following all the federal and state requirements that are attached to it. Since 2020, we have entered partnerships with over 25 local organizations to help expedite and prioritize how we get these funds to those who need it most. We have, so far, just with the CARES Act and the various other pots of money that we've received, we've received 3.89 million. This is three times over our annual entitlement funds. And out of that 3.89 million, we've allocated 2.9 to housing assistance, over half million to public service, public services, and then 423,000 to economic development that assisted 27 small businesses. And what was unique about that was 22 of the 27 small businesses were owned by women or persons of color. We are now making ways, or making plans to implement the additional 20 million in ARPA and Home Art Funds that we will be receiving. You're going to get a council memo with your next council meeting about hiring a grant specialist to allocate, distribute, report and monitor these funds at your next meeting. Some of the major initiatives, just, I mean, COVID has basically taken up, taken up our year. In fact, I administered CDVG home funds for about 10 years, so even I have been taking on funds. And I think it's been to the detriment of my staff because I can't find anything but I save, and, but we're getting through it. We've also purchased eight duplexes for the South District Program. This has been an opportunity for us because only 11, 11 of the 16 units are occupied, five are vacant, but not all in one. So that means we have five half units of the duplexes vacant. This has created other partnerships for us and opportunities. So we are partnering for workforce development, the construction trades, with Kirkwood and the Home Builders Association for both women and students in the Iowa City Community School District. The class was full. Kirkwood advertised it. We have a full class. 15 women are on site today. They started 8:00 AM over on Taylor, and we ended up with even full class with 10 on the waiting list. So we'll continue to utilize those partnerships while we have vacant units, just to get, we need contractors. We're seeing a shortage out there in that field. So anything that we can do. So we're going to provide affordable housing for residents in that area, but we're also going to provide the construction trade, training that, that will be, that's just needed in our area. We've also generated over 2.9 million in fee and lieu payments or revenue generated through the Riverfront Crossings District and tax increment financing, affordable housing requirements. That's the money that we used to buy the duplexes. We had to spend 1.5 million to buy the eight duplexes. We have 1.3 million available. However, most of that funding has to be used in the Riverfront Crossings District due to the requirement. Total, in all of fiscal year '21, we spent over 10 million for affordable housing assistance benefiting over 1,900 households. And you're going to see, we have a report that we do. You saw it last year, our NDS Annual Report. That will be available probably the end of February, early March. That will outline all of our efforts throughout the department, affordable housing, community development. You'll see that all in our affordable, in our NDS Annual Report. The next department is Development Services. They are your planning and building inspection. They are the ones that we rely on for the comprehensive planning that we need, annexations, zoning, subdivisions, site plans, building permits, inspections. They enforce our floodplain regulations and our historic preservation requirements. They staff the Planning and Zoning Commission, Board of Adjustment, Board of Appeals and Historic Preservation Commission. Huge accomplishment for them this year was the adoption of the South District Form-Based Code in November. As you remember, the new code focuses on pedestrian-friendly development, preserves important environmental resources, incorporates complete streets and supports a variety of housing types, our AK, our missing middle housing. We're working on implementation of financial incentives for engineering design work to support code-compliant development. And we hope that these regulations are successful so that we can duplicate them in our other areas as development progresses. In December, we hired an additional building inspector to provide relief for the fire department and to focus on energy efficiency code requirements on projects that required a building permit. We will incorporate the annual liquor inspections in the University of Iowa residential properties. They need to be inspected as well each month, or sorry, each year, and we start this month. We will build and increase inspections during rough-in to confirm that insulation value meets the code and that final inspections to verify energy code requirements. At the end of each calendar year, it's always a great time for us to start looking at trends, especially in our development. And I know Jeff touched upon a few of those this morning. So I'm just going to go over the things that we're going to go over, or continue to go over at the City Manager's Office. In 2021, we issued 2,100 permits valued at 135 million. To place this in perspective, in '20, we had 1,700 permits at 87 million. Our 10-year average is 2,300 with a value of 189 million. So the 21 numbers are an optimistic sign that we are recovering, but we are not back to pre-pandemic levels yet. We are now tracking solar permits as part of our energy efficiency initiatives. In 2020, we had 71 permits. Last year, it rose to 95. Re-zonings have dropped drastically, from 26 in fiscal year '18 to nine last year, while county re-zonings are increasing. We didn't have any in fiscal year '18. We had seven last year. What's concerning for, for the Planning Department is based on lots applied in '21, the number of dwelling units anticipated is the lowest it's been since the aftermath of the Great Recession in 2010. The issuance of building permits is outpacing the creation of new lots, which has decreased the availability of buildable land. For single-family development, this is a long-term trend where the number of available lots have decreased each decade, at least since 1990s. So we are working at, we're analyzing that. We're going to be preparing a memo that you'll be seeing in the next few weeks, so we can discuss that. We are excited about upcoming development in 2022. We have the Gilbane at 700 South Dubuque and the former Capstone project at 315 Prentice. Both of those are student-oriented development. Then we'll have the completion of Tailwinds, the new 11-story high-rise in the East College Street. We have a build-out of historic buildings that's, that's progressing right now. Our last division is the MPO. They are our transportation wing. They, they look at all forms of modes of transportation from vehicle, bike, pedestrian and transit. They complete traffic studies, traffic analysis. They prepare and administer transportation-related grants. They funnel federal and state transportation funds to projects and programs. They work to enhance traffic safety by analyzing and monitoring collision data and working with those communities in those problem areas. And of course, they do all the development reviews for transportation concerns for Iowa City. They are governed by two policy boards, rural and urban, and they're comprised of elected officials. Their revenues come from Iowa City's General Fund, Road Use Tax Fund, and contributions from Johnson County and the State of Iowa Grants. They will continue to fulfill the goals of the Bike Master Plan. In 2022, you'll see the planned project significantly increase bike connectivity in the South District. They will continue to work on that 17.3 million to, for the local transit agencies because they still have those monitoring, reporting, drawdown to funds responsibilities. And they continue to work on the Long Range Transportation Plan. It is a major 18-month planning effort that will culminate in the adoption of a plan in May of '22. And it does include the transit and passenger rail, passenger rail studies. Jeff said we could go over our concerns, so I'll go over my concerns as well for the Planning Department in general, or for NDS in general. It's the same as I noted last year, staff capacity and the complexity, lack of flexibility and number of reviews we complete. We have a new staff. I think a third of our building inspection and planning department is new. A lot of our reviews are time-consuming and there's difficulty understanding the requirements amongst enforcement officials, other departments in the development community. Our code is typically what you see for a community of size. We have our current zoning designations. We have those requirements that are important to our community, such as conservation, historic districts, sensitive areas and design overlays. However, in addition to just our regular code, we almost have three separate codes. We have the Peninsula Code, which I realize is almost built out, but we still continue to get additions, rehab that we have to look. We have the Riverfront Crossings Code, which has seven sub-districts within that. And now we have the South District Form-Based Code. So I realize we're not going to probably have a code overhaul in the next few years, but we will look to simplify and we'll look to standardize language as we go. So you might be seeing some code amendments from time to time as we strive to make it easier and simpler to follow. Our department priorities, we always, we're trying to balance those department priorities with your strategic priorities. In addition to timely, impactful and effective expenditure of our COVID relief funds, we're, we're, we're coming up with a memo that we'll send to you, but we have to balance the following priorities, and there's probably more that you'll probably add during your budget discussion, so in no particular order. We have incorporate missing middle, development by right into our residential zoning. We have Riverfront Crossings Form-Based Code updates and changes. We have the climate action initiatives that include incentivizing improved energy efficiency in new and existing buildings. We have district plans. We have 10 districts. We need to discuss how often we update those districts. Do we consolidate them? How often, how often do we basically, to update them? We are going to concentrate on our growth areas, which is the Southwest, Northeast and North-Southeast districts at this, at this point. And then we have the update to the Affordable Housing Action Plan, which will include potential code changes to address affordable housing. So all those things are going to come to you during your budget discussion to discuss and to prioritize. And based on your feedback, we will, we will make a work plan based on your input. Our department has been busy. We have, and it's, like I said, it's been a challenging past year, but we have dedicated caring professional staff. I'm proud of the work that do, the work that they do and what accomplishments they do every year. So that ends my presentation about NDS and happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you so much, Tracy. I have just kind of a big picture question about some of the more, I don't know, intensive kind of comes to mind, affordable housing initiatives that we have, like the, the vouchers that support the permanent supportive housing. Do we have a sense of where our community is in metrics like that compared to other cities our size or other college communities?
I think we have more vouchers. I'll have to go with the Housing Authority, but I believe we have more vouchers than other communities our size. But we're also a three-county area, so I think it's unique. Not all cities have the Housing Authority under them. So we do, and like I said, we're Johnson County, Iowa County and parts of Washington County. And whenever new vouchers come or available, we have usually accepted all that we, that we've been able to. And it's created work demands. I mean, it's a, it's a different process than the federal waiting list or the, how you process Housing Choice vouchers. So these, they go through coordinated entry or the VASH vouchers come from the veterans. So it's a learning curve. But as we get more of us, we're familiar with those programs and we get more, hopefully that staff's able to better absorb those and get those out. I know for the emergency housing vouchers, we committed those fast. I think I, we put out a, either social media blip or something in your council packet, about only 6% of housing authorities had even implemented the program and we had already gotten ours out and started leasing. So I think we're doing well in that area.
Thank you.
Following on the heels of what Council Burgess said with the vouchers, have, have there been early conversations with landlords and their understanding of, with the state getting rid of that, that structure or that, that compelling piece? Do landlords understand the stability that those vouchers actually offer to them as well to making sure that their units are rented, right? I'm, you know, I'm just wondering what kinds of common sense conversations there have been? Because I'm sure that you've, your division has been on top of this to...
We've not started marketing yet, but we will. I think what landlords are finding is, I mean, without us even marketing, they're getting paid. And that's not always true with all the other properties out there and tenants. So I think that speaks huge volumes in itself, but we'll start talking about the benefits. And we have a community that we inspect regularly. So besides entering a contract, a HAP contract, the requirements of our voucher holders are not that much different than any other tenant. So, because we're already inspecting. I mean, there's some communities that don't inspect. There's some communities that only inspect every 10 years, every six years. We're out there at least every other year. So some of the reasons why landlords don't want to participate is because they fear increased inspections. So we really, it's not as much of a problem in Iowa City than it might be in other communities. Thanks.
The Landlord Association, I'm assuming that there's opportunities to talk to them as well.
Yep. Yep, we'll be moving towards that, yep.
And increase that awareness. At the end of your presentation, you were talking about a third of the staff is new. And I understand, and when you have, you mentioned the, the different codes, there's three. How challenging that is, as well as the institutional knowledge that, that, you know, comes with longevity and stuff like that. At least for me, I know that this, the, the past council, and I assume that the new council, do see the need to make sure that we're consolidating the codes. do see the need to make sure that we're consolidating the codes, you know, and certainly want to hear, which we know we will, from, from NDS, kind of the, your thoughts and your plans for how we can make that happen. And so I just wanted to just continue to say, at least for myself, I open up that door because I do know when you have multiple things going on and you have staff training them on all of, you know, varying codes, and they're overlapping, and you get confused, right, on, on what is what. So I do acknowledge that. The other thing I want to say is just when it comes down to some of the federal funds with CDBG and stuff like that, have you, because I know there's been a few things coming out during COVID that have been kind of unexpected. Oh, there's money available. Have you all been able to accept all of that money? Or have you turned it away and if so, and not offered it to the public?
No, we've not, to my knowledge, we've not turned down any money that's been offered to us. We've not allocated or spent it all, but we're not turning it down.
Awesome. Great. That's all I wanted to...
It's an opportunity there.
Yes.
You all do just an enormous amount of work. And I think that, you know, you highlighted what the challenges, the mayor just highlighted, sort of the challenges of having new staff in addition. But the, I look forward to also seeing the new affordable housing plan and how we as a council can work with you on that.
I did just have a quick follow-up based on what the mayor was saying with the technical understanding and the differences in code. I see in the Development Services Division, there is a conversion of the Development Regulation Specialist to an Associate Planner with Urban Planning. Can you just kind of explain that?
Yep. We had a, due to the South District Form-Based Code, what we wanted this position to do is to concentrate on site review. So that person is still going to do the, the sensitive areas of floodplain management. That will remain. But they will also have to work a lot more with our, our planning department regarding the South District Form-Based Code, regarding all the site reviews and the requirements. So we're transitioning that person from just basically a regulation specialist to an associate planner to incorporate much more, much more coordination with the planning department. So it's still a full-time person.
Yeah.
And then also, it was at about the same time that Engineering also got an employee for Stormwater that took some of the responsibilities from our older position up to Engineering. So that frees that person to do the site reviews and the South District Form-Based Code items.
Very helpful. Thank you.
When can we expect that affordable housing?
Update?
Yeah, the update.
Well, we're drafting it right now, so we hope to have the draft done and then back to the committee so that the committee can either basically say yay, nay, edit, we want more research on that. So it's gonna go back to the committee at the end of this month. So it depends on how much time and effort the committee wants to basically tweak the report. So we've met for over a year now. We're probably 90% done. So there's some, there's some areas of debate, such as annexation policy changes that they're debating right now. So it's all basically, it'll be up to them. So I'm not anticipating they'll meet more than once or twice. I'm assuming, and then it'll come to you for review.
Thanks.
All right. Well, thank you so much.
Well, thank you.
Yes. So we have just about 13 minutes. Kelly just got back. Are you up for your presentation?
Sure.
All right. We'll go with, we'll go with the City Clerk Office presentation. Should've gave you some warning.
I can wing it. Still good morning. Kelly Freeling, City Clerk's Office. The clerk's information starts on page 42, and then the budget starts on 337. Like Eric said earlier, the clerk is one of the three city council appointees, along with the mayor and the city attorney. Including myself, we have four full-time employees and then one hourly transcriptionist. Are you struggling, John?
No, no, I was scratching.
I was just gonna ask if you could speak into your mic, please.
There aren't any recommended changes or requests for personnel. The clerk's office coordinates all the city council agendas and information packets for distribution. And then we archive those packets along with the signed and completed resolutions and ordinances, and then also take care of any of the filings or recordings, like at the recorder's office or the secretary of state. We're also responsible for legal publications, such as public notices, ordinances, and minutes required by law. Open records are requested through the clerk's office. And then we route those to the appropriate departments to gather the information and then send those back out to the requister. Some of the licensing duties that we do in our office are taxi companies and drivers, outdoor service areas, cigarette permits, beer and liquor licensing. We also take applications for public assembly permits, parades, use of the PED mall. So anything like information tables or the ambulatory vendors that you see on the PED mall. We offer, also provide support to the Community Police Review Board and then our clerical support for the cemetery. And then really, I think a large function of our office is assisting city staff and the general public for any information, whether it's directing them to the appropriate department or trying to navigate and find something in the council archives. The budget has a slight decrease because it's a non-election year. I think if you look at the CPRB budget, there was a slight increase due to legal counsel and the recommendations, you know, that they've been working towards giving to council and then some increase in complaints. We're small but mighty, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do a lot.
Well, I'm just looking at the, under the goals, objectives, and in performance measures, the ordinance and resolutions received and finalized for the calendar year 2021 were 456, which was over 150 more than the previous year. So it's...
That means you guys were busy.
Yeah, as were you, I guess. It looks like it's projected to go down, but that's an astonishing increase in that particular measure. So thank you, as always, for your work.
I had a metrics question also. So on the, on the following page, the performance measure is talking about the number of images electronically archived through the recorder and project files went way down in calendar 21, but is expected to go way up in calendar 22. Do you know what that is?
Well, we had, there for a while, we had had past, like, public works projects that we were sending a ton in to get those image so that we could archive those. We finally caught up, and so that's probably why you saw it shift down a little bit. Again, it's probably another surge of those public works projects. We try to send them as we get a good chunk, but that isn't always how it works out.
And then my other question relates to the portion of your job that you said is helping people find things, like in the city council archives. Are you working with those who are working on the website update with that, or how, how is that gonna work?
Well, we did make a change. I think it might have been you that had requested that the search options were a little bit difficult. And so we, we did do a fix for that. Now with the new website, I haven't seen any of that. So I'm assuming we would be able to do something similar or hopefully even better. But I haven't seen anything yet. So, I mean, that would be something that we look at so that it's, things are easily accessible.
Yeah. I'd just encourage as much integration kind of in that as we can. Because obviously, your way of keeping documents to be, to meet our legal requirements may not always match the, you know, most sort of intuitive way of finding information. So however we can coordinate is awesome.
Right.
Thank you.
Yep.
I guess for me, I don't have anything that pertains to the budget because there's been some things highlighted. I just wanted to again thank you and your staff for all the assistance and technical support that you've given to me and I'm sure that my colleagues, as well as previous colleagues, would say the same thing. And also to those that are from the community, oftentimes you all are getting the calls and helping people navigate. And there are some success stories that I've heard where they've really appreciated the services and, and the customer service, the high quality of customer service that you give. So I am recognizing that to some of the public, you all are the initial face that they interact with, and I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right. We are about five minutes to 12, and we're gonna stop here. And we'll come back at 12:30, 12:25. We'll just do 30 minutes, and we'll be back. So see you at 12:25. All right. We will get started again with our budget session for 2023, the proposed budget. So we're gonna have next up is the Metropolitan Planning Organization of Johnson County.
Tracy covered that really briefly in her budget. And for those of you on the MPO JC board, you'll probably have a little bit more detailed discussion on that budget at a future meeting. So I think we're ready to jump into transportation services, if that works for you.
All right. We'll do that. Come on up.
Good afternoon, council. How's everyone doing?
Awesome and amazing. How are you?
Excellent. Quite well. It feels, this is a point in the winter when 20 degrees feels like 50 to me. So I'm officially acclimated and was happy to, to take a walk downtown to meet with you all today. So again, good afternoon. I wanted to first say welcome to Councilor Harmsen and Mayor Protem Alter. Welcome, welcome. We're really looking forward to working with you both and the entire council this year. I am Darian Nagel-Gamm, Director of Transportation Services. In short, we help Iowa City get where they're going. That's really kind of our mission in our department, and whether that's by transit, by bus, by bike, by car, on foot, especially in the downtown area. We really help, we have a hand in all of those things. In your budget flip book to start, our Transportation Services Department introductions are on page 256, if you're following along. And then the bulk of the financial information starts on page 438, if you want to make a note of that. And I'm gonna start here with just an overview of our staff and our divisions. So we have 76 employees in Transportation Services over three different divisions. The first division I'll talk briefly about is our Transportation Services Administration, and that is a three-person division. That is myself, Mark Rummel, who's the Associate Director, and we have a maintenance worker specifically dedicated to maintaining the Central Business District, so PED mall and the surrounding area. So those are the three, those are the three things that are contained within our Transportation Services Admin, which makes up 4% of our total employment within Transportation Services. Second division I wanted to highlight briefly is our parking operations, and that's really 28% of our total employees for Transportation Services. And that encompasses really the maintenance and operations for our on-street parking meters in the downtown, our ramps, our parking ramps, parking facilities, parking lots. We do have six parking lots that we manage as well. And of course, our parking enforcement that helps keep, keeps things, keeps people and vehicles turning over in the near downtown areas. Last division within Transportation Services that I wanted to highlight is the transit system. This makes up the bulk of the employees, the bulk of staff within our department. 67% of the employees in our department are earmarked for or support transit operations in the community, which consists of 13 routes, new as of this year with the implementation of the transit study changes that I'll talk a little bit about in a few moments. We do operate 16 hours a day weekdays, and we provide service 12 hours a day on Saturday currently. And we'll, and we'll talk a little bit more about the Sunday service pilot, which will commence this year, which will extend another 12 hours of service to the community on Sundays. All right. Next topic, budget. So our budget for fiscal year '23 is 13.3 million is what the proposal is. 64% of that is earmarked for transit operations. 31% of that is earmarked for operating and maintaining our parking systems. And then 5% of that is earmarked for administration and maintenance of the Central Business District. I wanted to note too that the bulk of the funding that funds transportation services, in fact, 95% of it comes from the transit and parking funds. As Jeff mentioned earlier, those are those business-like funds, enterprise funds, that receive revenue from user fees, et cetera. And 5% of our funding for our department comes from the general fund. So we're very heavily weighted towards the enterprise funding to keep our operations running. So 2021, a little bit of a rear-view mirror moment here, but it was a very big year for our department. We finalized the Iowa City Area Transit Study, and I can tell you unequivocally, I fully understand why it's been 40 years since this was, since the last time the transit study, or the transit system, I should say, was comprehensively reviewed because it is quite an undertaking. We feel really good about our launch of the first two phases this summer, which was first and foremost, the realignment or the alignment of fares and our fare system with Corville. We made some very positive changes, all positive changes, in fact, to our, to our fare system. And we also now have all of our fares aligned with Corville, so they're the same for both systems, and you can use all of our passes on both systems. And that is the first time, we had some that would, that were interchangeable, some that weren't. And as you might imagine, that can get really confusing for, for passengers and for staff. So that was the first phase last July. We followed that a month later with, with a complete redesign of our transit routes, stops, and our bus schedule, which was, which was a very, I would say, a monumental undertaking for, for our staff. And not just our staff in our department, but also for other departments that assisted, especially communications. They were absolutely essential in launching, helping us throughout the entire process to get the word. This is a very heavy, communications-intensive process, as it should be. And they really did an amazing job helping us make sure that we were able to answer as many questions and get that information out in front of the community. And then, you know, answer many questions after the launch, either through the info booth that we hosted downtown, where we just staffed that for, for multiple weeks this summer, or through the, you know, phone calls we received, emails and all of that. So we feel really good about those first two phases. And we'll talk a little bit more about the phases that are yet to come yet this year. The other major accomplishment that I wanted to highlight for the department is the launching of the prep, preparation really, for the launch of electric bus operations. This is not as simple as we're just taking a diesel bus out of operation and replacing it with a diesel bus. This was, I would say, another mega project really is what it turned out to be because there's a whole infrastructure component that was, that took a greater, a greater portion of the year last year to just make sure we have the infrastructure we need to be able to power those buses. In fact, we just charged them for the first time right before the holidays, so we're thrilled about that. So we'll talk a little bit more about the next steps, but I wanted to highlight that as a big success. We're launching in January, but it really is because of all of the work that we did in 2021, and not just our department. Again, Engineering had a big part in that. And we also had partnered, I should mention, with Mid-American Energy for sponsorship for these electric buses to really kind of promote the synergy between Mid-American's pledge towards using an increasing amount of renewable energy, which really aligns well with the city's focus on climate action goals. So you'll see on the electric buses, they're co-branded with Mid-American Energy, and they're co-branded with Iowa City's Climate Action Plan, which makes so much sense. And we're really excited about that, about that partnership. The next few weeks right now, we've started our training for the electric buses because again, it's not as easy as, here's your new bus, you know, take it away. It's a, it's a different, it's a different company. The buses are laid out differently. They drive differently. Of course, we have the infrastructure piece that we need to train on. We're scheduling emergency service provider training because they're high voltage, so they need to be handled differently in case there is an incident, but we hope to never have. But we've begun that, begun that training this week, actually. And we will, the plan is to have, to launch them into service, revenue service. the plan is to have, to launch them into service, revenue service on the week of January 24th. So that's when you can expect to begin to see them out on a few routes. And we'll ultimately be moving them, we don't know how far they can get in a day right now under cold temperatures. So it's really gonna be, we're gonna pilot them on routes. We're gonna see what the, what the energy demands are, because as you're probably all aware, electric buses, if it's cold outside, it reduces the range, the amount of miles that they can travel in a day. We've compensated for a part of that by adopting a cold weather package that Proterra has recommended for cold weather communities. So our buses will be equipped with an auxiliary diesel heater to help power the heat, not to power the drivetrain. They don't, the buses will not drive off of, it's a, they, the estimate is that it would use 5% of the diesel that we would need normally for a diesel bus to be able to, that, backing it up for a second, that 5% use of diesel over the course of a year will enable those buses to be out on the road longer, because the power, the energy stored in the batteries will be able to be used to keep the buses out on the road longer. Otherwise, you have a pretty precipitous drop in the amount of miles that you can use a bus in a day. And then eventually, the batteries are gonna get good enough that this sort of accessory diesel heaters to help just generate heat for our passengers won't be needed. But it's a, it's, for my, for my perspective, it's a good trade-off right now. All right, so those are the two big things that we were working on in 2021. A little bit of a preview about what we've got going on with the electric buses. Of course, there's really three priorities, I would say, on the transit side of the house for 2021 for us. And the electric buses is the first one I just mentioned. We're gonna be continually kind of rotating those throughout our routes. We'll get to know and understand them and how far we can drive them, and how long they take to charge. And it's just kind of a different, it's a different ballgame, but we're really excited to start playing. Of course, the next phases of the Iowa City Area Transit Study, Jeff mentioned earlier, the Sunday service pilot. We've been working behind the scenes, laying out potential schedules for the Sunday service pilot. We've had some challenges this fall, the electric bus project, which ended up taking more time and energy towards the latter half of the year than we expected, and then also compounded with some staffing issues that we've been having related to, I would say, the pandemic specifically, but also probably some of the same general challenges in bringing staff onboard that many organizations are facing. So it's slowed things down a bit, but we do plan on launching the Sunday service pilot this summer. We also are planning on launching a series of tweaks to the service, just things that we've evaluated and we've noticed after the launch that, that we, or comments that we heard from the public. And we've really thought through and kind of catalogued all of what we've heard from the public since the launch. And we've, we've come up with some ways that we think we could even just clean things up a bit. Some unexpected, some issues, some things that really didn't, we didn't really hear from the community until after things were in play, like some routes that it seems like we might benefit from just making them a half an hour earlier even. Fortunately, these are not things you can do on the fly, because if you change one thing, it changes absolutely everything in our system, from the bus schedules to the driver's schedules. So we're hoping to package all those together and make those changes early this year as well. We'll be further exploring our late-night and on-demand options, and Jeff alluded to that earlier. Also, evaluating a low-income fare program, you had indicated that that's something you would like us to, to further look into. So we have that on our list as well. Commencing a bus stop revitalization program, that's something that we heard from the community loud and clear through the transit study process. So that will be a multi-department project. We'll work with engineering to, to begin that. And I see that as being a multi-year project. We certainly won't be able to go, you know, address every single transit stop across the community in one year, but I see that as being an ongoing project, where every year, we have another route, and we focus on that route, and we, and we bring the, the transit stops, stops up to today's standards, and really just make more safe and comfortable transit stops for our users. I think it'll go a long way in, a long way in helping our riders who rely on our services today, but also attracting more riders. And I know that's a big initiative for our climate action goals, is making it more attractive to more people. Last but not least, in terms of, the transit is the transit facility, and Jeff also alluded to that earlier. So we are beginning to, to, we're basically beginning to put together the information necessary for an RFP, for an RFQ, for design work. We're continuing on, on the, on the backend. Every year, we're, we're submitting grant, federal grant applications for funding for a transit facility. I think we've got a very strong application. We've heard so much. You know, there's always limited amounts of funds for these projects, but we submitted another grant application in November, and I just got word yesterday that there will be a slew of additional grant applications that are coming as a result of the, the, the infrastructure law that's coming out. So I expect there will be another grant opportunity within a month or two. So either way, we can see the writing on the wall, and we're hoping that the grant funding lands. But we're, we're beginning the work on our end with, with our, with the engineering department to, to get that RFP prepared, so we can commence that project. And then on the parking side of the house, it's also a very big year for parking this year. We've been very focused on transit for the last few years, but we have some, some overdue needs, I would say. First and foremost, we plan to replace our automated parking equipment this year. They're at the end of their useful life, and they take a lot of work from a maintenance perspective to go address the needs of customers who are, you know, having troubles getting out of our parking facilities. It's just increasing every year. And it's, it's past, past the 10 years, which is kind of the expected, the expected lifetime. So that's a big project we're working on. We'll be parking, we'll be replacing the parking meter brains, if you will, the computers inside them this year. You might notice a little bit difference, fewer parking meters out there. For some of the parking meters that you saw with two actual meters on one pole, you'll see them combined into one meter that you'll be able to park in either parking space at. So it'll reduce some of the congestion, if you will, and some of the, just a little bit of the unsightliness in the, in the right-of-way downtown. And we also plan to revitalize and expand our bike parking downtown. We definitely have a need for more bike parking, and some of our bike parking, our bike racks are in poor shape. So we, that is, that is on our, on our list for this year. And then, last but not least, the electric bike share, putting that back out again for RFP. I know those of you who've been on the council for a while have heard us talk about the bike share for some time. We're, think we're gonna need to put it out for RFP again, and the hope is that we can find a partner who can get the bikes on the ground for us, because that has been the challenge with the bike industry, the bike share slash scooter share industry, so rapidly evolving, and then the pandemic happening. And it's, I think it's time to just get another RFP out and see if we can get another player onboard who can get, who can get the bikes on the ground. So that's another one of our initiatives for this year. Last but not least, before I, before I take any questions, I would be happy to arrange a test ride on one of our new electric buses for you all before we launch in, on January 24th. If that is something that you're all interested in, I could certainly do that. See in a couple head nods, all right. We'd be happy to coordinate that. I'll work with Kelly to get something on the schedule for you all. And I also want to let you know, too, if at any time you ever are interested in a tour of the transit facility, just to see, you know, check things out, get a little better understanding of operations, I'm more than happy to, to give you a tour around and show you both the facility and just, you know, give you a high-level overview of kind of what we do and how things work on the backend. So. And without further ado, any, I'd be happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Well, this past year was pretty impressive in terms of the, you know, the accomplishments with the new transit study, the electric buses. As you were mentioning, even just the, the infrastructure requirements on the electric buses. I know I'd mentioned to many people that the buses were coming, and they would ask, well, when are they gonna be available? You know, without appreciating how much work has to go into, to modifying the infrastructure in order to get them out on the road. And then you have, as you said, a number of things to build, you know, to build on that, those accomplishments. I have just become increasingly challenged on, on this question of competing with the automobile, because it, for, within Iowa City, those who can drive, you know, and all the requirements that go into that can, you know, they can afford it, and so on and so forth, competing with, with the automobile is really challenging because of the, the inherent comfort, safety, and security of driving in an automobile. Once you get out of that automobile on our streets, one can feel quite vulnerable without that kind of two tons of steel enclosing you. And you're more sensitive to all the unpleasant trees that you might be passing through that, you know, that, that two tons of steel and glass sort of isolate you from. So I'm appreciative of the fact that I think, you know, that there's so many pieces that go into creating that transit system that will rival the automobile in terms of comfort and safety, and the bus stops, the access to the stops. It's a very complex system that if it's not sort of addressing all of these particular concerns, you know, a person may, who can, may just say, well, it's just a whole lot easier and more comfortable for me to drive. So I'm, I, I hope we can, you know, rise to that challenge. I feel this city, given its size, and the culture that we're trying to cultivate, will, will see that transition, the value of it. So, so we'll see. But as I said, I've just been increasingly, you know, amazed at how advantageous things have been set up for the automobile and that, you know, the, the system, the infrastructure for the alternatives has to match up if it's going to succeed.
I would certainly be interested. I'll touch bases with Kelly on, on having a test ride, because I missed the opportunity before. And from the folks that had the opportunity, it sounds like it was, it's a great experience and just such a different, different feeling than on the regular buses. And for those new council members or any of the council that has not toured that facility off of Riverside Drive, I would encourage you to do so, because it'll make it even more apparent why in the CIP, there's that big chunk of money for the new facility, because it just, there's just a great need for it, for the safety and the comfort of vehicles and the staff members. You can just see that right away. And it's functioning okay, but it's been functioning there for years, and, and there are a lot of issues. So I would encourage you to do that.
We say it's well-loved, well-worn, well-loved, but yes, it's probably outdated in terms of our needs today.
I'm curious if for the ridership, and thank you for your presentation and all that you all do, and happy that we successfully launched the new transit system in August of last year. I am curious to know, since our numbers have not returned to what was in 2019 as far as the ridership, where is 27? And now our projection is hopeful at 19 persons per hour. Is there any, and we know that the overall ridership is down about 40%, somewhere in there. What do you think is the sense? Because seemingly, our world has, or our community is back up and running and functioning maybe 70%, you know, of pre-COVID level. So I'm curious to know what your thoughts are that's contributing to the decrease.
I give a lot of thought to these, so I'm glad you asked that question. I'm afraid I might not have the answer, but I'll tell you what's been ruminating, at least with me. I think transit tends to be a habit that people build. So it was an immediate habit people had to change, or felt like they had to change. And we were in a very weird position where we were discouraging people from using our service. We were kept at operating, and I'm very proud of that fact. And we, we're in a university, especially hospital community, and we need to keep that service going. But we were actively discouraging people, as we were in the community, you know, stay home, hunker down, that kind of thing. So, so I think part of that might be rebuilding that habit for people. Part of it also might be people's employment structures maybe have changed. So I think that work from home, it's hard for me to get a grasp on how many people are still working from home. You know, we've been paying really close attention to when the university's bringing people back. And, you know, you can get a lot of intel from the community, but I don't have that same intel from all of the other businesses, you know, that work downtown. And so I think the work from home is probably affecting some people's commute as well. And then there just may be people who are still, you know, we're all still here, we're wearing masks right now. There may be some people who are just not, not willing to ride public transit again. I hope that's not the case, because I don't, we've, I think we've proven with our, with our measures, it's very a safe and effective way to get around town. But there may be people who are just reticent to, to return to transit quite yet. So it's really challenging that this is the year that we're, we're making these big changes to transit with the hope of building a better transit system that's more reliable for those that need it, that can bring more riders onboard, because it's really hard to flesh out changes, how these impacts to the system that we're making are affecting ridership when we have this other really, really challenging health, public health situation happening. So those are the things that I've been able to kind of ascertain, but I don't know if I, if we know or will ever know all of the factors. I just know that we need to continue, and I think we are, continue on making our system the best system that we can. And we've got a lot of that outlined in our transit study, based on the feedback we heard from the community, the expertise we brought in from our consultant team. And so we've got a really good path forward for us. And I think, again, with the climate initiatives of this council and this community, continuing to focus on the benefits of transit, especially super-clean transit, which electric, these electric buses will be run off 84% renewable energy. There's only one other transit agency I've been able to find in the country that has renewable energy stamped on the side of their buses, and that's Portland. So there might be others, but I've not in my, in my Google searches been able to find them. So it puts us in a very small and select group, which I think we could be really proud of. So I'm hoping, again, that will also be another way that we can, we can draw riders back to transit, or new riders to transit. So I think it's just gonna take a multi-pronged strategy. We need to play the long game, and we need to keep investing in the system, and investing in those things that make it safer, comfortable, more convenient, less expensive. You know, we just need to keep highlighting those things, so.
I think your guesses are sensible as to some of the rationale. The other thing that I might add is, change is always, you know, it takes time for people to even experience a change like this to get on the bus. I know where I live, next door, right in front of me, and my, you know, neighborhood was the bus stop. And so typically, when people might, you know, first engage in a change would be if they're going downtown for some event that they know parking is gonna be just hard to find. And then, so I think we haven't had that, you know, those opportunities yet for people to jump on the bus, because even the downtown block party, I think, was before that. And so maybe it, it'd take some time, but I do believe that the ridership will increase, it's just gonna take a little time. And we're still in a pandemic, and so some of those components are just compounding the decreased ridership. But thanks for all you all do.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Darian, do you have a sense of the uptake of that transit app? Have you been continuing to get feedback, or do you feel like people are using it? Do you know?
I think it's increasing. So we have, we aren't able to suss out who are Iowa City transit riders who use it, or university, or Corville riders, since we're all in the same system. But the university, who has the agreement with the transit app, it's free for us to use here, but they have the actual agreement, so they get the data. So they, they send us some intel a couple times a year, and every time I've seen a report, it's been, we've been seeing a big increase. There was a big increase in usage at the beginning of the school year, and coincident with the, the transit system changes, which we really pushed that heavy, because that was, if there was any time to just, and if you're a smartphone user, an app-friendly user, there is no better time to hop on the transit app. So it's, it's gonna be, it's like our credit card usage in our parking facilities. You'll notice if you, if you dig into the budget, you'll see it's been a steady kind of increase. And we're just gonna keep pushing that messaging out there to help, to help the community. Those who don't have a smartphone, we do have a webpage that's maintained. It's icareiatransit.org. The university runs it, but it's, it's a, it's a desktop version more, well, I shouldn't say desktop version. It is not the transit app, but is, it's something you can access on your desktop, and it has Iowa City's, Corville's, and CamBuses, arrival times by stop. So you could click on a stop, or click on a route, click on a stop, and and you can get the arrival time information. So you can get some of that information if you're not a smartphone user. But yes, we're continuing to push that app. I think it's been I think it's been beneficial.
Awesome. Thank you. And then just a super nitpicky thing. I noticed the schedules are online as PDFs, but only within the Laserfish program, which is very not usable. So I don't know if that can be addressed in the website update or if you need to just drive everyone to this other icareiatransit.org page.
I suspect it will be with the website update. But that is that is on our radar as well as to as part of our communications. And I I might have neglected to to mention this as part of our next phase for ICATS. But one of our big pushes this year is with the website update, but just really digging into all of our communication pieces, either from from the website to the transit app, to, you know, the city's website, to our printed materials, which we got out last summer. I think there's still more materials that are needed. So that's part of what we're going to be working on this year, too, is cleaning up all of those items and just really improve the materials and the broad range of materials that we really need to serve everybody in the community.
I'm really happy to see the the various transit systems being able to sync some of these things, that like the use of the app. I'm really happy to see that Corville and Iowa City have synced their fare systems now and so forth. Sort of pie pie in the sky. I'm consistently struck that we have by the fact that we have three different transit systems in a very small, relatively small population area. And that there could be, and obviously, this is not just a city issue. This is a county issue and a university issue, that there could be enormous savings and efficiencies if there weren't like one transit authority coordinating everything. But yeah, any any steps that we take along that line, as far as I'm concerned, that are positive steps to coordinate and reduce reduce duplication.
Yeah, and that's a lot of what with absent of the political will to create a combined system at this current time, I think that it was one of the main objectives with the transit study is how do we? OK, how do we function in the best and highest and most efficient way and deliver the best services to the greater metro area as we can? And that was really kind of at the forefront of of our transit study goals. To in terms of your question about, you know, a regional system, we haven't quite met the threshold for FTA-designated regional system. I believe that's a 200,000 metro area population threshold. Dart in Des Moines operates under a regional system. It's a it's its own taxing body. It's kind of a different, it's a different, it's a different system than our three-agency system we have right now. But yes, I think the part of that goal with the transit study was how do we take as much of, how do we make the system work as best as we possibly can together, using, you know, the three agencies that we have today? And and I think we've gotten some of those, especially with the fares. And realigning our routes, I think, was also really helpful in making those transfers more seamless for the for the public.
I have one final, I'm sorry, you're just about to leave. But this is actually about the electronic bikes, and I love that it's coming back into play. And I just wondered if the the projected pilot for it still is based around downtown or whether there's been discussions, since there had to be the pause, about the possibility of looking at incorporating parts that are outside of downtown? Because it seems to me that that actually also has a real commonsensical kind of potential to be able to help get people to the core or to downtown and and then back out to where they might live rather than just traveling around within the downtown area. And if if you guys haven't had that kind of conversation yet, or that's not where you're at, that's fine. I just wondered if there had been the potential of like re-envisioning what the pilot might be, given that you've had a you've had a lot on your plate, but given that there's been a pause.
That's a great question, and we haven't quite re-approached that that subject yet. But as we begin to just revisit the RFP that we put out last time, well, you know, we're in we're in a this is the time where we're going to reevaluate what's in there. I don't know if we if we recalled spelling that out or if that was part of what we heard back from the 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 companies that we had worked with, that this would be their recommended approach. But again, we haven't been able to get anything, you know, get the actual bikes here and on the ground. So it's definitely something that we can take a look at in our conversations that we have. And as we're as we're, you know, reevaluating the RFP and preparing that for for launch. But we haven't, we haven't given much thought to it. But it's, like I said, it's on the it's on the schedule for this year, but we'll certainly take a look at it.
I when we've had discussions about the electric bikes before, I gathered there was a lot of community interest in in us having that sort of a service. Do you have an idea of whether that would require an extra full-time personnel for you in maintenance of them? Or I I was thinking there was something kind of in the lines of Megan's question that you could let somebody know where you dropped that bike off, and then they would come pick it up. You wouldn't necessarily have to get it all the way back to downtown. And if that's the case, you would need someone responsible for that. So do you have some idea of what what that might do to increase your costs?
Yeah, it's a it's a great question. The the goal would be to offload all of those responsibilities onto whomever we're partnering with. And I think that's how they're structured nowadays, is that the company that we partner with, how the structure has has been working, at least the latest structure in the last few years that that I had evaluated. And again, things are rapidly changing in this in this in this business model. So I I'm assuming this part might stay the same, but it there could be changes. But that the the company who comes in at no cost to the community in no upfront cost to us, they provide they staff and they provide the service. So they would be the ones responsible for, you know, fetching wayward micro-mobility devices, whether it's a scooter or a bike or whatnot, and bringing them back into and they have vested interest to bring them back into where they're going to get used at. They have the data, they understand, they have a vested interest in getting those vehicles where people need them to. So that would, I envision that being wrapped up in in the provider, that kind of work be. All that said, there will likely be work involved on the city's end. There's just no way to get around the fact that there will be some, you know, we will be playing a role. It will take staff time to to do these things. But we're hoping that the bulk of the 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 fetching, the realigning every night, because that's a part of what these bike-share companies do, they lay them out. So you wake up in the morning, and there's bikes in hot areas where people want to use them at again when you wake up in the morning. That's kind of part of, they call it rebalancing. So they take them from afar and they rebalance them. So the goal is to have the company provide that support.
Thank you.
How how long, could you remind me how long we've been trying to get that bike share in place?
Well, Jeff might be able to give the
Pre-date-starian.
Pre-me.
We've probably been seven, eight years. We've had multiple RFPs, we've had agreements with companies. Part of it has been the the rapidly changing landscape of these. We're seeing a lot of companies come and go. They get bought out by each other. And and also, the university's position on this has 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 been pretty fluid. There's been times in the in the past where the university has taken a position that they weren't going to allow motorized devices like scooters on their walks. And and of course, these companies look at that as well. That's that's where the business is, right? So if we're going to come up to some resistance there, then then they start to back away. I don't think that's the university's current position. So all those things have contributed to to a lot of starts and stops. And frankly, with the transit study, the last two years, I I've told Darian to put this one on the back burner. And it's probably still going to be on the back burner until we can get Sunday service launched. There's just not enough staff capacity to to manage a new launch like this at the same time those other initiatives are being undertaken.
Yeah, I I too have concerns with all the all the factors that go into the bike-share concept. We we, you know, I my sense is is bike-share works, if it works, it it works well in places that have a high tourism component. We have some tourism, but not not, you know, we're not a major city in terms of attracting tourists. And and then the the university has a cam bus system, which I think is the rival of any, you know, mobility service that that one could imagine, really. So I'm I'm not clear how, and especially Jeff, when you mentioned if there are issues with the use of some of these, you know, whatever they may be, scooters or bikes on the university property. That's yet one more challenge. So I am kind of, I I think there is a market there or at least a a desire to have some of, you know, whether it's e-bikes in particular, I think, has enormous upside potential in opening up biking to the larger community because, you know, we are not Holland in terms of our topography. We do have hills, and a hill can be, you know, I mean, we're talking about a bike lanes on on Benton. And I think, well, it would be a heck of a lot easier to consider riding on Benton on an e-bike than trying to trudge up that hill. And there are many others like it. So I I do hope we kind of step back and think about what how how we can offer increased mobility across Iowa City, maybe not so much of and and open up the envelope beyond the downtown.
Yeah, and one thing, just real quickly, I think another thing we're seeing is the these devices are hitting the the individual consumer market pretty hard right now. So being downtown at City Hall, you know, it's not uncommon for me to be able to to see several people a day on a motorized scooter. Motorized skateboards are becoming a lot more accessible in terms of price points. You'll see folks with the kind of the handheld remotes just zooming down the down the street. So the devices are here, they're available, they're becoming more affordable. And that's that 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 is another barrier that a private company has to overcome to enter into a market and make money if they're competing with individual units that are relatively affordable. It may cause some hesitation for them to come into the market.
Thank you. Awesome. All right, we are going to the airport. So Michael, Mike Thorpe, come on up. Welcome.
Thank you. First, congratulations to our returning mayor and our new council members. Happy to see some new faces all around. If you haven't noticed, I lost the long hair I used to have. Somewhere around 24 inches was donated to Loxa Love. So it was, yeah, a little bit of a change. I am Michael Tharp, I am the airport manager. Under the Airport Commission, I manage the day-to-day of the Iowa City Municipal Airport. As as the hierarchy goes, you all appoint the members of the Airport Commission, and they set kind of the, just like you do, the broader with the city, the broader overall goals of of the airport. And it's my job to carry those out. As far as the operations of the airport, we have roughly 36,000 operations a year. An operation is a takeoff or a landing. We have three entities that operate out of the airport. We have Jet Air, our fixed base operator. They are the the aircraft concessionaire. So if you're flying in, there'll be the refueller, there'll be the maintenance provider. They also do charter services, aircraft training, maintenance. They we also hire them to do our groundskeeping and maintenance around the airport. So they're pretty vital to us. We also have the Operator Performance Lab, which is the university research lab that operates out of the College of Engineering. They do all kinds of aviation research, a lot of it focused around human factors type stuff, but also signage and iconography and and communications. And they work with companies like Rockwell Collins, Raytheon, I'm not sure what their name is at the moment, different DOD agencies, Department of Defense, and they've worked with NASA. They've worked with other state DOT agencies. So a lot of a lot of activity there. And then we have Care Ambulance, which is an ambulatory transport service. They actually partner with Jet Air to provide the medical staffing for any medical charter flights that are transferring patients out of the out of the area from the university primarily. With that, 2022 is going to be an exciting year at the airport. We have a lot of projects coming up that you're going to hear about more in the CIP section in a couple of weeks. But we we've got some work on the runway. We're doing some work to allow for new hangars to be developed, more parking at the airport. It's a a lot of things that are going to impact the revenue. And one of the things that reasons we're doing that is for the last four years, we have been self-sufficient operationally. So we have not depended on tax dollars for supporting the airport operations. We can strive to continue that. That's that's one of our goals is we are in your enterprise fund. So that's one of the goals of the enterprise fund is to have those departments be self-sufficient. We are operating roughly a $385,000 operations budget. The vast majority of that goes to maintenance and maintaining the airport. I believe that's roughly about 75%. And that kind of dovetails with our revenue. About 75% of our income comes from our hangar rents and ground leases. The rest of our income comes primarily from our farming operations. We have a farm manager, and we get about 10% of our income from that. And then fuel sales covers the remaining amount of revenue. And this year, everybody has had challenges with COVID. We've actually seen a massive increase in our operations. As as COVID and airline schedules have been disrupted, a lot of folks that are able to have turned to general aviation, whether it's flying their own aircraft or charter operations. But we have seen a dramatic increase in our numbers. And that has been a a just a blessing because it increases our fuel sales, it increases our revenue that we get from that. And we're excited to, you know, with those projects we've got going on this year to just to see where that continues to go. And with that, I think that's generally all I have. Happy to invite everybody to the airport for a tour of the operations. The university research lab is always a sight to see. But if you are interested, please let me know, and we'll certainly arrange for something. I'm happy to take any questions. I think I failed to mention the airport starts on 2/72 on your budget book. I'm sorry, that's my fault.
Of course, the airport is one of those things that for me, when I first came on city council, I wasn't aware was in a part of the city operations. And I did have a question just about, and and maybe this will come out in the next Wednesday when we have our discussion. Just what is the future of, what are your thoughts are the future of this of this location and and its use?
I as as far as the location, it's it's a great location because it the airport itself is roughly about five to 10 minutes from anything in Iowa City. Because of the nature of the university hospital system, being that close to the hospital, whether it's for organ transplants, just patient transfers, really is a benefit to the community. I know in the late 90s, I believe, early 90s, late 90s, I believe there was some conversation within the city and the airport about relocating the airport at that time. And I think you would have lost, if that had happened, I think you would have lost some of that that aspect of of just being close to the major centers of of city activity. Not that, I mean, it it would have allowed for longer runways. That's one of our restricting factors right now with the location. Some of these projects that we'll talk about with the CIP are meant to maximize, you know, what we can do in the space we have, which for our operation will increase the activity and increase some of the revenue that we can draw from fuel sales. But we're not going to see, you know, airline service, that type of activity in Iowa City.
And peak times, are you finding that there's more need for activity than you can handle? Or you have to do a lot more coordination than if you had more than two runways?
As far as our facility, we can handle the activity we have. And I think any increase we see over the next five, 10 years or so, we'll be we'll be adequate adequately able to handle that. Our parking for aircraft, especially if we see some of the larger stuff that that comes in, that can be tight on occasion, football game days, other high-profile activities in activities in the area. We do do have to manage our space a little carefully, just how we're we're parking everybody. And we have plans in the next few years to increase that with the FAA. So that is something in our program. As far as activity, if you were to talk to the charter company, there are times they're farming out flights because they don't have enough staff or enough airplanes to be able to handle all of the charter requests that they get. And I think you're going to see that, you know, as the industry comes back, if you recall pre-COVID, there was a lot of talk in the aviation industry of pilot shortages, maintenance mechanic shortages, just general personnel shortages all around. One of the things COVID did with everything getting shut down and everybody kind of downsizing their operations because of that, we know that the industry had adequate staff. And as everything's springing back, you're going to see those shortages come back along with it.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Yes, enjoy the rest of your afternoon.
Thank you, you too.
All right, we're going to move on to Public Works with Ron Canoke. Welcome, welcome.
All right, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Ron Canoke, and I have the privilege to serve as your Public Works Director. This is my eighth operating budget presentation. So I've been in the position for seven years, going on eight. The Public Works Department is funded through eight different funding sources, the general funds, special revenue funds, enterprise funds, and internal service funds. This means that as we go through this presentation, we'll be all over the budget book, those multiple different sections that we'll be dealing with. The Public Works Department introduction begins on page 218 in the budget book. Public Works Department is six divisions, seven if you include the administration side of things. This budget includes 159.76 full-time equivalent positions. We currently have 159 employees in the Public Works Department, 150 full-time, three part-time, and then six seasonal seasonal or hourly employees. The we'll go into the Public Works Administration Engineering Division budget. So that begins on page 378. This operation is funded through the general fund, stormwater fund, and some of the capital funds. The this group oversees all the city and private development projects that are going on within the community. And currently, that's right around 70 active projects that we have going on in our in our community. We also oversee all the utility work that goes on in the right of way. This currently has some challenges for us. We have two fiber optic companies that are in our community going for a citywide build-out. And then we also have a major upgrade in the gas system in the downtown area by Mid-American Energy. So there's some challenges there that we're dealing with. So to help on the permitting side of that, we've actually added a civil engineer position within our department or within this division to kind of help that that process those permits. This division also oversees the sidewalk repair program. So the pink paint that shows up in your neighborhood, that that comes out of this group, and that's a we recycle through the city every 10 years. And then this group also oversees the stormwater utility, and then the best management practices programs. So there are some funding sources that are out there for community members to be able to do some matches on various upgrades on their private property to help deal with some of the increased stormwater runoff that is that is occurring. One of the major things that this division had just finished is a is a scanning project. So one of the things we'll talk about is asset management program that we're that we're working on. As a kind of the uptick to that program, we've been scanning all of our project plans that we have in-house. That's about 13,000 sheets of documents that we've just currently scanned. Are there any questions on the Public Works Admin or Engineering Division budgets? All right, we'll move on to Streets and Traffic Engineering. This begins on page 386. This operation is funded through the Road Use Tax Fund, which is a special revenue fund. We maintain 500 lane miles of roads and 100 signalized intersections. The the maintenance of that includes, you know, patching and repairing of our streets, the snow plowing, and then the sweeping. This program, this division also deals with our leaf program as we go through the community and pick those up in the fall. The the staffing in this division is really about disaster response to a certain extent, or emergency response. So we have 13 snow routes that we deal with every year. We have two people on each snow route. So that's 26 employees. But then, as you get into a derecho or a flood response, this is the division that really kind of keys up and heads into those types of responses. Within this current budget, the budget that's proposed, we are looking at adding a new paint truck. We've been very successful in adding bike lanes in our community over the past number of years. And one of the struggles that we have with our current paint truck is we can only paint on the driver's side of the truck. So as you go down the center of the road, you can paint a center line, but then when you want to paint an edge line, they actually have to run it backwards. So they actually do those at late at night. And so we're running all those edge lines going opposite direction of the of the traffic. So with the new paint truck, we'll be able to be able to paint on either side of the truck and move forward and do a better job of utilizing that that equipment. And then also, the intent is to to be able to put a different product down that is a little bit longer life than than what we currently have. On a sustainability measure, we just had a contractor come in and we crushed 6,300 tons of concrete. That was concrete that was removed during our patching projects. That is going to be reutilized as modified subbase in our page in our pavement repairs, and then also some four-inch plus material that we use out at the landfill to help with stabilization of their roads for their operation. We also crushed 1,400 tons of asphalt millings. These were millings that were reclaimed from our overlay program. Every year, we as we as we mill those off, we collect those, and then those will be utilized for alley work and some of the shoulders that we have around town. Have any questions on the Streets and Traffic Engineering?
That reuse of the concrete and the asphalt run, is that something that many most cities do? Is that unusual?
I'd say the larger the larger communities are doing that, like Cedar Rapids, Davenport, Des Moines. This is something that we had done in the past. And just because of the product that we had gotten, we kind of went away from it. It we the contractor at that time didn't do a very good job of crushing for us. And so we have some other availability of material here in town. So so we were kind of just going and buying it. But we found that as we collected, and we do a little better job, we can get a little better product.
Thank you.
Yep. This budget does include another traffic engineering staff member. So the traffic engineering group, obviously, they deal with the lighting around town. They also deal with the banner switch outs and some of those other opportunities. And so but we will we will be adding a staff member into that work group, which would be nice.
I am thrilled to hear about the durable paint. I know that sounds like a very nerdy thing to say. But, you know, my observations are that our current material is not making it through to the time when it receives another coat of paint. And so I'm I think especially in areas where we may have conflicts among, you know, pedestrians and drivers and so forth, having a more durable material on the ground will really be helpful.
Yeah, and the product, so it'll still be a latex paint is what we'll still be dealing with, but it'll be a high build material. So it actually puts down a little bit thicker amount of the material. So it should stick longer.
Okay, great.
On that note, are do you hear from citizens often complaining that there's like an intersection typically where the paint isn't clear and it's really confusing and potentially dangerous?
I we don't hear from the 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 community very often in regards to the painting issues. We as staff tend to run across some of those. It's like, okay, we need to, we need to do something a little bit different there. But we don't get a whole lot of input from the community.
Okay, great.
All right, we'll move on to the wastewater division. This budget begins on page 455. The wastewater division is funded through the wastewater fund, which is an enterprise fund. We have about 320 miles of sanitary sewers and 17 list stations in our system. We have 110 miles of storm sewer and five stormwater pump stations in our system. Our wastewater group, they're treating about 8.6 million gallons of wastewater per day. And in our wastewater division, we're currently working with the University of Iowa to develop a I develop the Iowa Wastewater Waste to Energy Research Program Innovation Center and Tech Park. And that'll be actually located at our plant down by the soccer fields. This is working with the College of Engineering. Basically, they are looking at research and the processes that go on for smaller communities in Iowa. Obviously, we we are a larger community. So some of the stuff that we're looking at won't necessarily be utilized by by our processes. But it will benefit the benefit rural Iowa in regards to the work that's going on. We are currently in the process of building a greenhouse down at the plant. That greenhouse will be the location for a process that Grosswind Technologies out of Slater, Iowa, is developing. It's an algal wastewater treatment process, basically to remove phosphorus out of that. So we will we'll be working with the university on that as we as we move forward into the future. One of the the things that we are working under right now is an EPA consent order in regard to some zinc issues that we've had in the past. We've been able to address those issues, and we'll be looking at lifting that consent order within this calendar year. Any questions on wastewater? All right, the next division is the Water Division. Their their budget begins on 468 in the budget book, funded through the Water Fund. It's also an enterprise fund. We have 280 miles of water mains in our community. We produce about 2 billion gallons of water a year. That's enough water if you stacked it all on top of Kinnick Stadium to be about a mile high. We're able to be fairly efficient in our process. We can produce a gallon of water for about one penny. So there's not many things you go out and buy for a penny these days. But but that's that's what we're producing our water for. Some challenges that we'll have coming up in the next few years, and we're still kind of waiting to see what these rules are going to be looking like, there'd be a lead and copper rule that'll come out from EPA. And so what that'll probably look like is identifying where in our system we have lead service lines in our community, and looking at whether they need to be replaced or as if you would have a if you're if you have a lead service line and you have a repair need, basically not being able to just patch that, actually doing a full replacement on that lead service line.
I have a question. So when you all are doing any type of repair, I'm assuming that you already are replacing it without with with products that will be potentially acceptable.
Correct, yes. So so all of all the work that we're doing, we'll do up to the stopbox. Our current process is we replace to the stopbox, and that was all with with new material and material that's lead-free. We will work with property owners and the homeowners and basically say, we'll continue to, you know, replace this up to your up to your home. But that is is on the property owner to pay for that. And so we've been able to do payment plans, or sometimes they'll just do it on their own outside of the project. But as we as we move forward, kind of the the option of being able to do it may not be there. It's going to have to be a requirement as we move forward.
If I could jump onto that, Ron, please correct me if I'm wrong. For the the part of the system that the city owns, so we we have the main pipes that go down the road. And then if you have a single-family home or apartment or building, you have a service line that comes out and connects into the road. That service line is private. And that's the the stopbox is kind of that delineating piece of equipment there. So where we know that there's likely to be lead is on that private side. We know that when certain the age by the age of the house, that lead was a commonly used material for that. We know on the inside of homes, there's probably lead. But Ron, do we do we have any lead pipes remaining in our publicly owned system that we know about?
Not in our system. Yeah. And and just a correction. So the in addition to that, so actually, from the from the main that's out in the street, from that from the main where the corporation is, so where you actually drill a hole and tap in to the home is actually privately owned. The the stopbox, when we do our projects, the stopbox is the easiest place for us to be able to kind of make that connection back into the system. And that's why we normally replace kind of what's within the right of way when we do our projects, and leave that have been leaving that up to the property owners to replace to their home. And we do have a map. So the one of the struggles that's with this is, you know, we can estimate, you know, we have some knowns of, you know, where lead services are. We have some estimation based on, you know, when your home was built, or if any work has been done to your home, you know, in the past 30 years. So there's there's still kind of trying to work through and frame up exactly what that that process and what that what that program will look like. One of the things that did come out, and the next rule that that we'll be talking about is the PFOS rule. So PFOS is basically, it's what they call the term the forever chemical. So it's the the Teflon that's on your cooking pans and various other things. And so the this has been a pretty hyped topic within the federal government. The Iowa DNR just has gone through and has done some testing within the larger water plants in the state of Iowa, mainly looking at water plants that have river water as as a source water. They did come in and do testing in our system. And that was in November. And it's come back that we have no PFOS, you know, in our finished water. We have found that in our sand pit, which is one of our source water locator, could be one of our source waters, that there is some residuals of a byproduct, kind of an afterlife product in that in that pond. So as we move forward, we'll be doing some additional testing to make sure that it doesn't show up in our system. But then we'll also be looking at kind of what the future of our sand pit source will be, if we'll ever use it or not. But so that'll be something we'll be working through. And that kind of ties into just the overall resiliency of our source water system. So we have some projects we'll talk about that are actually ongoing now, and we'll talk about on Wednesday in regards to our lateral well system that we have, and that's some of our Solerian wells. So. Any questions on the water system?
Just a quick little mention of in my six years on the council, I think there have been numerous of the water main breaks. And I was just amazed at and in some of your information we got today, at the age of some of these, the lines that we've got in town dating even back to the late 1919 and 1950s. So we've seen a lot of items come before us for replacing this. Have you noticed a change then, since you've done the change in the piping, say, the PVC, no breaking in the newer systems you're using?
So, you know, we are, we actually, we have a main in our system that's 1880 vintage. So we have we have original water main out in our system. We had a main break in the downtown along Clinton Street, and that was on a main that was from 1886. So it and those are those are cast iron pipe, very, very good material, obviously. It's it's served us well. But but it, yeah, it is time to for some of those things to be cycled out of our program. And unfortunately, there was some timeframe in the 70s when we didn't have, we were with duct iron pipe, that isn't very good pipe. And so one of the projects that we're dealing with this year is the water main replacement along Highway One in the in the Walmart area. Like, we just we just bid that project and awarded that one. That's that's pipe that's, you know, 40 years old, you know, and it is just riddled with with holes. And so, you know, PVC, there are some, you know, some more durable products that are out there as we're moving forward. Large main, large iron main really ends up being duct iron pipe. That's just where we go with that. 12 inches and below, we can use the PVC pipe. It the thing about water main breaks is sometimes you just never really know what the cause is. You know, sometimes it's material failure, but sometimes it's just, you know, the as the as the as the winter sets in, and you start getting some freeze thaw, and you start getting some frost setting in, it could be that. Sometimes it's just a differential in the ground temperatures to what the water temperature is actually being produced and put out into the system.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the Resource Management Division. So this this is actually two different work groups. It's the refuse division and the refuse group and the landfill group. The refuse budget begins on page 483. This is funded through the refuse collection fund and is is an enterprise fund. Weekly, we pick up 16,500 customers. With that, on an annual basis, that's about 10,000 tons of waste, 2,500 tons of recycling, and about 3, 3,800 tons of organics that we're picking up on an annual basis. Organics, obviously, been a big push for us. We've gone to the city provided carts. We, last year, We, last year, we added some equipment, so we'll be going to automated pickup on the organic side. Right now, we're working those trucks in, but those historically have kind of been our rear-load trucks, who've been using those for. And this budget also has an additional staff person included in it for this next budget season. So, this has been a work group. With COVID, they've been challenged in regards to the amount of waste that people are putting out at the curbsides, so they've been a very, very busy group, and the additional staff person will be greatly appreciated in that work group. The landfill budget begins on page 490. The landfill is, obviously, is funded through the landfill fund and is also an enterprise fund. Our landfill services Johnson County, Kelowna, and Riverside. We're, you know, the last year, we brought in about 152,000 tons of waste. That was up about 24,000 ton, 24,000 ton from where we were at in FY '20. So, obviously, COVID had a really big impact. Folks being at home were able to do a lot more cleaning, which ended up at our landfill. We're happy to report that in FY '22, we're in the second quarter, just finished the second quarter there, and we're actually down 16% from where we were in FY '21. So, we are starting to see a trend of the amount of waste that we're receiving, the landfill's starting to go down. So, that's a great thing in a lot of ways. The landfill division also oversees the three recycling drop-off sites that we have. We have one at the landfill, one at the old Public Works site. So, that actually was the one relocated from the former North Dodge Hy-Vee. And then, we have one at Eastside Recycle Center. One of the focuses that we'll have through some grant programs is some improved glass recycling opportunities. So, you'll see the, those containers will actually be painted purple, and we're still looking to find some locations for those around the community, but that's something that we'll be looking at here in this calendar year. Obviously, the struggle with the landfill side of things, and actually in this division, is, you know, you're running a landfill, and obviously, you make money by bringing garbage into the landfill, but you also want to recycle, and you want to reduce the amount of materials coming in. So, it's kind of that, you know, just that balance as we work forward there. At the landfill, we are currently going through a master planning process, so we're looking at utilizing space in the future. We have a building, equipment building that we're going to build, and we just want to make sure we put it in the right spot out there. So, that process will be ongoing here at the beginning of this calendar year. Any questions on resource management? All right. Equipment division. I don't have the page number on that one. Silly me. So, the budget for the equipment division is 654. So, the equipment division is an internal fund. We maintain basically all the city fleet, including police and fire, except for the buses, the transit buses in the equipment division. We have around 500 units within the city fleet. This group oversees all the vehicle replacement. Obviously, they're working with departments and divisions and trying to replace with the electric vehicles wherever we can, and we've been pretty successful at doing that as we move forward. We also oversee the city radio system in the equipment division. We're currently in the process of replacing our system, and we're looking at the opportunities that are out there, whether we continue with our standalone system, or if we look at going with the Johnson County Joint Emergency Communication System in that one. We also oversee the fuel facility out of the equipment division. We actually provide fuel for Johnson County and for the Iowa City Community School District on their busing system out of our facility down at the Public Works site. We'll be starting the master planning process for, at the Public Works site, for the transit facility and the equipment maintenance facility. These two facilities, obviously, were included in the original master plan that we did in 2015 for the site. The thing that we have done since 2015 is we've actually purchased the corner. So, the Public Works facility is located at the corner of McAllister Boulevard and Gilbert Street, kind of down by Napoleon Park. The original master plan that we had ended up, come and go, actually still owned a corner there, and so, we've actually purchased that corner since then. So, we'll be doing some remaster planning of that site. Any questions on equipment? All right. So, go ahead, Jeff.
Go ahead.
So, I just kind of sum things up. So, our, the biggest challenge that we have in Public Works is staffing, issues, and retirement. So, you know, in the past year, we've lost 400 years of service and knowledge within our department. As I look out in the next five years, 20% of my staff will be able to, be eligible to retire. So, it's going to be some trying times for us in regards to, you know, what you see out there in the community. We've added four or five new plow drivers just in this winter. So, unfortunately, I guess fortunately, it waited till last week to snow, but unfortunately, it would have been nice to have a few small snowstorms in November and December to be able to get people kind of acquainted to their routes out there. But, you know, what we're trying to do to try to help ease some of that issues as we move forward, we are working on an asset management system within our, within Iowa City. We are finalizing the, kind of the contract on that right now with Cartograph Systems, and with that, will help us download some of that institutional knowledge that we have in folks before they leave, before they leave our community. We'll be looking at the American Public Works accreditation process, and basically what that is, is documenting the practices that we do out there today, and moving forward with, you know, potential efficiencies that are there. You know, how are we dealing with the retirement side of things? We're working on building the bench as deep as we can. Obviously, we have our seasonal positions that occur every year, both in streets, water, wastewater, landfill, refuse. We do engineering interns every year. We have hourly operators at the water plant, so we're kind of tapping into the University of Iowa and their students and running a program there. And then, in our wastewater group, we have an intern program where we've been working kind of mainly with the community college programs to bring some folks into our system there. On a statewide level, we're developing a Public Works Service Bureau, and that's something that's unheard of. So, the state of Iowa is trying to be a leader in regards to that, so as we move that forward. And so, we're doing everything that we can right now to try to build the bench and making sure that we have public first professionals able to serve the community as we move forward. As always, Public Works staff and the facilities are always available for visits. If you stop down, we'll get you a tour. If you want to do a ride-along, more than happy to do that. We are in the process of planning for an open house. Hopefully, we'll be able to host down at our new Public Works facility Saturday, May 21st, working with kind of a citywide services open house. Give us an opportunity to show off what we do for Iowa City, not only at the Public Works side of things, but also public safety and pretty much all the services that we provide, so.
Can you repeat how many people you're, like, I can't remember what time, sorry, post-lunch. Can you repeat how many people in the next few years you're anticipating are going to be retiring?
So, 20% of the staff in Public Works will be eligible to retire.
Thank you.
Any other?
Ron, I was just hoping you could take a minute or two and just talk about the impact of the streets facility under both streets and water operations.
Yeah, you know, so, it's actually, it spans well beyond just kind of the streets and water side of things. So, you know, it's given us the opportunity, during COVID especially, it's given us the opportunity to still be able to have full staff meetings with our streets division in the morning and send them out, and be able to space out and be able to, you know, socially distance in regards to those meetings versus where the space that we had previously. We are able to house all of our trucks at onsite. Previously, the, all of, during the winter, we were spread out kind of all over the place and various locations. So, majority of our plows were located at the Johnson County Fairgrounds. The building was about as tight as you could get. I mean, I don't know how the guys were parking their trucks and not causing damage to everything that was there. There was, it was about as packed in as you could get, and so, we've been able to spread out and be in that scenario. The water division, they, you know, they're able to do everything that they need to do in a heated facility, where in the past, they would have been out kind of in the backyard where we're at, where now we're refuse is at, down on South Gilbert Court. And so, along that line, it also gave us the ability to take our refuse group and put, house them in one location. So, they actually got the hand-me-downs in regards to the old water distribution facility, but it really suits their needs well. We've also been able to co-locate public safety on our site, so the fire training center is also on that site. So, the training tower, and then some of their, and what was kind of a mishmash of some of the refuse and recycling trucks, they've been able to utilize that building to use as their education center.
Any other questions for Ron? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. We have two more budgets to do. It's going to be the city manager and then finance. I think what we'll do is take a five-minute now, if people are amenable to that, and then we'll come back and kind of start with our city manager budget. So, we'll just come back at 1:55. All right. It is 1:55, and we are going to continue with our budget process, and we're going to invite our city manager, Jeff Fruin, to give an overall budget for the city manager office program.
Okay. I'm actually going to start with the city council budget. We don't have an intro page, but it's 336 on your budget document. As you'd imagine, pretty straightforward. Just a reminder that your salaries do have an inflationary component index tied to it, so that's where you see salary adjustments there. We use a consumer price index, and that's by ordinance. And then, a reminder that some of the dues to organizations like the U.S. Conference of Mayors and the Iowa League of Cities will come out of this budget, and there are opportunities for professional development for you as council members. So, if you want to get involved either on a state or national level with the National League of Cities, Iowa League of Cities, you want to attend a conference, there's different work groups, particularly within the National League of Cities. Talk to me, and I can help you explore those options, and again, conferences or webinars or whatever might be offered. Any questions on the council budget?
I will mention that the National League of Cities does have a conference this January that I will be attending is the plan, and I believe it will start Friday, the 21st of January.
Yeah, I think that's their legislative one that they do every year, so there's a couple of difference. I think, if I'm not mistaken, this one is really geared at how to interact with your federal legislatures and federal lobbying and that sort of thing. But, there's, you know, sustainability work groups, college-town work groups, whatever your interest may be, and I, again, can explore that with you. Okay, the city manager department, we have the intro section on page 56, and you can see the org chart there. We do have 21 and a quarter full-time equivalent positions that are spread out through communications, climate action, human rights, human resources, economic development, and then, of course, the three of us that you see at all your meetings. Pretty straightforward, personnel-driven budget, but we do have some large city-sponsored events that are budgeted out of here. So, our cycle cross sponsorship, our summer of the arts sponsorship, the 4th of July fireworks, Juneteenth, and Any Given Child, which is a partnership with the School District Foundation, all come out of our budget and make up a significant portion of that budget. Otherwise, again, it's largely the personnel cost for the three of us here with you today. With each of the operating divisions, I'm going to ask Rachel and Redmond to walk you through those, so we'll just throw it over to the other side of the room with Rachel, and she'll walk you through a few of them.
Sure. I'm going to go ahead and start with the communications office. That introduction is on page 61, starts on page 61, and then, the budget numbers information starts on page 339. The communications office supports 8.89 FTE currently. That's communications itself, media, and cable TV operations. As you'll recall from before, we're recommending in the FY '23 budget, a .37 FTE upgrade to an existing position, our half-time creative assistant, who does a lot of our ADA compliance with digital documents as well as graphic design work. We're recommending upgrading that position to full-time, bring that to a full-one FTE. Overall, though, that budget has had a slight decrease in expenditures. They've been able to gain some software efficiencies through the website redesign package that we've selected, and just some other digital storage efficiencies. The fiscal year '23 budget does include some funding to replace the cameras and projector in the city council chambers back over at City Hall, so when we get back there, we'll have some new tech equipment to work with. But otherwise, big kind of focuses for the communications office in the coming years include completion of that website redesign. That is a city council strategic objective, continuing to work on required closed captioning. And then, of course, we can't thank the cable TV office enough throughout the past year, and certainly going forward, they have really stepped up to the plate when it comes to managing all of the changes in how city council meets, how boards and commissions meet, and how we make those meetings more accessible to the public. And then, I'm going to skip actually to climate action. So, the climate action and outreach office starts on, and this is just the general-funded portion, so as you'll recall, the personnel and office staffing is funded out of the general fund. So, the introduction for that starts on page 79, and then, the budget information is on page 343. So, as I mentioned, this is the general fund support just for those three full-time positions, and then, this also includes, you know, just general office needs, and then, the budget for the Green Iowa AmeriCorps team. The staffing's not dependent on that emergency levy in case, again, there's a need for that emergency levy to be used for something else, so we don't want staff tied to that. As I mentioned earlier, we have had some vacancies in that office just due to retirement and some other turnover, but we have two positions filled currently, the engagement specialist and the climate action analyst. We are underway in the hiring process for the climate action coordinator, so we're hoping that by spring, we'll have a fully-staffed climate action office, I think, for the first time since that was created. And then, I'll move on to the climate emergency levy budget to talk, again, just highlight some of, same of what I've talked about earlier, but that begins on page 402, the emergency levy budgetary information. And as we mentioned, the emergency levy, we're recommending a decrease of four cents in the fiscal year '23 budget. That makes up that full four-cent decrease in the overall property tax rate. And again, that reduction is really just to reflect what we've determined is sufficient to meet the needs of implementing that office's activities and wells, to spend down some of that fund balance that has accumulated during our periods of staffing vacancies. But otherwise, as I mentioned before, I don't need to rehash it too much. This levy does support the implementation of the city's climate action plans and the city council's goal to achieve net zero by 2050. So, programming, trainings, educational efforts, incentives, all of that is paid directly with the emergency levy dollars. Unless there's any questions, I'll hand it back to Redmond. He'll finish up the city manager divisions.
I did have a question. On the climate action section, there was a, in the metrics there, sorry, I have to get back to it, on page 82, I just was wondering about the increase in the CO2 per capita. I mean, the downturn during the pandemic, I think, makes sense, but just wondering about the projected for 2021 and then into 20, calendar year 2022. Do we have a sense of what that's attributed to, or? Do we have a sense of what that's attributed to or? Kind of a third of the way down on page 82 there.
Yeah, I would anticipate that's just kind of looking at the downturn that we kind of expected from the pandemic. But we can look into it closer and get a better answer for you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I believe that is just probably changing the denominator, that the population estimates we have increased. My guess is that our carbon numbers are maybe not projected out in the future. But we'll follow up with you on that.
Okay. Thank you, Rachel. So I will have the human resource division, the economic development division, and the office of equity and human rights. So I think they're like the small but mighty departments. I had a little experience of being a human resource director in my past life and I can tell you the goal was to make sure I wasn't in front of councils. Because if that was the case, it was likely a crisis. So human resources is really important for an organization. For us, they manage about keeping a population of 1,000 employees, keeping them and trying to managing morale, making sure that the employee work base is positive and strong and productive. Obviously, if you're disconnected, disenfranchised, as an employee base, you can't be innovative. You can't be productive. So HR is really on the front line on that. Their budget starts on page 65, the introduction. And their information begins on 341. Some of the highlights in their budget is as well, there's an increase in the budget. Mostly that's going to be for compensation study. And there's some really key recruitments that the department will be helping with. You heard a little bit about the challenges with the police department and recruiting there. But we also have some big leadership positions as our finance director position as well as our police, a fire chief position. So they'll be managing those. Is there any questions with HR before we move on?
You mentioned the compensation study. Is that, I'm sorry, across? I mean, is that for a particular department? Is that across?
That's going to be across the organization. Right now it's estimated at about $100,000. It'll probably go through an RFP process. And inadvertently, you'll also be looking at classifications and making sure that those are in line. So just making sure that we're marketable. As you know, there's probably, you know, probably also have seen the trend of how hard it is to get workers. So you know you have to be marketable, be an organization that doesn't have a lot of issues, that are geared to attract the best out there. So this is going to allow us to be on, stay on that cutting edge, if you will.
Has such a study been done before? And if so, how many years ago?
Yeah, that I don't know.
I can handle that. It's before my time and that's why we want to do it. It's probably been, I think, '07, '08 was the last time that we did a comprehensive look at our wages and corresponding position duties. What we have done in the interim is usually as a position becomes vacant, we look at that just internally and decide if we need to make changes. Sometimes we come to you and ask for those changes to reclassify. Occasionally, employees themselves or supervisors will push internally for reclassification. But I think it's pretty healthy every 15, 20 years to take that comprehensive look. And it is about attraction, but it's also about retaining your employees too. And Redmond's correct, in this environment where employees have more options than they may have thought they've had in the future, I think it's just really wise for us to take a good, hard look at that.
And just one final question. Based on whatever comes out of that study, I'm assuming that possible recommendations are about adjustments to make sure that there's market competitive range for retention? Is that something that in spite of the budget and the anticipation of some tight years that HR and the department will be looking to make sure that we're able to retain sort of the historical knowledge and people and keep them at a market rate?
Yeah. Yeah. Go ahead. Well, I was just going to say, I've been through this process before. Typically, it depends on how far you might be in or out of where market is. But it typically comes with an incremental approach to bring things onboard. Very rarely are you able to do it all in one step. So I would expect that they would, it probably have some type of staffing rebuild plan that comes along with that.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, I also have human rights, which if you don't know about me, I had the opportunity to serve on the Human Rights Commission for the state of Iowa for about eight years. So it's also kind of a dear to my heart. It's another one of those departments that obviously has been on the cutting edge here. But a lot of times in a lot of communities, you don't hear about them until things go wrong. So also really critical to be proactive. The department does a number of things reactively as well as proactively. From a reactive standpoint, it does enforce the city's anti-discrimination laws, handles investigations, receives complaints, makes even determinations on probable cause and complaints. But from a proactive end, I think you're very familiar with the work that's been done with the truth and reconciliation, Black Lives Matter, other Black Lives Matter activities, which by the way, the budget represents about a million dollars of investment in those types of activities as well. And by the way, also, the introduction to that department is on page 69. And the budget information starts on page 342. I think one thing that I would like to highlight as well, it was kind of mentioned, but it's actually rather significant, which is I'm not sure if you're familiar with the municipal equity index. That is actually a third-party agency that looks at the city's equity, diversity, inclusion activities through multiple areas of the city and looks at compliance with non-discrimination laws. It grades the city as an employer. It also grades municipal services, grades law enforcement, and also leadership in areas of LGBTQ and equity. For Iowa City, we're at 100% a perfect rating. That's not something that is given out easily. Actually, there's only three cities in the state of Iowa that has it. Iowa City, West Des Moines, and Dubuque. So that's, we're leading Davenport, Waterloo, Cedar Rapids, Sioux City, Des Moines, and Ames. So that's something that is really important. It kind of goes underrated. But I can also say from a couple of years back, excuse me, every time I start talking, I start getting my own air. Okay. But a couple of years back, working with the state commission, I can tell you firsthand that there was a move to reach out to businesses and investors who are interested in moving in communities that have this type of track record. So it actually ties into even an economic development opportunity for a community as well. So I think that ranking, you know, we get it. I think being such a trendsetter in social justice, we sometimes forget to look in the rearview mirror and realize some of the things that we've accomplished because we're constantly pushing forward. But you know, sometimes we don't realize how many great things have already been achieved. So this is one of those examples. Okay, moving on, is there any questions before I move on to economic development? Okay, so economic development. That's going to, introduction's going to start on page 75 on that one. And the budget information starts on page 343. This one you're probably more familiar with than maybe the other two because it comes before you quite a bit when opportunities and TIF and working with organizations like ICAD come before you. The economic development department is staffed by one member. She's key as a liaison to the business community, really focused on creating, developing, and implementing programs that are aimed to benefit our local economy as well as our tax base and our workforce. Some of the highlights would be something that will be really familiar to you. Obviously, there's been talk about the Trade Wins Project with NDS has mentioned it. But some of the other highlights of that project is the historic preservation qualities, the new location for the Riverside Theater apartment building that is LEED Silver certified, and $1.8 million of contributions to affordable housing all through that project. And also, and I've been also working with Wendy to develop our small business grant program that's going to focus on targeted small businesses and BIPOC businesses. And also, there's been a number of programs and activities with climate action as well. So really important division and keeps the new investment coming into the community.
I had a question.
Any questions?
Yeah, about this division. Looking at the performance measures on page 77 to 78 primarily, doesn't look like there's a lot of anticipated or projected growth on these measures anyway. Is that just kind of the staffing is maxed out where they are? I mean, it seems to me that especially in the challenges we're looking at financially over the next few years, that maybe trying to ramp up or amp up some of the economic development activities would be helpful, but I don't know. Is that, either of you could speak to that?
And I can take a cut of that, but if Jeff, you want to jump in. I think some of that's going to be with the overall slow growth of housing and development in general. So a lot of our economic opportunities come from folks being interested in doing something and we put together a package that is just what they need to get over the hump. So if that slows down, there's going to be, you know, less opportunity to pull those kind of things together. I don't think it's going to be due to the lack of activities. With ARPA presenting and working through how those programs are to be developed and reaching out and keeping record and progress of those, which is going to be part of the qualifications of ARPA, we're going to be pretty busy in that area. So I think it's just a mix of are they going to be, you know, tailwind-type of projects? That may be not so, but it may be something much smaller, which would be more grassroots, which I think will be very busy.
Yeah, I'd just like to add real quick, we tend not to project out TIF projects. We never really know when those opportunities are going to come. I can tell you, we're not negotiating any TIF deals right now. So we're not going to project any out when they come. You know, obviously, we analyze and work on those. So some of those things are just hard to project out. The other thing to keep in mind is that we largely outsource our economic development. I mean, ICAD is our economic development team. We contribute financially to them along with the other cities and private businesses. And their performance metrics would speak more volumes to the, you know, the complete picture of economic development. We do like to have this division in our office and have an employee because we do like to do things tailored to Iowa City. You know, the targeted small business grants are a good example of that, the climate action grants. That's not something we can just ask ICAD to do on behalf of us as a city. We need those internal resources to kind of do the custom. But the traditional economic development, recruitment of industry, retention of our industry, we rely heavily on ICAD to carry those duties out for us.
I will just maybe add something that I've consistently asked. And I don't really know the answer and hopefully this isn't, doesn't come across insensitive. But I absolutely love Wendy Ford and I do worry about our internal systems not being at max capacity to even leverage the partnership that we have with ICAD because I just think that there potentially could be more opportunities for residents in the economic development area. And so I, you know, I'm always interested if there is some missing pieces that either ICAD fills that, you know, that they don't have in their toolbox or if Wendy Ford, I'll just mention the name, feel like, you know, they don't have. But this is a growing city, is a very desired city. And I feel like potentially there is just some opportunities missing. We are never going to be able to capture all of them. I mean, that's just impossible. But I do think that there could be some more opportunities, whether those are national state programs or city programs that can be, you know, created. But staff capacity in the internal system, if that is kind of a hindrance, at least for me personally, I think is something when we're looking at these goals and metrics that we should consider.
Yeah, I think that's a good point. And I did, it does remind me of a point that I didn't mention. It's not showing up as a budget add-on, but the council had previously approved a retail marketing firm that didn't really pan out. So we had like $50,000 still available to be using in these type of activities. And just in my recent meeting with Wendy, we talked about how to explore some of those, I call it a more exotic type of economic development opportunities that we haven't been able to look into. You know, there are the opportunity zone that we never have been able to make turn into something, maybe put a little more energy into seeing if we can get investments, more interest in that. And some other things like EB5, which we hadn't been able to really pull it together. Some of these things, you know, they come out, they're the latest trend and they don't really pan out. But it does behoove us to kind of look in and dust those off and see if there's some opportunities there for us. So we are kind of looking at trying to be a little more robust in some of those things out there that we haven't taken advantage of in the past.
I will say in other cities that have programs, one thing that most cities have identified is the technical assistance that individuals or businesses need to kind of get over the hump to actually get to the finish line of some great opportunities. But for whatever reason, sometimes it's the technical assistance, which is really relationship building, that can get people to the finish line.
Yeah, a couple of quick points, Mayor. One of the things we did do this past year was fund the new BIPOC Business Accelerator. That's being led by the Multicultural Development Organization. If you're familiar with Tracy John Sargent's operation. That was a $25,000 commitment that we did this year. And that is, that same commitment is reflected going forward in the budget. And that is a lot of that technical assistance that you're talking about. That's a pretty narrow group there, but we do recognize that as well. And then regarding staff capacity, you know, that's one of the things that we struggle with. That's really where we try to That's really where we try to take your indirect cues when it comes to strategic planning and discussions like this. Absolutely, we could, we could use more economic development resources. But I could use more human rights resources, more communications resources. Latasha would love more staff. I'm sure Nicole could talk to you about staff needs. I mean, there, that, that's a challenge throughout our organization. And that's again, where, you know, part of, part of my role as city manager is to determine kind of what's needed for the, the basic level of service that the community has come to expect. And then trying to take cues from you all and saying, here's where the council's focused. How can we layer additional staff support on this? And right now for economic development, I feel pretty good about what we're putting out with a one-person team and, and with the help of the ICAD folks. But if, if I got that sense from the council that you want to get a lot more aggressive and focused, I might have to come back to you and say it's going to require some, some additional personnel help. So I think that's it from city manager's office.
Awesome. Any other questions for the city manager's office? Great, I think we are on to finance.
Yes, you guys made it to the end. So I am Nicole Davies. I need to get this mic up because my chair won't go down, so. I'm Nicole Davies. I am the Assistant Finance Director, also now the interim Finance Director. The Finance Department budget summary starts on page eighty-three. And then we're in the book a couple of different places for the actual budgetary info. One group starts on page three forty-four and another on six fifty-nine. But I'll give you those page numbers as I hit those divisions. The Finance Department has thirty-six FTEs, that's across six different divisions. First division being the Finance Admin, so their budgetary info starts on page three forty-four. In Finance Admin, there's four FTEs and that's across five positions. That's the Director, the Assistant Director, Jaclyn, who's sitting next to me, the Budget and Compliance Officer. Then also our Finance and Risk Assistant. And then we also have a part-time Internal Auditor. This division handles a lot of the administrative functions of the department, puts together the compilation of the budget, which you guys are all looking at today. So obviously, one of the big things was getting this into Flipping Book to hopefully make it a little bit prettier, maybe is the right word, a little bit. Hopefully more user-friendly for the public to review and, and look at. They also, the compilation of the Capital Improvement Plan, which we'll go over on Wednesday. This division handles all of the investments in banking, which is about two hundred and fifty million worth of, of management of that. And with Internal Audit, we're reviewing all the financial policies and procedures and also looking at internal controls as they review the policies. This division also manages the annual debt issuance along with the IRS and SEC compliance that goes along with that. I know it's already been brought up a couple of times today, our triple A bond rating, which we're obviously very proud of and, and want to maintain. And I know it's kind of come up in the past as to, you know, what is, what is that in monetary savings? Or what does that mean? And obviously, we can't give you like, this is exactly what it saves us because interest rates are always moving, the amount of debt we have is always moving. But if you just want a ballpark average, a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand a year is what that triple A bond rating saves us. This division also manages all of the Health and Dental Reserves, the Workers' Comp Program, the Employee Benefits Program, and then deals a lot with the TIF financing and the TIF debt. So challenges, this is really for the entire Finance Department. We'll be going through an upgrade of our financial software, which is always a little challenging, but it will affect all of the divisions in the Finance Department. We're heavy users of it. Obviously, it will affect people citywide, but most of the testing happens within the Finance Department before it's rolled out to the rest of the city. And then we're also still currently managing two FEMA disasters, still COVID-19 disaster and also the derecho. And if you've ever heard nightmare stories about working through a FEMA disaster, they are true. They're very challenging. That's it for the Finance Admin Division, moving into Accounting. Their financial information starts on page three forty-seven. This has six point four five FTEs and that's across seven different positions. Within Accounting, we handle the accounts receivable, so that's all of the billing except for your utility billing and the landfill billing. So it's usually sidewalk repairs. We bill for any retiree, retiree health insurance. We bill for the airport hangar rentals, so it's kind of everything else other than the utilities. We also handle all of the accounts payable through the city, so we make sure all of the bills get paid. Very important function to buy weekly payroll, everyone wants to make sure they get their paycheck. And then we also manage or assist with most grants that the city has. We obviously, you know, you talk about CDBG Home, the, the pieces of it obviously handled by NDS. We deal a lot with the financial pieces and, and getting the draws done and, and some of the financial reports. We also coordinate the annual financial audit and obviously are, pull a lot of different other random financial reports. The Accounting Office also does the bookkeeping and payroll for JEC. That started a few years ago and that's, I think, been going very well. I know the staff in my office that, that handles most of that enjoys it and I think it's been good for the JEC as well. Probably the key challenges in accounting, we're always dealing with, with ever-changing accounting standards, GASB standards. If you ever can't fall asleep at night, read some GASB standards. They're not very exciting and they, they can get very technical. And then I feel like this has kind of been a common theme. We've had a couple very important positions, a couple of our salary positions last year that retired with over twenty years of service. We've got one, our Payroll Accountant in February with over fifteen years. Those positions are always hard to fill. It's a lot of knowledge walking out of the building and they're very important positions. Moving into Purchasing, that budgetary info starts, and this is kind of broken into two different pieces. Purchasing starts at page three forty-eight. We'll also talk about the Central Services portion of, that falls in purchasing. That starts on page six sixty-six. Purchasing is part of the General Fund. Central Service is an Internal Service Fund. So to talk about purchasing first, this is who handles all your RFPs, RFBs. If we need to get quotes for any non-public improvement project, runs through this office. They also manage any contracts, even, you know, once the RFP goes out, the contract might be good for two or three different renewals. So they handle when those renewals, before they have to go back out to be bid. Central Services, that really handles all of our copiers, so they replace those as needed. We charge those back. And they also handle all of the mail-in packages that go in and out of City Hall. One big accomplishment in purchasing that we're very excited about is we finally got an online bidding platform implemented earlier. Well, I guess it's not this year, twenty-two, in mid-twenty-one, earlier in the fiscal year, I guess I should say. It's kind of been several years in the making, but it's really going to help us get things more uniform and consistent. Hopefully lots of efficiencies and then it's electronic. So we're getting rid of a lot of paper and kind of delays and getting that paper out to people and back in. Now it's all at, at everyone's fingertips.
I'm curious to know, from the user point of view, what are you hearing?
Like the vendors or the internal users?
The internal users.
I was kind of concerned because usually, you know, when we change up stuff like this, usually change is not well-accepted, but we've, I have gotten zero negative feedback on it so far. The feedback I have gotten has been very positive of like, oh, we really like this. It's a lot easier to just go in and look at it. So yeah, I, I'm very pleasantly surprised that it's been well-received internally. Moving into the next division is Revenue. Their budgetary information starts on three forty-nine. They have seven point eight eight FTEs and that's across nine positions. This is the division that handles all of the utility billing and all of the landfill billing. Also, they handle the daily banking, so that's citywide reconciling all of the deposits that are coming in from all kinds of different places and, and going into our bank account. And one of the challenges they're facing, they, we just purchased a new notification system. They've kind of gotten it all set up, but with COVID and the collection process not being going, they really haven't had to use it. So it's kind of set up, but now they have to kind of see how it works once they start using it. Also in this department is Risk Management. That financial information starts on page six fifty-nine. There's one point eight FTEs and that's across four positions. And this is where all of our insurance is managed, so all of our property liability, cyber, workers' comp. The insurance gets renewed annually. And as mentioned earlier, it's definitely volatile and we've been seeing some large increases the last couple of years. Risk Management manages all of the claims against the city. And they also run and coordinate safety programs and do all of the city's annual OSHA reporting. And the last division is our Information Technology. And this budgetary info starts on six sixty-two. This has ten and a half full-time equivalents, over eleven different positions. And this is really, you know, anything techno, technology-related. So your computers, your network, Wi-Fi, fiber optic, our telephones. They support all the software that's used in the city. Also the GIS system and video cameras in all the buildings and throughout the city, they also manage that as well. Challenges for them, just data management and archiving. We're moving more and more to electronic, but then it means we need more storage and more ways to manage and more ways to retrieve it. And then something that I think will always be a challenge is network security. Obviously, the ways that our network can get hacked are constantly changing and evolving. And so we have to with that. Janice, to your question earlier with that information security analyst, I think it's more of the insurance companies are expecting certain standards. So to have positions like that keeps us from not having an even larger increase in our insurance premium rather than getting any kind of deduction for it. But like Jeff said, that position just started this week, so that's a very good thing. And also one thing I, I found very interesting, our IT Director had said the other day, phishing through emails is definitely one of the hottest ways that people can get into your network. So they've done some testing with that. And when they first started doing it, about fifty-one percent, there was a fifty-one percent failure rating. Our last test was down to one point eight percent. So the employees weren't super excited about it, but we all learned real quickly that don't, don't click on links, don't open up anything you don't know because we don't want, we don't want anyone hacking our system and taking it over. So that's the Finance Department in a nutshell. Anyone got any questions?
I just want to say, absolutely, this flipbook is amazing. So I just wanted, it's not a question, but I'm just, the, the ease with which we're able to navigate such copious documentation is great. So thank you so much. Whatever effort you put into it is very much appreciated on the user end.
Yep, not mine, but Jaclyn and like Jeff mentioned, Michelle back at the office. Yeah, Michelle found it and then, yeah, a lot of work to, to get it in and, and make it look like that.
Thank you.
I would agree, it's really phenomenal. I have my volume turned off, where else you'll hear this flip of a page?
Which is kind of fun.
It kind of surprised me when I first heard it because I didn't know what it was and I went and flipped it again and I'm like, oh, it's the computer.
So you get that feel of actually turning the page.
Yeah, it's really neat. Well, thanks for your presentation. I, I, kind of the first time seeing you before council and I just want to say you did a great job. There's a lot involved in the Finance Department. And I guess from a, from, you know, sitting on this end, it's really important that our financials are very transparent as well as easily organized to understand. And I think you all have done a good job. You've done a great job of doing the presentation today as well as being a part of the big picture for our, for everyone in our community that looks at our budget. So thanks to you and the entire department. All right.
I actually have one question that sort of redirects over to the city manager and the deputy city manager. One of the recurring themes that I've heard from many of the different department heads is the concern about the knowledge that's going to be walking out the door imminently through retirement. And so I was just curious about succession planning. Is that something that you have sort of, is it a comprehensive process? Or is this something that is kind of handled in, by department and division to, to know the best ways that they can retain that knowledge?
Yeah, it's, it's a good question. We don't have, I think the last time we did kind of a comprehensive look at that was probably about eight or nine years ago. Really found that because our operations are so diverse, it's a lot easier to kind of focus those within each department. So we have questions or prompts, if you will, on our annual employee evaluations for our supervisors about their succession plans. And we meet annually with those department directors to go through that. And for each department, it could look a little bit different. It's gone from everything from reclassifying positions to give internal employees a little bit more exposure over complete operations to, to prep them and, you know, to becoming candidates down the road to internal trainings that, that may be tailored to certain individuals or professional development needs. But we do absolutely go through that. And then with the kind of non-supervisory staff, we make sure in those annual evaluations that we're talking to them about what their career goals are and what they may, what they feel they may need in order to advance within the organization.
All right, well, thank you. And we are kind of at our, the end of our budget presentations, councilors, but now is a time to kind of do any discussions or wrap-ups that we desire. I do want to just let us know that we've been in here since eight AM and we will have some opportunities to highlight and through work session, do a deeper dive in some things. And so I just want to just caution us if we're wanting to dive deep into anything. But certainly this is an opportunity for us to bring up whatever you desire at this time.
I mean, I think that what, I'll be really brief. I think the one thing that we didn't really talk about much, but it's in the, it's definitely in the materials, is the extent to which the university is a part of our community, but really does not contribute to our funding because they don't, their property is not part of the property tax base. So sort of any place that we can, as, as they were talking about, as Public Works was talking about, there's a project, a university-based project that's taking place at their, at their facility. Any, any way we can actually leverage university knowledge or, or ability to put together public, basically it's public, public partnership is to our advantage because otherwise we have a lot of property that, that does, from which we cannot benefit in terms of property taxes.
I just have a reflection briefly, Mayor. And this has struck me the last couple of budget cycles as well, that, you know, when we look at what the council spends its energy on, it always is surprising to me that that doesn't usually match the largest expenditures, right? Like the things that we spend a lot of time and effort engaging on may not represent any significant budget item. And I don't, I still don't know what to make of that, but I think it is, it's always just kind of bothered me a little bit, I guess. That, you know, I, I look at like, NDS to me is always this like really important expansive department that I do think is one that we spend a lot of time and energy talking about, you know, and affordable housing and federal funding that. energy talking about, you know, and affordable housing and, uh, federal funding that flows through, and, um, but it's just not that big of dollars. So as we look forward maybe to strategic planning and visioning for the future, and trying to be intentional and forward-looking, and we're thinking about ARPA projects, and just trying to pull it all together, again, I don't have any answers, I just, it strikes me again today, that the things we spend our most energy on aren't necessarily significant in relation to the budget.
And, and, I'm, I'm happy you pointed that out, because I never thought about that, and, and I'm assuming that you're, um, relating to the things that we spend a lot of time and energy on, um, during the budget conversation, is smaller numbers in comparison to big picture?
And during our governance, like throughout, you know, at meetings, things that we spend a lot of, you know, deliberation and sort of agonizing over, so. I don't think it's unique to Iowa City, but it's...
Okay. Um, I, I did want to just, um, bring up that we'll have to really think about the, get into the, uh, where do we want to be with the, uh, the property tax and that selling? Meeting the February 1st deadline, I believe, but, but I think I heard January 25th, so we only have one more work session. I don't know if, um, it would behoove us to take a little time to talk about that, um, maybe just do a quick review, so we have two new councilors, that I just remember being here and having a very little understanding of what that meant, but it is, um, critically important, uh, to have a, a, the best understanding.
Yeah, I can, I can jump into that, and I'm gonna, um, pull up on, on your flipbook, I'll get you the page, um, in my, uh, opening transmittal letter, which, uh, Rachel always does a nice job pulling together. The, um, levies is on page 20, um, so that's what I would direct you to look at, is the, the, um, gray, blue, and red, um, table on page, the bottom of page 20. Our tax rate is made up of several different, um, levies, okay? So, um, that's what you see in that gray column. We have general, transit, tort, library. These are all state-defined levies that generally have a maximum to them. Um, so like our general fund, um, if you move over, you see the dollar amount that's generated by an $8.10 levy. 8.10 is the maximum, so if you want to get more dollars for your general fund, I, we can't raise to $8.20. We are at that state maximum. Um, the same would go for transit, 95 cents is that maximum, so we can't levy property taxes more for that. So as you look down there, you can see all the different levies, and what we can, and what we currently, um, pull off those. When we talked about our efforts to reduce the debt service levy, you can see that down towards the bottom, uh, it's bolded in debt service, it says, uh, $2.47 there. That's where we've received all the savings in 10 years, 90, 99% of it probably is in that debt service levy, so, um, that's one that has shrunk quite a bit, and that's mostly because our bonding has stayed flat, and we've had really good interest rate, um, environments, and we've been able to, um, uh, basically, we don't need as much of the tax base to pay back those bonds. Um, what you're seeing here this year is in the red, okay? And the difference is in that emergency levy, and this is what Rachel talked about, um, a, a couple of times. The emergency levy is just under library, and you see that we're asking for 20 cents, and that last year, we, we asked for 24 cents. That's that 4-cent reduction that, uh, Councilor Burgess asked about earlier, that's about $200,000. We can go up to, uh, 27 cents on that, that's one of those levies that we still have room to grow, if you will. I will note that that levy was zero, uh, before we started our Climate Action Initiative, so it's not a levy Iowa City historically used. We kind of creatively use that to fund climate action. So that max property tax, as it stands today, with our budget recommendation to you, is $15.63, which is in the red on the, uh, far, far right there, because it, we're, we're not including the, kind of, you can kind of leave out the Schmidt, the downtown Schmidt on that. Um, if you want to raise that rate, that's what we need to know by, um, January 25th at the latest, um, and I, I always remind council, it's, um, it doesn't have to be your job to, to determine how to fund a particular initiative. I really encourage you to, to think about initiatives, and then ask your staff to give you options on how to fund that particular initiative. So don't feel like you've got to become a municipal finance expert to accomplish anything that you don't see in the budget that you want to see in the budget, but to the mayor's, uh, mayor's point, that 15, once, once we get past that, uh, maximum property tax date, our ceiling's set. You can go down, you just can't go up.
So when do we see as an opportunity in our meetings that are coming up for having a more general discussion of those kinds of initiatives that Jeff was just referencing? Where, where would be the best place for that to happen? Right, I mean, right now, I'm, after seven hours of conversation, I'm not ready to, to talk about them, but I'd like to have some sense of when we would do that.
I think in the CIP, you know, in the CIP typically, you know, something could naturally come up, um, during that meeting, which is going to take place on the 12th, but our next work session, uh, which is going to be, is it the 18th or the, the 19th, somewhere in there? We'll have the opportunity to really dive deep. Uh, we have one, uh, we have the ARPA, uh, item on the work session that we're, I'm sure we're going to, um, spend some time on, um, but I do believe that, to the best of our abilities, if there are some things or some initiatives that you're thinking, one, you, at least personally, I would certainly run it by some, um, fellow councilors, but also talk to, uh, the city, city manager's office, if there is something, uh, that you're interested in, it, you may be enlightened by, um, the fund, the funding source, you know, maybe it's from general fund, it's something that's under general fund, or is an enterprise fund, you know, it, it, just making sure that you understand, you know, where the, where the funding source would come from, and then, um, just get some, and you may be able to gain some insight on past, uh, attempts, or something that might, uh, help in the discussion, uh, during the work session, or when it, when it's brought up. Some things, you know, if it's going to affect the levy, that's going to be the, the key for next, for the next two meetings, I think. Um, so, that's what I would say. Anything else that we want to bring up today? All right, we made it through. One more initial, uh, it used to be called Budget on a...
Breakfast.
Breakfast on the Budget.
Breakfast on the Budget.
Yes. Uh, Mayor, if I may just make some concluding remarks, thank you to the council members, this is a long day, this is information overload, please don't feel like you have to know everything inside and out, or that you should know everything inside and out, um, but do know that you have staff here that can help you over the next couple of weeks dive into things, and we can certainly arrange meetings with Nicole, Jaclyn, uh, any of us, if you want to take a deeper dive, uh, before a work session or, or council deliberation, we can certainly do that. And then I just also want to thank, um, the Budget Committee, again, there's been kind of an inverse relationship to, um, uh, the amount of talking and the amount of work that's been done on the budget, um, today. Um, the folks that you didn't hear much from put this thing together, really did all the hard work, and that's Nicole, Jaclyn, Rachel to a large extent. Um, you didn't get to hear from them much today, but those are the ones that did the heavy lifting. Um, you, you get to hear from me, and I didn't do much at all, so, I just want to, again, acknowledge that and thank, uh, those individuals. So, thank you for your time.
All right, and thanks to all of those in the background, making that all possible, really appreciate that. And with that, if nothing else, we are adjourned.